Ask everyone to rise for the invocation. Pastor Young with Church of Hope. Thank you for being here today and leading in our invocation. He will continue to stand for the pledges.
Thank you, Lord, for this awesome day you've given to every one of us here to be here today. We humbly gather together as servants of you, doing our best to serve you for your glory and your honor. And you know all the matters that are at hand for this county as we live to shine for your glory. All the matters and discussions and decisions that are made. May we not be paralyzed by certain pauses that happen? May we just come to this point and say, God, if there's some things we need to just step through in the difficulties, you're going to take us through. May the illuminations that need to happen, that are going to happen, be preparation for what you're going to do in this county. May you bless every commissioner, you bless the judge here today, may you bless all the servants of you, this community, as we're here to serve you, that you'd get us up, get us over and get us going in this, that we not be stalled by stalemates, come to agreements, and Lord, that you would just move mightily in our midst, that we would trust you to tap into the past, to trust you in the present, which you're doing here, right here in this moment, that we would glean from the memories in the past of the good things you've done and the things that we can gather together and make decisions financially, but most importantly, physically, spiritually, that's taken place in this community, the county. In Jesus, we ask that your blessing would guide, guard, and grace us today, and may your presence be with every word and everyone here today. In Jesus, your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am in the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is nine ten. We have a quorum of members here. Commissioner Gonzalez is here. He just stepped out. He'll be back in. The date is September the 13th, Wednesday. We are at 9:01 Leopard, the Nueces County Courthouse, and I am calling this meeting to order at 9:11. Um, I'm sorry.
How appropriate, 9:11.
I know, 9:11, yes, yes. Item D is announcement on disclosures of conflicts of interest. If anyone has any, um, there being none, we will move on. Since all the law enforcement is here before we start a public hearing, we just have one retirement recognition. I think I'm going to move to that so y'all can get on about your jobs. So we'll skip over and present the certificate of recognition and recognition of Daniel LaBarro's eight years of service to the county. And I just realized this morning that you were retiring. I sign a lot of those papers all the time. I looked up and was like, oh, my gosh, it's like, what was I thinking? We're going to be sad to see you go. I know you've been here a long time before that, too, and been a vital part of our community, but we thank you immensely for your service and everything you have done for this county. I'm not sure if someone else from the sheriff's office, I thought, oh, Sheriff Hooper, I didn't see you in there. I thought you might want to be here.
Again, if y'all want to call me up, Daniel's team. So Captain Lobra did eight years, but it was a very significant eight years. So he brought a lot of institutional knowledge and life experience with him when he came to the agency eight years ago. And he was, in fact, one of the best mentors, teachers, coaches that I've ever seen in action. And so Danny, thank you. Best of luck in your future endeavors, and we are very grateful for the time that you gave to Nueces County and the sheriff's office.
And your many other years of public service in the other departments you have done, yes.
Thank you, and thank you, Sheriff, for the kind words. I've really enjoyed my time here with Nueces County Sheriff's Office. I think we've made a difference, and I can't really say it's time to move on, but bigger and better opportunities has come up. And I told you all ago, I'm going to be the commander of the task force in Kingville, and that's a great challenge I look forward to. I've really enjoyed working with everybody and met a lot of good people, made a lot of good friends, and I'll stop by at times to say hello.
We would love to see you do that, yes. Thank you.
Do you get to keep wearing the hat? That's the really important part because it looks really good.
Y'all will.
I know you will. Captain Lobro doesn't go anywhere with that hat on, ever. Believe me, I know that.
He would sleep with it.
Yeah, that's right. We sure appreciate everything you've done, sir. You've been a great addition and a great welcome to this community and this county, and we're super grateful that you're going to still be protecting our area in a different way. So thank you very much for everything.
Commissioner Hernandez, I think, wanted to speak as well.
I just want to thank you as well, sir. I know you've had a long service with the law enforcement, especially with DPS, I believe.
Yes, yes, sir. Well, 37 years now, 29 with DPS and eight here.
So you're well qualified to mentor a lot of these folks, and, you know, so thank you again for your service. Wish you luck where you're going.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Commissioner Matas would like to speak. Don't be going anywhere. You've got a lot of people that are very proud of you.
Well, Captain, I appreciate your time and service to Nueces County and know that, you know, you've definitely had an influence there in San Pat as well in law enforcement there, and now see that you're kind of moving down the line. So as long as we can keep you in the region, I think that's a good thing for us. But I've never known or seen the law enforcement officer smile as much as he does. He's usually very serious and very intimidating to see all this law enforcement, no matter what level they're at. But he's the kind of person you feel that, you know, you can just approach and ask a question and give direction, and, you know, he's provided a lot to us and, of course, the mentoring that you have done. So it's a better opportunity. I know we're losing officers, but it's because it's a promotion, basically, for you. It's a bigger responsibility, and, of course, the task force does some great work. So look forward to running up, you know, into you one of these days, hopefully, for the right reasons, maybe at a restaurant or something like that. Not anything else. No, no, no. But I thank you, and, you know, our years here at Nueces County have been almost about the same. You've been here about a year longer than I have, so you've been here almost the entire time that I have. So just thank you for all your work and wish the best of luck. Godspeed. Thank you.
If you want to say anything, Commissioner.
Just wanted to thank you and wish you the best. You know, your upcoming challenge, it's a big challenge. You know, it's not very simple as what you do now. It's not simple either, but I think you're going to find probably that you're going to be in a position where it's going to be a little tougher, you know, to make certain decisions, you know, working in a different environment, you know. So I think you can handle it, you know. You're a big guy, so I wish you the best of luck and, you know, just remember to make the right choices for the right reasons, you know, and I wish you and your family the best.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Do you, can we get a photo with you before you leave? I'm sure if everybody wants to come up here, we can stand back here and y'all can all come or I can come down there. What do we need to do? I bet it's still a few of you around. I'm going to go down there so you can get here. Were you?
Oh, man, I don't know if we can do this. That's a good point. There's you guys are too tall with our hats.
Yeah, you guys, the hats.
I'll find a gap.
All right. One, two, three. Awesome. One more, sorry. One, two, three.
Good, good.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Martinez. Good choice, good choice.
Come get out of here. I think as soon as they clear out, we'll go ahead and start with our public hearing. She's doing okay. She sent me a message. She's doing okay. They're saying something. Yeah, we need to say something today. Yeah. Okay, I think we are ready to, oh, sorry, Tomas'. Well, I've got to turn it over to Dale, so. Our public hearing will begin now. Item number one, the commissioners' court will conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 Nueces County Hospital District will go first. If those in the back will maybe step outside to do your conversations. The time is 9:21, sorry. And, yes, go ahead.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you again for an opportunity to talk to you all about the hospital district and what we do, and in this case, to talk about our budget. I have a PowerPoint presentation that Connie is going to spool up for me on page three, but I'd like to go and put it on three, Connie, page three, that one. So let me just make a couple of quick comments before we go through the PowerPoint. I've shared with you all before the hospital district's budget, but I wanted to say that the hospital district's going to, in the proposed budget, have about $153 million in revenue and $147 and a half million in expenses. So the hospital district's budget is balanced. It starts with a positive general fund balance and ends with a positive general fund balance. All the programs that the hospital district operated last year are funded in this year's budget at the same dollar levels. Of particular importance to you all are the county healthcare services, and they're all covered dollar for dollar, program by program, as last year. And finally, the most important thing, I wanted to say that the arrangements we have embedded in our budget provide for the hospital district meeting its statutory obligations to provide injured care. So with regard to the PowerPoint presentation that Connie has before you, you've seen this graph before. Dale will probably show it to you again, but this is the hospital district's tax rate history trend. There's a red line embedded in the graph to show you the direction of the tax rate and where it's going. The hospital district, for many of the last 20 or so years, has operated the district at the effective tax rate, and that'll be the case this year within a few hundred dollars of what you've done last year. The next slide, Connie.
Wait, wait, say that again? About the effective tax rate?
We're going to operate the hospital district this year with, we're asking for 4% Commissioner, on top of the no new tax rate.
Okay.
But the dollar equivalent of that is, is the same money as last year, the way the calculation works.
If you're increasing the tax rate by, or if you're increasing taxes by 4%.
So we're increasing them 4% over the no new revenue rate.
Right, so then that means there's new revenue.
Well, the, when you go through the calculations, Commissioner, when you use the no new revenue rate, we actually lose money. We will have less money than we did last year.
Dale, you're going to have to help me with that one.
Just the way everything works right now and the way the tax office, the tax calculations work, when, if you look, there are no new revenue tax when we bring it up, we would also lose revenue if we adopt the rate of 1.7.
So how does it work for them that they're getting more revenue and operating, they're getting a tax, they're asking for a tax increase but operating, I've not seen that before that I can remember.
Well, how it probably works is because we're, they're saying the same thing we're figuring out is because of the tax dispute.
Yeah. The argue with the appraisal problem, yes.
Right, but this is, but if you got your revenue from the refineries, you'd be getting more revenue.
Yes, but we're not getting it, yes.
Okay, all right. So that makes a little more sense. So let's be clear on that. This is a tax increase request, and were it not for the deficit that is anticipated from the refinery dispute, you would be getting more money than last year.
Yes.
Because at some point, that dispute's going to be resolved and something's going to happen. So with this, you're asking for the taxpayers to pay more to you. That's a tax increase to the taxpayers.
The.
We got to be transparent, right? I mean, you may be getting less money, but it's because of that dispute. I mean, we're in the same bind. So like, we made cuts. Did y'all make any, were y'all able to make any cuts in your budget to attempt to get to the no new tax rate or to not raise taxes? I'm just curious if you had tried.
We looked at it, Commissioner, and given that the hospital district wanted to fund the county healthcare expenditures, mental health, E M S, all those things at the same rate we did last year, we're asking for 4% above the no new revenue rate. So let me, I know there's a lot of semantics and a lot of terminology here, but the tax rate that we have this year is less than last year.
Well, okay.
So it's not a no new, it's not a new, it's not a tax increase.
It isn't.
It's above the no new revenue rate, that's true.
No, it's 100, Johnny, man, you know I love you, but you're getting into my area that just bugs the crap out of me when people say this stuff. It is 100% a tax increase because the rest of the taxpayers have to pay more money. It's 100% by law. If you're not voting for the no new tax rate, it is a tax increase to everybody else despite the disputes. I'm going to pay more, you're going to pay more, Karen's going to pay more, Connie, everybody's going to pay more because this is a tax increase. I'm not saying the court should or shouldn't support it. I'm saying we, to say it's not is not right. So, and I get, it's my pet peeve, but this is absolutely a tax increase. Yes, you are operating on the same money because of a dispute between two refineries in the appraisal district that the appraisal district is messed up on, so that's another deal. Because if that gets resolved and that money comes back to you, then you're going to have more money than you did last year.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. All right.
But it's not likely that it will get resolved in the next five years, yes.
Commissioners, I'm not trying to exaggerate this, but the missing money is real.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's not here. It's not available to us.
We've been dealing with it for months.
Yeah. And the money does eventually come. We did get some money in from, it was due five years ago, I think, earlier this month, and so, yes. So anyway, Commissioners, I just want to start and show you the district's tax rate trend. Connie, on the next slide, this slide number four shows the county healthcare services expenditures trend, and just want to point out here that it continues to rise as we go through and add programs each year. On the next slide, slide number five, these are the hospital district's mental health services expenditure trend. And so y'all can tell that we, about five years ago, jumped headlong into doing mental health services and funding them, and we're continuing that. So Connie, on the, the next page goes into the actual budget, and, next page, Connie, I want to share with you what I'd shared with you before, that a bulk of the hospital district's operations are supported by non-taxes. Now take a look at this. This is, this is an impressive graph. Yeah. So relying on the taxpayers for 25% of the money that we need to run the district this year. The next slide, Connie, slide number eight, is the same as the one before, except it provides some additional detail about where the rest of the revenues come from. Next slide on page nine, these are the hospital district's three main expenditure areas in 2024. A bulk of them are intergovernmental transfers, and these are the programs that the hospital district uses to support all the hospital systems in Nueces County. We help them draw down federal funds. The chief user of these funds is SPON. SPON gets about 70% of this 80% number there, and then the other ones are equally divided between Driscoll and H C A, the doctors, regional Bay Area hospitals.
But the 9% portion is just the county's portion of like
Yes, ma'am.
the healthcare that you provide.
That's correct. On the next page, Connie, is page 10, and this is a little more detail to the preceding page for you all to see, and then that's all my presentation this morning, Judge and Commissioners.
I think we're good, Johnny. Heard it, so.
Yes, thank you all, just for the benefit of the public. And so Judge, we need to, I need to come back this afternoon then for our sometime today for the budget at the later, latter part of the day. Okay, thank you all.
We're just doing public hearing now. I didn't.
Public hearing is just now, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
I was going to make a motion, man.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No, I, yeah.
You're good.
I don't blame you, Johnny.
Item two, the commissioners' court will conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2023-2024 Nueces County budget.
Thank you, Your Honor. It was, it's hard to follow the retirement of Captain. It's a long career, and we want to wish him well. This is a public hearing for Nueces County as of September 13th, 2023, to talk about the items of discussion. There's our proposed tax rate, our exemptions that we have, and as Johnny said, we have some historical trends of how our taxes have gone in, and that's how our revenue is kind of coming in as well, and then kind of tell you how the sources of, where the sources of income come from and where the expenses go. And the final one, we'll be talking about any future financial impact. Next slide, Connie, will show you the proposed tax rate. Our current tax rate for this fiscal year is .291659. For the county, no new revenue tax is .240243. And for right now, the discussion of the proposed rate that we proposed was .252755, and that's 3.5% above the no new revenue tax. As Johnny said, the hospital district, right now, they don't show you on here, but last year, prior year, for the hospital district was .098846. The hospital district's no new revenue tax is .081963, and as we see, the proposed rate is .089272, and they'll be bringing later on their 4% when they come later on in court as the .085241 or 42. Next slide. Next slide shows you our exemptions that the county offers, as well as the other entities within the, in the county. We use the largest area that we have, which is the city of Corpus Christi and C C I S D. A lot of people live in other areas where you might have Tulsa, Midway, West Tulsa, Port Aransas, Flower Bluff, or another, school district might slightly different, but it'd be closer to where we have because we picked the largest one. For Nueces County and the hospital district, we give a 20% exemption with a minimum of $5,000 for each homestead that qualifies. Anybody that's over 65 and disabled, we offer a $62,500 for both over 65 and disabled. For the city of Corpus Christi, they, right now, we showed 10% with $5,000 minimum, again, $50,000 for both the disabled and over 65. But on the local news, we just heard that the city of Corpus Christi is going to be increasing that by 10%, so that might get up to the same level we're at at 20%, but this is what we have the time. For our school districts, they have a minimum of at least $100,000 exemption. I believe over 65 and disabled needs to be increased as well to, probably, that's probably going to be 110 each. I don't have the exact number for that yet, but with these exemptions, we, hopefully, everyone will see a decrease in the taxes fiscal year, or this calendar year, actually. Next slide. This kind of shows you our history of our tax rate for Nueces County. As you see, in 2006, 2007, we were .37. As you go through the cycle, we kind of maintained it a little bit through the few years. We went down in around 2015, 2016, a slight increase because of some valuation changes in 2018 and 19, but as you see, the one we're coming down for proposed of 2022, 23, or 23, 24, we're significantly decreasing. So that's almost a 10 cent, a little more than 10 cent decrease in value from one year to, from 2006 to now. Next slide. Next slide, we're showing the hospital district, as Johnny was showing, their rates are a little bit different because of how we have to function through them, but as he said, from 2011 through, for a while, they were on the effective rate, and that went down. And you see it's continuing to decline, as well as their last year's rate to this year's proposed rate, it's a 1 cent difference between the, 1 tenth of a cent difference between the two, and, but these are just the proposed rates, and Johnny and then we'll be bringing rates later as it comes. The next slide shows you our combined tax rate for the, for the county and hospital district combined. As you see, it's the same flow, you almost, it's almost identical to what you saw for the county, but we're at .53 total combined for now for our proposed rate of 23, 24, we're at .342, so that's a significant drop in value. Next slide shows you our proposed budget tax revenue as we expect to, because our county has grown in size and grown in value, our values has gone up. The only concern is for 2022, 24, as we mentioned, we have a very large tax dispute for, to our largest taxpayers. So we expect, we're proposing to have a levy of $112 million, which is for your foreign to market, your debt service, and your general operation for your general fund of 112, but we don't expect to collect all of that due to the dispute, and that amount is not yet determined, but we're expecting about $5 million difference.
Excuse me, Dale?
Yes.
How much, sorry, I heard you say something about our county has grown?
Yes.
How much has it grown?
Well, we're now at 365,000 people. Back in 10 years ago, we were at 312, so we've gotten, we've gotten bigger.
Thank you.
The next slide shows you our fund balances. As we know, in 2017, we had to use some funds of our fund balance, and we did drop our fund balance below our target. Our target is that little dotted yellow line in the middle. As the years have gone through, we've gradually getting closer and closer and closer to where we want to be, and we're almost, almost where we want to be in 27,800, where our target's 28,1, and we're very close with, if we do our estimated actual at the moment, and we know there are some revenues that are, that may be a little bit underestimated, but I don't foresee that being a significant amount, and hopefully, we'll at least come up to that level. The next level is going to show you what the tax code requires us to do. We provide you with a average taxable value. For 2022, 23, our average value home was $166,436. Our average value now, because of the values went up so significantly, the average value of a home is $184,4587. Now, if you go to the first column, it's last year's tax rate, and we apply the value and we give a levy for the county, that's $649.95. That includes both the county and hospital district. If we do our proposed rates that we're both proposing is .342027 at the new valuation of $184, the new levy would be $631.33. If you see, that's a almost $20 decrease in tax value. People of average home or less will probably see at least an $18 deduction in county taxes. Now, I'm not talking about every tax, I'm just talking about county tax, or a drop of 2.86%. Next slide, as I said, this tax rate will raise more tax revenue as operating last year and is a 3.5% increase, but it's still showing a reduction of $34.51 if we apply this to a valuation of a home of $100. Now, the big thing is people ask, where will my money go for the property tax? And we show you a breakdown. Again, we picked on C C I S D and Corpus Christi. These might be slightly different for where you might live, but we, largest area, the largest amount of any home is going to be taxed to the school districts. Whatever school district you're in, you're going to pay more of your taxes, go to them than anybody else. Almost 50% of your tax goes to the school districts. The rest go to 24% for the city, 11% for the county, 10% for Delmar College, and 3% for the hospital district. Now, we ask where had our, where does our money come from? As Johnny was saying, we also have the same level on the next slide, Connie. As Johnny was saying, we also have the same level on the next slide, Connie. As you see, for the county, our property tax brings in roughly 51% of our revenue to pay for all of our bills. The remaining portion is intergovernmental revenue. What is intergovernmental revenue? That's our agreements we have between other cities, counties, states, the federal government that they, that we get money for to do different operations. And that's where a lot of this comes from. And as you see, the rest of it is charges for services and fines and forfeitures. Now, the next question on the, where the money goes is the next slide. As a majority of all governmental entities, majority of our expenses go to operations by personal cost. That's 85 million of it. As you see, the rest of its other services, and some people say, what are your other services? Well, that's where we have our insurance, our largest cost is insurance. Then we have rent, and we have other costs for services we have, we have to do. And the next one is, we try to have repairs and maintenance of buildings and grounds. And that's all, that's a, that's a growing expense too, because of where we are at the balances. As we get ready to talk about our budget, here's a few of our budget challenges. As we said, with the proposed rate, we're probably, we'll see a reduction in speed between the refineries of around $5 million. It could be less, could be more, depending on how everything works out. And hopefully, as Commissioner Chesky says, this gets resolved quickly. But we know that they, we, they currently have disputes ongoing, and one of them's been in there for six years. One of them finally settled, but it didn't settle for current. But as you saw, the one's been six years, and we don't really see a small window in that. We got continuous pay. What is continuous pay? After everyone that works for the county for three years or more, after the third year, the next following fiscal year, you qualify for what we call continuous pay, which is part of our policy, and you get a 200% increase in salary. Approximately 153 employees, five elected officials, and two department heads qualify this year. Every year, we have to do a valuation between our, what our pension requirements are for Texas County District Retirement System. And they always give us a, what we expect to have to pay. And that value did go up, so we're required to bring in $156,000 more. During the midterm, during the budget cycle, we, before the budget cycle, we approved some reclassifications, some modifications, and now approximately $158,399. In the budget that we provide to you, because of the vacancies we have and the cost of food and services we have, we went in and did increase the share of budget for overtime inmates. Don't mean this can't be adjusted, y'all. This is something y'all can definitely look into and adjust if you so choose fit. We will be moving money from 1115 waiver to cover this software increase. The largest one is my, our implementation of our new accounting software, Workday. But good thing is that the following next year, at least $600,000 or $500,000 will go away because we no longer need implementation. So that's why we're doing a one-time transfer of $1 million from our balances. Every year, we have a small increase for Bank of America. This was the financing we did to do the ABM energy savings contract throughout the county. And we got money from the Bank of America to cover this, and we have to, this is our debt service for them. Right now, we have an agreement discussion with our collective bargaining agreement. We do not know the value of that, so we did not, we cannot determine what to include in there. So right now, that's questionable. So right now, our budget challenge is, as we see, is about $5 million. I mean, $8 million, excuse me. Now, the future impact we have is, as we know, COVID-19 is really nonstop. Because right now, we heard from the Health Department that the numbers of cases are going up. We heard that the vaccinations are coming out, so we recommend everyone to get vaccinated, both for COVID-19 and flu, and whatever else you can get vaccinated for. As we know, we got the agreement with the Law Enforcement Association to try to get that resolved, and we will consider that. This year, we had a very large influx of some very large claims, and we'll be talking about that later on in the Commissioners Court, where we would need some additional funds. But our health insurance funding has some shortfalls, and we didn't do anything this year. But maybe next year, we have to consider bringing increases. But we'll discuss that next year, not this year. As we saw, inflation is an ongoing case where it was rising the price of everything. Everything is increasing, building materials, food and services, anything you have, and we get, is now more expensive. The one good thing about inflation increasing is the interest we receive from the money we have, that's also increasing. So there are some positives, some negatives. We do have some budgetary cuts within the, within the budget items, and we have some frozen positions, deleted positions. We have no reclassification whatsoever as part of the budget, but we'll discuss that ever. And also, we know the potential refinery, hopefully get that resolved soon, but that's, that's an issue coming forward. That's my presentation for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 proposed budget. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to save a lot of this for this afternoon, but let me ask, because I want to make sure too. On raises, are the only raises in this budget related to the continuance pay, the, that one?
The only other one was the Board of Judges didn't approve a small increase for the court reporters, but they have the right to do that. That's the only other increase.
And the probation office, but statutory, they got their money, and the state pays 100% of that. It's not general fund.
But it's not general fund, it's state.
That's it. Which we have no control over, and the statutory money.
Legislature paid the, yes.
But for the, for the probation officers, for the juvenile, that's through the state funds and not, has nothing to do with county funds.
With our general fund.
But the only increase was for continuance and the one for the court reporters, for the discredits.
Okay, all right. I'll save the rest for last afternoon. Thanks, Judge.
I, I would like, just for public to know as well, we have a total, all the departments participated in the cuts. Do you have a total amount that we came up with, everybody cuts? Because I think everybody needs to hear that this county came together, everybody worked together and made cuts in every department. I know it was over 2 million, I think it was close to 2 and 1/2 or 3 million something, so. I'm very proud of that fact, so I think you should all hear that, that the county is working together to solve this problem.
$1,000.
2,381.
2,300, 2,300, 2,303.
2.3 million, so I just felt like the public ought to hear that.
It's 3, 2, 3, 1.
Reduction is travel, so if you really add the travel together with that, it's 2.5.
Yes, okay. And then I'd like to clarify one thing, if I could, and it's, I wasn't aware that the county's encouraging anyone to get any kind of shots. I think you do your family what you think is necessary or will. I don't think that we encourage anyone to get any kind of vaccinations.
No, they're available, yes.
Yes, they're available, and we're happy to help you get that if you need it, yes. Are there any other comments or any than that? It is 9:46. I will close this public hearing and open it up. Do we have public comment? People signed up for that? And first up, we have Scott Harris. If you will come up to the podium, you know, we cannot answer your questions or anything. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address before you begin.
Yes, good morning, Judge. Scott Harris, 362 Merrill Drive, Corpus Christi, Texas, Precinct 1. I'm here today to provide the court a quick update on the Bob Hall Pier project. I'm the local regional manager for LAN here in Corpus Christi. We're the program manager for the Bob Hall Pier projects, which is
Get closer to the mic, Scott.
Yes, sorry about that.
Pull it up a little.
Yeah. So again, my name's Scott Harris. I'm the local regional manager for LAN. We're the program manager for the Bob Hall Pier projects, which includes the demolition, the rebuild, and the reconstruction of Gulf Beach Road or the parking lot, whichever may be the case. Today, I'm going to update you on the pier reconstruction. Our team, Jacobs Engineering, has delivered a 60% design, which, which is on schedule, on time. According to the last update we gave to court, they delivered that on the 28th of August. I've given my team 18 days, actually, you know, 17, 18 days, considering the holiday in there as well, to review those deliverables, which include the plans, a list of specifications, and an updated opinion of construction costs. Those, those comments, those review comments are due back to me on the 22nd of September. And, and then I am available to give a more detailed update to the court on the 27th. But after the 22nd, we'll return those comments to, to the design team, which is Jacobs Engineering. For consideration, I think one of the major decision items that is still out there is the concession. I fully expect to provide, or have, enter into a discussion on that later on, maybe on the 27th, if, if that may be your will. That concession, we're talking budget and dollars today, that concession in our budget, we've, we've got about 4.2 million right now, kind of in the budget for, for the concession. 3.6 of that is just kind of focused on the, the build out of that concession. So the decision hasn't been made. Jacobs Engineering hasn't advanced any of their design since the 30% on that concession is basically on hold. And I want the court to know that in this 60% that they delivered to us, there is no change on that concession since the 30%. They've advanced the design on the pier, come a long way with that, but the concession is on, has been on hold since that time. And again, there's about 4.2 million in the budget for that, whatever the decision is made on that.
When you say concession.
We can't, we can't, well, sorry.
They'll be back on the
Yes, he'll come on the 27th, and we'll talk
So again, in closing, we will be back on the 27th for more detailed update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Ortiz. State your name and address. I think you know the, thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, thank you for having me here, or at least giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the citizens in Nuasis County. My name is Joe Ortiz. I live at 3718 Mendenhall. First of all, I'm asking Commissioners, you judge, to please not raise the taxes. We can have creative ways of generating more money. And one example is creating a development services as to where the, their billing subdivisions in the county, not the city. So who's keeping all that money for fees and all those fees that are required to develop a subdivision? It's not the county, it's the city. And, and why isn't the city giving the county the money that it should go to the county? Has anybody looked at that? Be more creative and seeing how you can generate money instead of raising the taxes and/or eliminating employees. Remember, we have a responsibility to maintain employees here, also in Nuasis County. We need the service. Don't cut law enforcement, that's safety. So I'm asking the Commissioners, at least three Commissioners, not to vote for the increase of taxes, but to look at creative ways of generating more money for the county, so we don't have to raise taxes. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on public comment that didn't get a chance to sign up? There being none, we will move on with our agenda. Thank you. Moving to the consent agenda, are there any items that any Commissioner wishes to pull for further discussion?
Present agenda. I mean, I don't want to pull, I'll pull it because in case anybody has any questions on it.
Sure. What, which item?
That's number U.
Number U.
Oh, you know, I did have that one. I did have that one. I'm sorry, thank you.
Just in case somebody wants to ask a question. Anybody should have a backup in there.
Yeah, there is a backup in your programs, yeah, in your budgets. Any other items that anyone wishes to pull? I can give you a few more minutes if y'all are looking through it. If not, I will accept a motion to pass the consent agenda excluding item U.
So moved, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, and Commissioner Gonzalez, if you want to bring up item U.
Yeah, she'll come up.
Yes, then do their presentation. Or questions for anybody.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners.
Can you just briefly explain, because I know we've heard these presentations more about what the change is in it. I think there's just some minimal changes.
Yes, ma'am. So basically, if we had a presentation that was sent to the county, if we don't need, we don't need to pull it up. But the changes that we did was mainly to adjust the budget and defer some things and make them alternates so that we can hit our target as far as the funding. And so the, one of the things that got pulled, which was never part of our original estimate, was the X-ray equipment. So the X-ray equipment would be a separate item that would be, if we have the funds, it can be purchased. It's something that isn't, they don't have currently, but it's something that was desired by the ME. And so the space will still be there in the building, but it would be pulled out from our, from our construction budget.
Let us know what the adjusted budget number was, just for everyone else, for the, you adjusted the budget, you said, for this project.
Well, the, the
The budget, final budget is the same.
We can't say what the budget, because it couldn't go for bids.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
That's what I was trying to
Say, haven't you saved us?
Yes.
Saved us, yes.
Yes, and, but basically, we're going to have some alternates. There's some alternates for repair of the existing roof. The existing building has, the roof is in really bad condition, so it's going to be an alternate to repair that roof. The existing HVAC, we were intending to reuse it. It's also in really bad shape of the portion of the building, so that's going to be an alternate as well. The parking around, around the existing ME is in really bad shape as well, and that's also going to be an alternate. But, you know, those things, once we get the bids, you know, that come in, and we look at the numbers, we'll make a decision whether those are, you know, within our means or not.
So basically, just see what you have left over and what we can do.
Right, right. So those, those will be adjustments. And then inside the ME, the ME had requested six surgery procedure tables. We reduced that to four. Two would be, I mean, the space for the additional two, to give us a capacity for growth, they're still going to be there. It's just the tables themselves, I mean, it's a huge amount of money that, you know, those things cost. So we're going to defer those also to, you know, to a later time. So those have been pulled. The other thing, major thing, and we talked to Michael about this. All the equipment, all the furniture is going to be a owner provided, which means that the county will procure and purchase all of that on our own. And Michael said that we can do that. That, that will give us the ability to save on the markup from, from the GC. So we moved that over. That was, there was some substantial savings too, on doing, doing it that way. So we're going to, we're going to create packages for procurement for all the equipment and all the furniture separately from the construction. The construction, the construction, the parcel would be part of the construction. It's anything that, it's in the building, that if you flip it around and you shake the building and it doesn't fall off, that would be part of the building. But everything else that comes off, you know, that would be equipment and/or furniture.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
I did. And can you just tell me again, timeline?
The timeline, the overall project is 18 months.
Starting today, starting?
After we get, receive bids, after we award contracts.
Are we going out after today?
We're going to go after, after your, yes, after your approval.
So, yeah, so today, this is just a, what was this today? This was accept presentation and design. So we're supposed to do that today, and then you'll go to purchasing and start that process.
Yes.
So we're ready to go. And so that's about probably 90 days before we get bids back.
So the bid process, I want to give, I want to give them at least, with the market today and everything that's going on, I want to give them at least six to, six to seven weeks to, you know, to get good bids.
Okay.
Typically, it's 21 days. I want to give them a little more time. And then after that, we will have the committee review the proposals, and then, you know, schedule the time to come before the commission for approval.
So seven weeks is 49 days, if you go seven weeks, whichever, so we, we should be able to start in three months?
Yes, yes.
Start, start Start construction?
Yes.
Three months or less?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, because I get asked actually quite a bit on that.
We're getting close to a timeline of when it has to be completed as well, so...
Right, it's ARPA funds, but I mean, plus, we just need, that facility is in need.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
We have a motion to approve this.
I have a question, Judge.
Yes.
Just to clarify, how you had it, we're talking about four tables or six tables? I thought there was four tables. We were going to install two tables and everything was ready for the other two tables in case we needed them. So, is it four or six?
No, we ended up with four. They need, they need, what we're going to do, I met with the ME on this, they need three tables in the autopsy and at least one table in decomposed autopsy, and that's the isolation room.
Okay, you're talking about the whole table?
The whole thing, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just talking about the, the autopsy area, okay? All right, we're good.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, to proceed forward, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Commissioner Chesney, you're requesting to reopen public comment?
I am, Judge. There were a couple of people that got here afterwards, and I know Louis is here. If we could just reopen public comment for a brief moment so he could speak, please? And I don't know if Scott was going to or not.
I think Scott's here for the rest of this stuff.
Okay, is that all right, Judge, to read, motion to reopen, or?
I guess you need a motion to reopen. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, the motion passes.
Good morning. So, as far as my...
State your name and address.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Scott Cross, Noises County Coastal Parks Director, and I live in Rockport. So, one of the things I wanted to bring to the court is that I still need to go back to my park board and discuss the item of the concession area with them. Like I said, Scott Harris had said earlier, that was pulled on hold, and so I want to be able to bring a recommendation from the board to y'all on that concession space, and I haven't had a chance to do that. Unless we can get Troy to call a special meeting before the 29th, that's my next board meeting, 28th, excuse me, 28th, that's the day after y'all's Commissioners' Court, so I'll work with him on doing that, that way I can have that recommendation to you. And that's really about all I've got to add to that. Just want to let y'all know.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, too.
Good morning. Louis Klußmeyer, Jacobs Engineering at 332 Palmetto Street, Corpus Christi. Just a quick update on Bob Hall Pier design. 60% submittal of the pier only was provided for review to LAN and the county on August 28th, and presented to the Noises County Parks Board on August 31st. We understand the review will take approximately a month, at which time we'll continue the design resulting in a 90% submittal at the end of December this year. The restaurant is currently on hold because of the uncertainty about insurance. This schedule assumes the restaurant remains on hold and does not get incorporated into the design. The design of the restaurant has remained at the 30% level. Total project schedule would need to be reviewed to reincorporate the restaurant into the design. The shape of the pier is the same as provided at the 30% submittal. Several differences between the 30 and the 60% submittal that was submitted. There is significantly increased amount of information on the plans, significantly increased number of sheets, membrane size, the reinforcing of the piles and the pier structure. Those have been determined and are shown on the drawings. The design team has reviewed the light levels on the pier. We've reduced the distance between the lights on the pier from 66 to 50 feet in between them to provide better lighting. The ADA ramp up to the pier from the beach has been designed and detailed. The structure supporting the county area and the pier has been designed and detailed. County area plans have been developed, showing the structural design, wall finishes, flooring, floor layout, lighting, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. Project cost at the 30% level was 21.7 million, and the estimated cost at the 60% level is slightly higher at 21.75 million. The design team performed a quantity takeoff with the revised design, checked material prices for changes between April and August. We also discussed constructability with contractors, looking for ways to increase efficiencies and therefore reduce costs. Findings were that the material prices have not significantly changed, if anything, a slight decrease of approximately 2%. Unfortunately, labor costs have continued to rise, offsetting the reduction in material prices. Some elements of the pier went down in costs, some went up in cost, resulting in a cost estimate that's virtually unchanged. With respect to permitting, the project was advertised for public comment by the Corps on April 6, 2023. TPWD and US Fish and Wildlife did submit comments in response. The design team has responded to those comments, and the Corps continues to review the permit. We expect that the permit will be received late this year so that we can have a permit available by the time we go to bid. In terms of schedule, we do expect that we can get the final documents to the county by February, early March, and then bid first quarter next year for construction within nine to 10 months, nine to 12 months.
Very fast submittal.
Perfect timing, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Closing comments again, is there anyone else? Moving on to our regular agenda, item A1, discuss and consider accepting Briscoe King Pavilion new facility architectural proposal presented to the Texas... Oh, I think you're going to, did you say, sorry?
I am, Judge. I'd like to make a motion to table that till September 27th.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes to table to September. Item number two, discuss and consider authorizing and approving a cooperative contract purchase under Sourcewell contract number 031121 with Ewald Kubota for two Kubota front loader tractors for Noises County.
Yes, ma'am, that's my item, Scott Cross. That's for, to replace two trackers we have, that's using this year's current budget.
Judge, motion to pass.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Item number three, discuss and consider termination of an engineering service agreement with Mont McDonald Group LLC in connection with the Pacquiao Channel Living Shoreline project and...
Yes, ma'am. The problem I have there is all the senior coastal engineers, even the junior coastal engineers have left that office, and there are no coastal engineers in that office at all. And so, I don't have a lot of confidence in that gap being plugged, and I'm under serious time constraints in deliverables, and I need to meet with the GLO, and I do not want to waiver on that, they've been a great partner of mine. So, I'm asking to give them 30-day notice so I can get my work product, and then using our internal, our local procurement procedures, the GLO has already told me I can use those, go out and find and select another engineering firm that has that coastal engineering background.
So moved, Judge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number four, discuss and consider authorizing and approving execution of a Sourcewell cooperative contract.
This is for my, this is my front end loader, and we rotate these things out every three years, and this is, you know, I've worked with Jenny's office on all these equipment purchases, and so everything's in order.
Judge, and these are, these are budgeted funds, Judge, for the record?
Yes, yes, sir, I'll bridge it, I'm sorry. And another thing is, is that these pieces of equipment that I'm trying to get, they're on the lots right now. It's one of the auditor's requirements that if we're going to make a purchase in September, we have to take ownership of it before October 1st, or that expense gets pushed to October 1st. So, with y'all's approval, I can go get that stuff today, as soon as I get a PO.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, discuss and consider setting the first day or fraction of day juror service pay at the rate of 20, the second day or fraction of day at 58. And Ann Lorenzen, I think our district clerk is here to discuss this. And this has been budgeted already, I am told, as well.
Yes, Judge, this is a small increase in our first day as well as midday, however, the state is now giving us reimbursement for first day as well as more, so theoretically, our first day is actually costing us less.
So, we have funds already set aside, but Ms. Lorenzen, did you want to add to that?
Well, since I've been, since I've been here, this is about the second time that the state has increased the jury pay. I wish it would encourage more people to attend jury, but at least we do help them because they take a day or so off from work, and it's very difficult, especially with the economy right now. So, what my office has done is we have worked with Tyler Technology, who has our courthouse technologies, our program, and made sure that those fees are in the system, because we are responsible for paying those jurors. We pay, my office pays the first day, but each and every day after, if they are on a jury panel, that's taken care of by the bailiff. And so, and we also work closely with Dale's office, with Marco, to make sure that we are doing everything correctly. So, we're ready to go with that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for popping up here for this, too, if there were any questions. But we have a motion and a second, and any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number six, discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners' Court meetings, dates, workshops, related matters. I, I think there is a copy of the list in your packets, if anyone has any.
Judge, I do. I would like to ask the Court to have a special meeting on September 19th, specifically for the Bob Hall Pier presentation. I need to, I need to get that going and the Court's approval so that we can keep that ball rolling. And there was a technical glitch today, it was supposed to be on today, and it didn't get on, and so I would like to be able to do that. Plus, the engineer, if I'm not mistaken, had indicated he's going to be gone the 27th, I think, because he's got a family obligation, and he thought it was going to be today. So, I don't think it will take a long time, was just hoping that we could do that for a couple of hours on the 19th of September, if the Court would so indulge.
I am looking at my calendar, and we have TERS meetings, it looks like it would have to be after lunch.
Whatever, if that works for everybody, I would think it's maybe...
If everyone else can look at theirs to see how that would work.
If 1:30 works for everybody on the 19th, it would be appreciated.
Do we need a motion for that?
I was just waiting to see if anybody had, wanted to check their calendar before I made a motion.
Does anybody else have any questions with it, or are we going to be able to have people here? I'm, I can make the 19th at 1:30.
I'm free as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would make a motion, then we'd set a meeting for September 19th at 1:30 PM for the sole purpose of having the public hearing and presentation and action item for Bob Hall Pier.
This would be a one-item agenda meeting.
That's correct, Judge.
Yes, yes. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh. The motion passes. Moving on to item B, grants, discuss and consider authorizing execution of a statement of grant award from the Texas Indigent Defense. And I see Anna already at the podium, ready to answer. This is the 80% that we are going to have to pay. We have already budgeted $100,000. I think the increase is going to be the $39,000, is what I'm told, Dale.
That's correct, yes.
Um, Anna, you want to add anything to that, or what? This is the last year of that grant, yes.
This is the last year, yes. This is, we won't be able to apply for this grant for Indigent Defense. There might be some other improvement grants from TIDC, but this is the last one for the Indigent Coordinators.
And then, for everyone's clarification, you know, we have benefit on the front end of this. This is the final year that really cost us. It would be disingenuine of us to bail on the last year. Might hurt us in future grants as well.
Yes, Judge, yes, Judge, it's not a $129,000 increase in budget. We already had $100,000 plus, already budgeted for it. It's like only a $39,000 increase to make up the 139.
I'll make the motion to pass this. Yes, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Commissioner, did you have something, Gonzalez? I'm sorry.
Dale, could you kind of explain that one a little bit slower?
Yeah.
I didn't hear.
Can you say that a little bit slower? He's saying we had budgeted, there's...
Last year, we were on the 60-40 share of it, so we had budgeted about $100,000 in the budget for the transfer for that year. So, for this final year, going to 80-20, we don't need the 139, we just need the amount to make the 139, which is about $30,000.
We're just short $30,000. It's already been budgeted. We have to increase to about $39,000.
And that's our share for the, for the match?
Our share, yes, for the last year of this grant.
That is correct.
Which is October 23 to September 24.
So, we better start thinking what we're going to do next year, right?
Yeah, well, if we're going to have anything, yes.
And they're aware that that is the last year.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
The motion passes, thanks, Anna. Moving on to, I'm sorry?
$39,000?
That, that's what I have here, is 30, there's $100,000, is it 30 or 39 total? It's around 30-something.
It's around 30-some thousand.
$139.
The total of transfer was 139, but the increase was a small amount to get that lower.
Is it for the record?
Yeah, it just, we voted on to go ahead and continue with the 139, so you don't really need the difference, yeah. On...
So, we continue?
It's only going to cost us an additional $30,000, because it's already budgeted $100, but she's asking for the exact amount, and we don't have that right here in front of us, yeah.
But I think the motion, the motion was made to do exactly as the motion was printed in here, is that what you made the motion?
Yeah, yeah, the motion, but...
Just making sure, I guess.
Yes, that's why I said it's, it's, we're approving the 139, 904. Yes.
Okay.
Item C1, discuss and consider award and execution of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA-funded Agreement with South Texas Building Partners. And Michael, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, Judge, on July 26th, the Court conditionally selected South Texas Building Partners for the construction of the six-floor renovations project for the Public Defender's Office. It was contingent upon the contractor's agreement to maintain costs within the budgeted amount of $400,000. They did so. They worked with Juan's office on some value engineering and arrived at a figure of $399,390. Recommendation is to award this contract to South Texas Building Partners. It's been reviewed by the County Attorney's Office for legal sufficiency. We've also received our SAM.gov to satisfy the ARPA requirements, and Public Works recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, but just for clarification, didn't we vote if they came underneath, we didn't have to come back? Is this really necessary to bring it back? We were really hoping they were moving along on this project.
Since it was unknown as to what the figure was going to be, I would always like to come back and let you know exactly what the amount is that you're committing to.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you very much. Item D1, discuss and consider authorizing and approving a Texas DIR contract with Dale Technologies in the amount of $124,790 for the purchase of computer hardware. And this is coming out of the Capital Outlay 1900, and we did this, this is part two, we did it last year to replace some out-of-warranty computers and things, so...
Correct. And the IT Director, Darryl Earwood, has assured us that Dale will be able to deliver these items prior to September 30. With the court's approval today, we'll enter a purchase order and expedite that process.
But we were needing to do this today for them to be able to comply, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the urgency is of the timeline today.
And the funding on this again, I'm sorry?
Capital Outlay 1900.
So moved.
We have a motion. I will second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. We have tabled item E number one. E2, I asked to, if we possibly, I'm sorry?
Did we table?
You tabled indefinitely. Oh, someone else did. They called to table that.
But we need to, so we need to do that though?
I didn't mark it down. I'm sorry. I just marked it on my, I need a motion. I received information that they are not ready to proceed on this one. Am I correct, Mr. Saleh? It's still a no-go on this. They want to table this. We don't have to discuss it if we're tabling. I just need to make sure I'm making a motion that's correct.
That is correct, Judge.
To win, Judge.
The Public Defender's Office.
Indefinitely. They're, they're changing their plan totally, so.
Motion to table indefinitely.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. To table, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. The motion passes. I'm sorry. I thought it was your item that we voted on. I forgot in my notes. We hadn't done it. On item E2, it was brought to my attention that we might possibly want to take that to executive session. I will ask the court if that's their wishes or if they want to proceed. And this is on transferring two positions into the county judge's office. It has some thing to do with some future plans with our budget for later this afternoon. If you are wanting to proceed or you.
I have a legal question about that, so I don't know.
That's why I had put, we'll take it to executive, yes.
Is it true?
I had a question also, but then I was told it might not be, but I prefer to take it and ask before we go into discussion, yes.
And could I ask that if you can email me during the between time, then I can get staff to be working on that question so I can present an answer without delay. During executive.
Then moving on to item F, the auditors. Discuss and consider additional funding to the group health account in the amount of $4 million to cover at least five major claims that are pending and may not be covered by our stop-loss protection. Let me be clear also, and I know Dale is going to state this. This $5 million will cover other cases that we would be and will be reimbursed for in the future. But this is a significant amount upfront that we are having to fund and want to make sure that our account is capable for next year.
Yes, Your Honor, I provide you the revenue expense summary for the period ending as of July for your information you have. I just got the balances for August. Unfortunately, I couldn't update those to get those to you. And for August, there was a reduction of about $500,000 loss. So we're fun bounced right now and the group health is right at $300,000. We know some very, very large claims are be pending very soon. We know we got some coming very, in the near future. We want to make sure we take account of that this year because next year is going to be a very difficult year. And we may not have the funds next year where we probably will this year. A few years ago, the county did allow us to loan some money to the health insurance fund. It was just a loan to help, to help with the cash balances. And we're going to make sure that gets taken care of first. But however, this is not a loan. This is a, this is a basically claim for additional revenue to offset the expenses. And as you mentioned, some of the claims will qualify for stop-loss. Not all of them will. So it's going to be a hardship on, on the county. We know it's at least, at least five, if not eight. It is a significant number of large claims that we want to make sure we cover for. Working with Tomas and others, we believe that $4 million will be a significant amount. And at some point in time, when we do get some reimbursement from the, the stop-loss carrier, and it, it, it looks like we might be able to do something, we may be able to then go back on this and give the money back if, if we can. But, but there, this is something we, we definitely need. We're about ready to cut a lot of, a very large expense, but doesn't include some, some of the claims. It's a very large amount. I think over a million dollars of claims about ready to go out and doesn't include any of these large claims. So.
I would like to also caution on the saying we're going to pay this back because I know we also had to transfer money from, ARPA covered the COVID expenses as well. This seems to be continuing pretty regularly where we need to look at possibly the.
And, and the way we have our, our premiums, we, we are on a cash basis where we try to, our premiums are just barely cover cost. So if we have these large claims, we don't have enough to cover it.
And I'm sorry, Commissioner, did I interrupt you? Yes.
No, it's okay. I just, you know, it really bothers me when, just about every year, we find ourselves in the same position before budget or right during budget. We don't, what, we don't know what's going on until the last month or what. I mean, I never heard before that we're short $4 million anywhere or that we're going to have expenses of $4 million. We never got a report to, to warrant us to say this and so we can work on it. You know, I understand that there's $4 million of interest that's already been, it's already been transferred, I think, into the general account, I guess without Commissioners Court approval. But, you know, I just, and I know there's probably, there's probably about maybe $7 million, but we're not talking about the other $3 million. You know, this is really at the shove and push at the end of this thing that really bothers me. Because we're in a hurry now. We're trying to do things. We're trying to do the budget, you know, and, and we have to have known that there was medical problems. We had to have known that, you know, the expense, we had to have known. And here we are, we never knew anything about it till now. You need $4 million. Well, I need $3 million, you know? So where are we going to get it from, you know? I need $3 million to do other things that I want to do to balance the budget. You know, you need $4 million to take care of other things and, you know. I, I just don't, you know, it just, I don't know. To me, I'm just, it really bothers me when we have to, when, when we're pushing things and, and we have to vote on things that, you know, we just don't have really the, the time to digest it and look at it and saying where, where, where we're going to get the money from and what extra means are there? I mean, you know, that's a question about the interest that we've earned from all, from all accounts. You know, and I know there's more than $4 million there. Were there separate accounts? I know some of them we cannot use, but I know we've got more than $4 million.
On this item is only to take care of the health insurance that were required. This is not about the rest. And historically, last year, we transferred more than that. We didn't budget enough. And I know just recently, in the last two months, probably July or something, there have been major cases that have been brought to my attention. And because of HIPAA laws, we can't talk about them. We can't bring them to court or anything, so.
Bring it to Commissioner, to the Commissioners. I mean, we make the decisions to pay them or not pay them. And we know about them once we pay them. So, but we're, I know there's a HIPAA, but we're, I think we're in a position where we have to know what's going on before we pay something. I think, I mean, if it's a HIPAA law, then all I'm going to say yes or no, I mean.
Well, y'all, y'all, y'all contract with a third-party administrator that handles all the claims for, for health insurance. We budget anywhere from 14 to 15 million dollars a year for our regular health insurance. And normally that does cover it, but there are some years where we have major claims. People can go in for whatever it be the case and, and have major claims whether, because no one, no one knows what's coming up. And these are major claims and we don't know about them until they happen as well. Because HIPAA law requires that, 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 you know, our, our insurance people and the people who deal with insurance, deal with this, and then, then they bring it to our attention that we need to start preparing for funding for this. And this year is bad because we have more than one and we have several. And if you remember four or five years ago, we had the same amount where we had to transfer $5 million to cover it, so. We, we always try to plan for a, a good year. If we have a good year with no major claims, we, we would never have a problem. But these happen.
I have a question.
Yes.
How much time does insurance or the third-party consultant or whoever is helping us, how much time do they give you to tell you that they have a stop-loss claim? You know, and how far back do you know about this claim that, you know, that they're not going to cover and we're going to be responsible for?
Well, if it's a normal claim, like we know we have several coming in with stop-losses. Once we exceed $400,000, then it covers by this. And it goes through our third-party administrator. They usually tell us these large claims are coming to pay for this. And we, we, we inform y'all when we know these are coming in and saying. But they, they let us try to know because they know that, we know they have to have, we have to have the funds available to cover it. And we, we then know, then our stop-loss can take anywhere from one to seven months to reimburse us for it.
So is it the third-party consultant that's supposed to notify you about this losses?
I mean, personally, they, they deal with the HR because HR is overseeing most of it.
And they notify me and the judge.
And they do not notify me slightly when, when these things are coming.
Mr. Duran's up here. I think he'd like to comment.
If you don't mind, I'd like to put some perspective here. We do not, never have notified HR, by the way, in the past, since I've been here. I've been here for a little while. I don't know how much longer, but I've been here for a while. Typically, the judge gets notified. Typically, I've talked very closely with the auditors. The auditor himself and keeping him abreast within 24 hours that I know about. The way it works is there's two real issues to this issue that you have in front of you that you're discussing. One is that you have not raised premiums for several years now. And so you're building up a spread, a deficit in your process. Every year, I've told you that. Every year, I've recommended you increase the minimum of 4%. I've done that in the past for several years. And because of different circumstances, the revenue is a shortfall in revenue. If you went full insured right now, you'd have to increase your, your premiums substantially and your contributions, both employees and, and the county. So that's a built-in problem that you have had now, built in for several years. You have been made aware of it every year, prior administrations and current administration. That's one issue. What you have compounded in, within that structure that you have already built in over the last several years. You have had an unusual high number of large claims. And large, let me define it, 100,000 and over. That those 13 claims are costing you this year already paid in $10,000. That's a fact. That's shown. And that is a report that I have prepared for many years. Boone Chapman provides many information. I prepare it. They prepare it. We compare it. We compare it with the financial report that Auditor's Office prepares. A number of years ago, there was always a discrepancy between his report and mine because I'm looking at every day at it. And I get reports almost weekly on the, on the status of the fund. And the auditor doesn't do it that often. So our numbers were somewhat different, but they would catch up one another. I believe it was during the Judge Neal's administration, he said, this is not a confusion. So let's work out of the auditor's report, which is the official report. But we would still discuss the prepared report that was more accurate in, because of the timelines. It was, they were both accurate and they were saying the same thing, except that I'm aware of it before he is. And so my reports are more current. But the accuracy, they catch up at some point in time where they're the same. That's one issue is your revenue problem. But set that aside, this is particularly a bad year in that you've had 13 claims in excess of $100,000 each, some as high as almost $200,000. You're only insured at $400,000, 435, I believe, actually. So anything that exceeds that will be recovered. However, in addition to that bad year, you have had an unusually hard, large claim that started at $5 million. And you're only reinsured at a little over $400,000. So it has to be in excess of $400,000 for you to recover money. That $5 million claim was reduced through contracts that we have, that I have negotiated in the past few years and have done so with the assistance of the person sitting back there. And that bill of $5 million, gross bill, approximately $5 million, has been reduced to about $1,009,000 at this time. We're still questioning and challenging some of the charges. I'm not going to get into the details of the, of the bill because then that could be construed as disclosing information that could identify the claimant and that will be covered under HIPAA. We can discuss claims. We cannot, we have to do it carefully, okay? Now, in addition to that, that bill has now been rejected with my discussions with your administrator, Boone Chapman, because they're not providing us sufficient information for us to determine if it's correct. And so we had to reject the bill in order to comply with federal law that requires bills either be paid or rejected by a certain timeline. In the negotiations of this process, we have actually, and I agreed with their decision. They made the decision that they needed to reject it, they meaning Boone Chapman, while we continue negotiating the $1,009,000 that we believe you are responsible for. But we think we can get it down. That's, that is ongoing right now. And we will ultimately do it. Now, out of that $1,009,000 that we're going to have to pay, okay? We expect that we should be getting back about $1,005,000 after we submit that claim. After it's paid, it has to be submitted for review and audit by the reinsurance carrier, which happens to be Aetna Insurance. At that time, we believe you'll be entitled to recover $1.5 million approximately. Don't hold me to that. We don't know exactly, but it'll be somewhere around $1,005,000 because you will be ultimately responsible for about $450,000. And so when we deduct the $1,009,000 by the $450,000, that money will come back to you, okay? Now, to address the other issue that I think was raised, every year, we have discussed and, and, and the county has, and we've established an audit committee, not an audit committee, but an insurance committee. Years ago, I think it was started by Mr. Neal, Judge Neal. And we would meet and discuss those numbers monthly with that committee. However, in addition to that, I would discuss it with Mr. Waterman. And every time that something came up of that magnitude or that issue, Mr. Waterman would be aware, would discuss it at some point in time. So he'd say, well, let's take it. What do you think? Let's take it to, to Mr. Neal, and we did. And we've been doing that for years. And, and the things that would come to you will be the overall pictures. We'd be glad to give you anything you want to have. But you have known, and when I say maybe not individually, but you, the county, has been well aware for at least 20 years that I remember, exactly what's going on in your, in your fund and in your insurance. Now, whether you specifically were notified or not, I have no clue. That's, you know, I take it to the county. I take it to the corporate parties that I work with. HR has never been involved at this type of level of stuff. By choice, it could be. I mean, that's yours decision, not mine. That's basically, I hope that that answers your questions and puts perspective in it.
I, I have some questions and some commentary. So we just recently changed our HR director. So maybe that was what the previous practice or expectation was then. But I don't think that our new HR director's been given that opportunity. I think if you look at any other organization, the HR is actively involved.
He gets our notice.
I want to address that. That's not my decision. You decide who we go to.
So, so hold on, because you got to speak, so now I get to.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So court, Tomas just threw us under the bus saying that we as a county should know. And I don't. Let me introduce myself. My name is John. I'm the chairman of the.
That's not what I said, sir.
I don't think he.
You are not accurate to represent what I said, sir.
Let me introduce myself. My, I am the chair of the insurance committee. And you have not brought me this information. I don't know if you've told Dale. And, and maybe there is a lack of communication there, but I have not seen this. You're talking about Steve Waterman, who hasn't been here in years. You're talking about Lloyd Neal, who God rest his soul, has not been here in years. So I, I, I don't know where we're at now. I know that you may give this information to the judge, but there are a lot of questions. So I'm, I'm telling you, I, I know when I'm being thrown under the bus. And so I think collectively, that's what you have said. So if I'm wrong, then, then I apologize because I'm misrepresenting it, but that's how I'm taking it. I'm not here to point fingers today, but the fact is, is that we're given a $4 million price tag. And that's very alarming. That did not happen overnight. That did not happen overnight. Amounts that go over above $50,000, we should be made aware of. And if you say you're getting this information in real time, daily, or almost, you know, in a real-time situation, we need to be given that information. So we need to create a system in place so that we are up to date on this. Because if we're giving it to it at the lump sum like Commissioner said, like, how did, how did we get here? We got to figure that out. We got to fix this because this is unacceptable. When we're talking about this kind of money, we're dealing with this kind of budget constraint this year. And, and to have all of this included is, is very overwhelming and it gives off the wrong message. So I think as, as third-party administrator, it's, it's, it's your job, which apparently you say you're doing, which is good to hear. That's why we hired you, that you're checking. But there's, there's been a large disconnect. And it doesn't have to be information just given to the insurance committee. I think that all of us should be getting updates. Now, if it's a way to create a report that goes, you send to Dale, you send it to the judge, and then you just CC or blank copy everybody on there, so we at least get it. And if we review it, then great. There, there's, there's a lot going on to this. And that's why we hired you, is to be able to monitor for it. That's why you've said that, that even in this time, while we're leading up to a new bid for a new, for to put out a bid proposal for, for a new consultant, or maybe it's you again. But, but that we need to have a system in place that there is communication given in that real time that you have. real time that you have. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm expecting. I mean, this is a bad year. This is a horrible year compared to previous years or anywhere that I've ever served to see that many claims over that much money. So we need to be able to make sure that we're giving that data. And if we have it, point us to it so that we can look at it and say, okay, we saw the paper trail along. If there's not, then help us develop a paper trail, emailed trail, so that we can stay on top of it. If we don't, then we don't, right? Then that's on us. We shouldn't act surprised when we get to that point. But I agree with Commissioner Gonzalez, when this is given to us all right here, all right now, when we've known it's been leading up, that's, I think, the concern. At least, that's the concern that I have on this. So that's all I'm asking for, is that as we continue to move forward, we need to make sure that we are fully aware of anything that goes above, say, fifty thousand dollar threshold, that that's on the path to getting to a hundred, two hundred thousand, which you mentioned, almost all claims are at least a hundred thousand, and then we have some that are close to two hundred. So those, add those up, times ten, thirteen, whatever the number is, that's where we're getting into potentially millions of dollars. So that's all I'm saying, is that we need to make sure that, find out what is getting to the stop-loss, when is it, are we on that path to hitting the stop-loss number, but at least that threshold. Whether you say it doesn't need to be fifty, if you say it needs to be twenty-five or seventy-five, you can help come up with that number. You're our consultant, that's why we hire you. But we need to have some number so we can hear, have somebody ring the bell that says, okay, here is where we're at, let's know that this is going to be a tough year. And I get what you're saying about premiums haven't been built up over the years. That's something that we have tried to be conscious about, and the judge mentioned it, and we've seen in presentation. It's something that's going to have to probably be put on to the employees coming up next year. And I'm all for giving everybody enough notice. We don't want to do it right now in the budget time, turn right around three weeks later, now it's on you. Give everybody a notice that there will be an increase to cover that. So these are areas we can improve, these are areas that we can take care of, but if we get to such a large amount, and it seems for most of us that it kind of pops up out of nowhere, then understand our surprise when we get to that point. So help us develop something. Help us come up with a system, right? Don't just blindly say it's given to the county and the county knows well. The county's a big governmental entity. We got a lot. Dale's got a lot on this plate. I mean, gosh, the scramble that we've had this last year, this last month and a half, feels like a year and a half, has been a lot for everyone. But we need to create checks and balances so that if you're giving it to him, we're getting it as well, whether it be through a court administrator, whether it be through a budget assistant to the judge. But like I said, if we all get that carbon copy and get those reports, if they're simple to, you can print up, just include them in there. If they're simple that you can email, send them by email. I don't care what you come up with. Just help us come up with something, because gone are the days of Steve Waterman being very active and involved, that worked with you closely. Judge Neal was an expert, that was his field, that was what he did. So we've gone through transition over these last five to six years now. So we have different people with different strengths here at the courthouse and here on staff. So help us come up with something. That's all I'm asking for you to do. Thank you.
May I speak, ma'am?
And I just want to point out also that I do agree, and that's one of the reasons why I asked Commissioner Mottos to be on my insurance committee. And I do want to point out that our HR department does get notifications, but his notifications clearly have very confidential information on there that he cannot forward, but he could possibly, for our sake in the county, come up with a list to send to each, the commissioners, that there's a case in the hospital, and I think, what does it say, high risk, high cost, what, your alarms, I've seen them, something. And they have come to me. I think some of the disconnect on the amount of money needed to transfer are these are very recent cases, and I hate to say this in court, but maybe some possibilities that the county didn't do our position correctly, possibly, so it's an added cost. So there's a lot of insurance, dealing with insurance, we all know, it doesn't matter what kind of claim you have, that you continue to get those, or they're a long time before you figure out what your bill is in the end. If you have a surgery or something, it takes a while. So absolutely hear you, absolutely understand the former, you know, previous years, your work with Lloyd Neal and his expertise in that.
And other judges.
And other judges. But it's not mine. It's the reason I asked for Commissioner Mottos to be in there, so maybe we should try to come up with a system that helps us all be where we're not surprised at the end of the year. And possibly, quite possibly, this wouldn't be an issue, and I hate to throw this on Dale, so sorry Dale, I don't mean this ugly, but had those monthly reports where we know what our fund balances are, that monthly, where we know when we get into situations like this, because just pulling up the item here in our budget, when I saw fourteen million budgeted for it, and the employee, you know, contribution is only two, I mean, what kind of company can withstand that for too long? And that's without these, this four million, that we're still waiting on these bills. So that's going to possibly be sixteen or eighteen million. There's, we have to work on this. And I agree, and I think it was why we wanted to sit down and do some other discussions, why I put Commissioner Mottos on that team, and I think that we can moving forward, but we have to do better. Yes, I agree.
Would you please let me know when I can speak?
Yes. If you want to respond, yeah, I thought.
I don't want to respond. I'm not a politician, and I probably should not be responding to anything. I believe you have received everything that you have instructed me to have prepared for you all.
And I will say, you came to my office with every claim, so I filled on that part if I'm supposed to negotiate. You did come.
If the court wishes to change the process, and I don't mean to interrupt you, I need to be told that, by the court or by the judge. I don't respond to individual requests from a commissioner, because I just don't find it appropriate. I don't work for any one commissioner, I work for the county. I do consulting work for the county and on behalf of the county. You have had excellent work done. You may not recognize it, it may just be average, but some people's consideration, not by mine and not by experts in the field. I'm probably the best in town that knows what he's doing. And that's fine, and you have a proposal from me. You all wanted some extension time for determining what you want to do in the future. I've given you two proposals, of which I asked you to pick one, whichever one you wanted, you could take to the court.
That's going to come up on our next meeting, so we can talk about that.
That's fine. Well, I'm just saying, that's what you have. At this point, I'm really hesitant to even suggest that you should keep him. There's a time and place where it's not pleasant, and like I said, I'm not a politician, so I'm not going to address what I don't consider accurate. I'm just going to ignore it and blow it off. And anyway, we probably need to talk and further discuss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge?
I know.
I had a question for Dale before I had another. Oh, I'm sorry, are we talking, Commissioner Neal?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dale, tell me again, and I've got a request to Judge, but I wanted to ask him before I made the request. Where is this funding coming from, again?
We'll have to basically expense the general fund and all the operating funds that have health insurance claims, transferring those funds from reserves over to the health insurance to pay for it.
So basically, we're getting our reserves?
Unfortunately, yes.
For goodness, okay. Judge, I have questions. I would like to take this into executive session on the, some legal questions, please, if we could hold off on voting on this, please.
Can we take, what would the code be when I get ready, Jenny?
You can take any item under the conference with your, you know, attorney-client conference, but as with the other issue, if you could send me the legal question ahead of time, I can begin the research.
It's, I'll send it to you. And if you deem it unworthy, but it's, I don't really want to bring it out here and accidentally slander anybody or anything.
And then I'll need the code for later when they go in. And we're pretty quick, and actually, we're going to there, so you need to ask her now.
I just want to clarify, when you say reserves, you say, is that interest already in, that we put in the reserve already?
Correct.
Or is that not including the interest that hasn't been put into reserve?
No, all the interest is already in the books right now.
All of it?
Yes.
Not this year's?
All of it?
All of it?
Yes.
Up to the date?
Yes.
So we, all we say we have is four million dollars?
Yes. It's in the books.
In the.
In the books.
Whether it's in the general fund, or road fund, or coastal parks, or all the COs, or wherever it belongs, it's there.
Our reserve funds are basically all leftover monies in any account.
Believe me, I'll deal with this for many years.
I know, this is like.
And I still don't, sometimes I get confused with the numbers.
Me too. I've been confused.
But I just think, I just think, well, the accounts that we have, and the ones you sent me, Dale, I mean, there's got to be more than four million dollars in there.
And what's your count?
Well, you sent me a whole, I haven't even read it yet, but read the whole thing yet, but I mean.
My records show, when I ran the revenue expense for our interest, for the general fund, we had four point five million.
Okay, so that's four, four, five, this is four, so you say only we had four, so it's four point five.
Well, I estimated four when we went back in May.
Okay.
And this is all he's requesting to transfer, that is the way it's only four, not four point five. He's requesting four to go into the health insurance.
Right. But which is the other five stays in the reserve?
While you're looking to see if we're going to take this into executive, we have one more item before, or two more votes that we have to make before. So I'll move on to approve the budget change order number twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yes, Your Honor, budget change order number twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Majority of the requests are very normal requests. The largest one is on page two, where the sheriff is requesting to use some of the salary savings to cover some of his overtime, because overtime is a significant large amount. There are salary savings to cover this, but there are still probably some more shortages they may have after this effect, but the funds are available for this request. I submit budget change order twenty-one. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, is that two million includes the Oasis County Jail food and kitchen, or what?
I didn't hear you.
Because here, we had it listed down as one million for the overtime and one million for the food and kitchen.
That's what budget, that's what we're budgeting. This is a budget change order for last year.
This is paying for what we've already done. This is, that's not next year's deal. We're going to get into that after lunch.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
But that's the budget.
That's the budget.
He's got a change order in here. He's just asking.
Yes, just right now, this is already for this year, yes. I'll make the motion to pass the change order. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. I need Commissioner Hernandez to come back for this next vote, although I don't think we need a, we will, it depends.
I still think it's whoever's here, but I don't know how you can have unanimous if someone's absent.
That's right. But she's told us that how to be unanimous.
I just don't think that's right, Jenny. I'd like you to check that. There's no physical way we could do it if someone's in the bathroom and can't come out.
Oh, you're looking at the five oh vote for the contract negotiations.
For the collective bargaining deal. Do we have to have five oh, or do we have to have who's present unanimous?
Who's present is.
Okay, good. We were told before, so we were, yes, okay.
Judge, I'd make the motion.
Are we, are we still waiting on Jenny to decide about the number? Are we taking that into executive? We're good? Okay. So we have a motion, oh, I have to read all this, sorry, guys, we can't just do it. Discuss and consider whether pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0725, deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the collective bargaining contract being negotiated between the county and Oasis County Sheriff's Officers Association pursuant to Section 174 Texas Local Government Code and related matters based on recommendation of special counsel. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Commissioner Hernandez, are you an aye on that? Thank you. I didn't hear you. I also had a request to not record executive before we go into that.
So moved, unless, I think one of them may be required by law, I don't know if.
Is the bargaining required by law? No, none of it's required.
Anything required by law to record today?
Yeah.
No, he said no. Just legal advice, it's not required to be recorded. No, or yes?
Going under 551.0725 for contract negotiations. Oh, but you're under collective bargaining.
I can't hear what you're saying.
A legal advice, we're not really doing any, yeah.
So does it require recording or not? That's all I want to know.
Yes.
Please.
It's a specialized legal briefing that's recognized under the Act that simply allows us, so you're going to get a legal briefing.
So no?
And you're also, but the only difference is that it also allows you, because of the opinion that's been allowed, to discuss the fiscal aspect of the negotiations, which ordinarily is not part of the legal briefing, but it kind of all rolled in.
But we're okay not recording it.
So in my opinion, you're okay not recording.
Judge, I'd make a motion, we're not recording executive session today, all of them. And do a certified, what do you call?
A certified.
Certified.
That's correct. Certified agenda, you definitely still need.
Certified agenda, that's my motion.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
So what's the real reason why we're not doing this?
We've been doing it for the last year, just at paper.
I know, I know, we've been doing it, so now, so I mean, I'm just saying, we're jumping back and forth. So what would I want to do with, what's the reason would I want to do it this time?
Recorded agenda? Oh, he just didn't like the video recording. He wants to do all of them certified, he wanted to have a motion to do them all, but I thought there was some instances where we're required to do the video, or the taped recording, audio.
So it needs to be a policy change, and so, because until it's a policy change, we have to do it one at a time.
We have to vote on it each time.
Until someone puts on as a policy change, then we have to vote on whether to do it or not. I don't know that I have a compelling reason one way or the other, but if you don't want to do it, it doesn't hurt my feelings. Doesn't hurt my feelings.
All right.
I know.
All right.
Just trying to follow.
That's all I had, Judge.
So we have a motion and a second, or are you retracting your motion? Or, okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of not recording executive session, doing a certified agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So now, it is ten fifty-five, we're going into executive session. Public notice is given, Commissioners Court may go into an executive session anytime during meetings to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the local Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and for those executive sessions, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda item in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event Commissioners Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the local government code, Vernon's Texas Codes, Texas, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.0745, 551.076, 551.086, 551.087, the Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on any items discussed in an executive session. Item A, consult with attorney pursuant to 551.0725 Texas Government Code to deliberate business and financial issues relating to collective bargaining contract being negotiated between the county and Oasis County Sheriff's Officers Association pursuant to Section[1743.25] pursuant to section 174 Texas Local Government Code. Item B, consult with the county attorney and outside counsel regarding case number 2022, CCB 613374, Maria Krostoff, and Oasis County, and Oasis County Court at Law Number Four and related matters, Texas Government Code 551 dot 071. Item C, consult with the county attorney regarding First Amendment to the amended cooperative agreement for city-operated Corpus Christi, Oasis County Public Health District, authorize county attorney to negotiate public health services and related matters, Texas Government Code 551 dot 071. Item D, consult with the county attorney regarding the city-county inter-local agreement regarding the approval of subdivision plats within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Corpus Christi and related matters, Texas Government Code 551 dot 071. Item E2, discuss and consider transferring the following Commissioners Court administration positions under the county judge, executive secretary, budget assistant. Discuss and consider revising their job description of the Commissioners Court Admin, Executive Secretary position to a new job title with refined duties as recommended by the Human Resources Director and Related Matters, Texas Government Code 551 dot 071. Item F1, discuss and consider providing additional funding to the group health account in the amount of $4 million to cover at least five major claims that are pending and may not be covered by the stop-loss protection, and that code would be, what, Jenny?
Which one?
For the health insurance coverage.
I believe that one would be 551, oh, seven, one, which would just be attorney-client conference.
Still the same, 551 dot 071 of the Texas Government Code. And so it is 10:59 now, and we are going to executive. Thank you. Forty-nine, and we are coming back to, um, open session from executive. We have a couple of things to vote on. I think you're up first, your action, Commissioner Mottis, on the item A. On the cause, the motion to not, yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
Yes, Judge, I need to make a motion to deny the request for, um, item 5A.
Second? I think that was, the request was for mediation, correct?
Yeah, the request.
Mediation?
Yeah. I second that.
Yes. We have a motion and a second, um, from Commissioner, I'm sorry, to deny the request and for mediation, the request was given, yes. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The next motion is item E2. We are making, um, a motion to eliminate the Department of, um, Court Administration. Do I have to do two separate and reassign two, the two employees listed to, I think you wanna make a change to that, to the top list, reassign the two positions to the county judge, and that would be the, um, Budget Assistant and the, um, Executive Secretary, but changing the title and the job description.
I think you need to do two, Judge, because we can't.
Two separate, okay.
We can't reassign until we do the first part of it.
Okay. So, a motion to eliminate the department as of the end of the year, September 30th, of Court Administration.
With the.
I thought you said I can't.
With the reduction in force?
With the reduction in force, yes.
Okay.
I thought that's the whole point of eliminating the department. Yeah, I didn't know I needed to say that. Yes, okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Again, I want to ask the same question. I don't know, we're not reducing or forcing, we're just reassigning it.
Right now, it's a reduction, because we're eliminating the position, it's a reduction.
And then you're gonna.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Now, we have, I have a motion to transfer the position of Budget Assistant to the, um, County Judge, where's all my paperwork? I have too much stuff, to the Office of County Judge, and the new, um, job title for the Executive Secretary to the County Judge Court Agenda Coordinator. And I think you have some changes or.
Judge, yeah, I would like to.
You wanna go ahead and second that and change that, yes.
Judge, I would like to, um, change the job title to Court Agenda Coordinator, leaving off the County Judge language. And I would also like to include somewhere in here, Mr. Salee, that, that these two individuals, um, have a dotted line reporting to the rest of the court.
It's under the County Judge, but dotted line to the rest of the Commissioners Court, so we're all, yes. And I will accept that as an amendment to my motion, so.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose, aye, any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and then I think you have a motion, Commissioner Hernandez.
Well, who has the motion?
Huh? Are you gonna add to the agenda for the 19th and the, or the?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just have a motion to, uh, on the third, uh, uh, position on the administrative, uh, administration department that we're doing away with, that, uh, that position be, uh, approved or reassigned on the 19th of, uh.
You wanna add to the agenda of the 19th? Yes, to discuss and consider the position.
I think you're.
The motion's okay, but.
Yes, thank you.
But just add it to the 19th agenda.
Yes.
Meaning, right, so the, right, because of the reduction in forces of those positions, you wanna take the one that's still there and put it on re for consideration on the 19th?
Yes.
That would be the motion that I would second.
So move.
Yes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Now, I think that was all the items we had to do for the, um, after executive, so, um, I didn't miss anything, right, guys?
Were you gonna make a motion on F1, Judge?
Um, what is, I thought we didn't have a motion on that one.
And Dale, let me ask you, can I ask real quick, Judge?
Oh, yes, we have to have a motion on that one. Sorry, yes, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So you're gonna, you need to do a quick factoring on what we just did on those reduction in forces to put that back into the budget? Or to put that into the budget.
Sure, we have the, 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 the adoption of, when they, the department moving those, those positions to the judge's office and do the reduction, yes.
Right, but you got that in real time so that we can.
Into the microphone, please.
Okay.
Yes, into the microphone. And on item F1, I'm sorry, thank you so much, Jenny, for reminding me. I would, um, make the motion to approve the transfer, but I have a question about that, to make sure, with this transfer, is that going to change our next budget totals? Or has that already been included in the balance moving forward?
This balance will reduce our, our reserves, so it doesn't have an effect on your budgeted expense of revenue, so it just has a reduction of reserves.
Wait, what did you just ask, Judge? I'm sorry.
Okay, I asked, it was like, with this, is this going to affect?
On F1?
Yeah, F1, if that is going to affect our beginning balance that we're going into with this next, what we're going into with the budget.
Yes.
It will.
Yes.
Drop our funds down, our beginning balance from 28 to 24 then.
Correct.
Wow.
That's just.
That's a, that's a big deal. That's what we were worried about, yes. Yeah.
Now, the majority of it will be in the general fund, some will go to Fund 12, some will go to Fund 13, but the majority of it is the general fund, so I'd assume 95% of that will be the general fund, so it's.
Yeah. Look, we already had 28, and we have four in, in, in interest.
The four is included in that, 28, yeah.
I never knew that, because we never said that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'm just saying, when we talked about this, oh, that I've made a win before that, we talked about 28, 26, we never talked about what made up the 28. We're all, I mean, I was always thinking it was 28, but we still had the interest out there that we were gonna add.
No, if you remember the, uh, the estimated revenue that I provided you the other day, or, or when we started budget surplus, it had all sources of revenue including interest, included. And I, at the time, I estimated $4 million worth of interest.
Well, it, but it, and again, I'll, I'm gonna say just one more time, and I think there's gotta be more than $4 million of interest. Uh, I think there's, you know.
At May, when I did the estimates, that's what I came up with, it's probably, it's probably more right now, but at, at May, that's the best I could do.
Daily changes, okay.
Well, so what do you think is between May and now?
Well, when, uh, between May and now, there was been three, uh, Federal Reserve increases for, for the Fed rates, there've been additional costs, the, the interest rates have gone up significantly, so there's a lot of stuff that happened.
So.
Wait, go back to, to just this item that, I mean, 'cause that's part of a budget.
But it is, but it's, it's a valid.
Yeah.
Like a line of questioning, because, so, because the, you're asking us today to move $4 million from the reserves into this.
Yes.
But I think Commissioner Gonzalez was trying to go is, okay, why wouldn't we look at moving interest that still is out, is still out there, or whatever, that, but you're saying that's in that budget already?
When I estimated the balances, every bit of, ever, I thought every bit of the interest was included there. There may be a smaller portion that's not estimated, because when I estimated in May and now we're in August, there's significant changes that, that occurred during those, that period of time, that it could be a little bit higher, but I just ran some, uh, uh, reports from our, from our files. As of August, we're at 4.2 million.
4.2 million, it's in the.
In the books as interest.
Included in the 28 that he's already talking about. That all goes into.
No, it can't be included.
But how is it included in the 28?
Look at the, if you look at the, uh, the, your proposed budget book and you look at the revenue, you'll see it'll find itself interest, and you'll see $4 million, and that's how it's included.
Excuse me, Dale, but you didn't say there's a small portion.
We made a small portion.
Well, you said there was a small portion, probably wasn't included.
It could be that I haven't estimated, because we had Federal Reserve increase their rates, the banks have increased their, their, their rates, so, so, as of May, I had the, I did the best I could.
Oh, okay.
And we have due estimates.
It's depending on what the banks do.
Yes. But if you look at the, the revenue on, on, I can go to, I can go to the exact page if you want me to. On page 10 of the proposed budget, you say interest in revenue, we have $4 million as estimates. On page 10.
Right, so in the $28 million of the reserves, you counted the $4 million of interest, so you're telling us today that every single solitary bit of interest that we have in all the accounts that, uh, the, the nice gentleman who worked, who provided the reports, all of that interest is accounted for, and there's zero left in that interest, those interest-bearing accounts that we can use? Is that right?
Well, when I did the estimates, I was, that's, that's $4 million, but between now and then, it could be a little bit higher.
June, July, and August.
It could be 4.3, so. But that number's in our books, and, and it could, once we do our full evaluation of our, our numbers, and actually put the real numbers in, it could be 4.6, 4.7 of, of interest, or it could be higher.
At the end of, uh.
September.
Uh, September, we might have another $500,000 or $600,000 worth of interest, but we won't.
Or 2 million.
No, he said 4.6 million is 600,000.
Right now, when I ran, when I ran, when I ran it through, through August, it was 4.6.
Say that again?
When I ran my, interest has been recorded, which is from October to July, was 4.6 for general fund.
Okay, so that's it, so from August, September, and Octo, no.
We got three months to record, and we, we, anywhere from $300,000 a month for interest.
In all the accounts, or just what account?
Well, we have multiple accounts that, that have affected general fund. We have the main operating account, we have a, a Texas class, we have multiple investments that, that, that fund an interest to it.
But what is all, where, how much is that total that, that we're talking about? I'm talking, I, I'm trying, I'm trying to get, and that's why I couldn't get off the report either, I'm trying to figure out how much total interest we have in, in any account we have, Texas class, Joe class, Fred class, I don't care, any class. That's what I can't get the answer to.
Well, we don't get our, our bank statement interest till the end of the month, so, uh, we, we just received August, so we won't get the August numbers till, in a few weeks, to start putting them in, to record the, the interest, and then from, from August to September, so we got three months of interest to go, and unless I know the full balance of there, I really can't tell you the exact amount of interest that would be there to be able to include otherwise. But I would say, if we do on, on average, $300,000 a month, roughly, if, so.
Every single solitary account?
Yes. There we go, the general fund.
No, 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 every single solitary account that we garner interest on.
Well, we're probably talking millions, because if we do Fund 19, Fund 13, Fund 12, and this, we're talking about a lot of it. We can't touch Fund 19, we can't touch the Fund 13.
Why?
Because Fund 19 is our capital projects through COs.
And it has to be.
Wait, 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 let me do it one at a time. That's what I'm trying to get to, that I haven't gotten yet.
Capital projects is.
Okay, so let's start capital projects.
Specific obligations. Specific obligations require the interest to be on the money that's there.
Right, but.
Can't move it.
You can't use it for anything other than the capital project?
Correct.
Okay, so then we could use it for the roof?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so how much do, so this is what we, this is what I've been trying to get to, and I haven't gotten yet, Dale, is, okay, so how much is in Fund 19, or whatever you, because Fund 19, how much is in there? Because that's going to be a prevalent discussion here in a little bit, because we're, so how much is in Fund 19, interest that is not assigned, allocated, or dedicated to anything? Fund 19.
I know there was times where we already allocated some of the balances to the funds, I mean, I, I did a, a real quick.
Dale, I have it, let me open it up. 1901 is not a, is not a CO. That's capital, but that's not a, a specific CO.
I don't know.
It's just for capital projects that y'all created.
Yeah.
1901 is not for a CO, so that's important.
1901 is what?
It's, that, 1901 is not a CO, so when he says.
Of capital.
That's for general, and so that interest can go to the general fund.
What's it, what's it, that goes to general fund, or that could go to?
It can.
That stays in 1901, and, and we allocate between each, each of the different projects that Commissioners want.
Okay, so what's 1901, how much is in 1901?
Uh, at least we have.
Just a second, I'm trying to get it out.
Lisa did a list for us on how much we had in each of our deals. Do you, did you have access to, she's not here, we don't have any.
I've never gotten that list, I've been asking for that.
That list wasn't accurate.
It wasn't accurate, that she did?
It wasn't.
I gave it to y'all, I gave y'all the numbers.
It wasn't, uh, complete.
It wasn't correct, well, accurate.
Okay, no, no, I know, I mean, it was, right, I'm trying to, accurate, good. I just wanna know how much is in there.
A few seconds, either our, our system's not running.
I can have Lorenzo come bring everything back up again, before y'all can get it.
Because, okay, so then, all right, so, so here's what, I wanna know what's in that one, okay? And then what's the next fund that you're, that you're rattling off? Oh, do you have it, Lisa?
Okay, Commissioner, and for the, all the interest that we had earned, and this is whenever I ran the report on August 26.
This is for which fund, 1901?
In 1901, we had $130,187. In 1915, we had $1,631.
Wait, 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 how much in 19?
All the other COs that you, they're restricted for use, you can't use it on anything other than.
CO stuff.
CO stuff.
Got it.
Um.
What's 1915, tell me what that account is.
It, 1915's a CO. Everything else in, other than 1901, in.
Is COs.
In cap, in Fund 19 is a CO.
Okay, 1901 CO, how much is in that one?
So 1901 has $130,187, and the rest of the COs have. Hold on. One million, or 1,974,128.
Which could be used towards the roof.
That could be used towards the roof, or towards any other capital projects. It'll, whenever we recognize the, whenever we recognize the revenue at year-end, whenever we recognize the, whenever we recognize the revenue at year end, I'll then submit a budget change order, a capital project change order to Commissioners Court, just like I did this last year, where we move the funds to unallocated and then Commissioners Court chooses to allocate those funds out.
I, I got it. And then, but we're at budget today and we got to make decisions.
I understand.
So, and then any other funds that we haven't talked about that has interest in it that we haven't mentioned? Any other?
Yeah, yes. So, so Fund 12, Fund 13, Fund 14, 15, 16, they all have, well, 15 doesn't have interest.
What's 12?
Take that back. But all the other funds have interest that are.
Fund 12 is Roden Bridge.
Roden Bridge.
Okay, how much?
It's restricted for use for Roden Bridge.
Right. How much is in there? I, I get, that's what I'm saying. This is important stuff. I need to, I, this is the kind of stuff that we need to have because there might be some things that we can or can't supplement that if we don't know about it, we can't do anything about it.
It's not in this book here?
It's in the estimated actual, sir.
Lisa?
It, all the revenues that were estimated were.
I asked for this report from your office three times and I haven't gotten this. I asked for a, a report that put it on one page. This is what I've asked, been asking for. They put it on one page that had all the interest accounts on one page that totaled it all up so that I didn't have to dig through 67,000 pages of budget that, that stuff's hidden here, not hidden, that's hard to find. I'd just have been asking for the summary for a week and a half. That's what I'm still asking for. That's what I would like to know because if there's nothing here we can do on this 4 million that we're talking about, then I'll move on. But I'm sure not going to move on in the budget without this stuff because I need to know this stuff.
Fund 12 has, as of, of August, is 90,248 dollars of interest.
That's Roden Bridge.
Roden Bridge.
Okay. What's next?
Fund 13, which is multiple year special revenue funds, which includes your records management, your imaging, your, your, your disindecorated clerks and all your, your fees. I can tell you the total cost, total revenue for Fund 13.
No interest.
Total interest, I mean. That's what I mean.
No interest?
Yeah, he's getting there.
1,209,247.
That's, that's interest only. That's not the flow that's coming into those special funds. All right. Go ahead.
Fund 14, which is our, our fairgrounds.
Wait, wait. Special revenues, there's some restriction on that?
Yes.
It has to be related to whatever the revenue's directed to?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
There, we have federal forfeiture, state forfeiture, the, the disindecorated clerks have, have funds in there and those, those are all belong to them.
But we don't have access to that. Y'all's departments do those, right?
No, actually, no. Not all of it. Some, some of the special funds, actually, it says it has to go, stay with that fund. Some of it doesn't. So it depends on the fund.
Yes. And you have to go by, you have to go by department, by department to see which one are restricted for use based on the statutes and which ones aren't.
Which is what I asked for. That I haven't gotten. Just keep going. 14?
Okay, 14 is our fairgrounds. And that balance is 65,076 dollars.
65,000 what?
76 dollars.
Okay. Great. Got to use that.
Law library is only 185 dollars if you want law library.
Okay, keep going.
For your county airport. County airport is 6,839.
How many more we got?
A lot.
Okay. So can someone go put that on a summary sheet? That, that's what I've been looking for Dale. I don't, that's what I'm, I, I don't want to waste the court's time, but this is my, this is all I've been asking for. So can someone go do that before we get to budget, please?
Yeah.
So is there any interest out there that we can use to avoid getting this out of the reserves?
I have one last question that I want to ask.
Is it bank?
What's on that first item that you told, uh, balance, 19?
1901.
1901. What was the original balance that gave us that interest?
There's no way I know it because you have, you're, you're, there are funds throughout the year that's used. So it starts at the beginning of the year, end of the year. So I, I can't tell you what.
Well, that's what I was saying. So you, you pull money out from.
I don't pull money out. It's paid.
Well, that's why I'm asking, what, what was the balance of that, on that, uh, department number, whatever, that got us to that interest?
Again, you'll have to go from the beginning of the year to the end of the year and go through all of the, the transactions, through all this. I, I don't know that right now.
I mean, I don't know how much it is. What would, what, what might it be? What was it usually in there?
What can it be spent on, I think?
No, no, no. I want a balance.
Oh, the beginning balance at the first of the year, so last year's balance.
1901 made 141,000 dollars. So you're, you're probably talking about a million. I don't know. I, I have to go the very beginning.
So what I'm asking is, is that more or less about right, uh, what the, what the interest rate that they're giving us is about right with, with the balance that we have in there?
Well, the interest at the beginning of the year was, was, was 3.5. The interest right now is 6.2. So you tell me.
No, you tell me. You're the auditor.
It changes throughout, throughout the year, throughout the month. Just to be sure. I can't say it would be.
I'm just trying, it's just some of those balance figures that, it's just some of those balance figures that you gave. Same kind of low to me, but I also know that it depends on the balance that we have in the bank so we can generate the monies. Okay? So that's all I'm asking. What was the balance? And then on the other 15, the 15 something, what was that balance?
Commissioner, ev- every year, the fund balance include, so you take your beginning fund balance plus all the revenues in all the funds, in all the accounts, minus all the expenses in all the funds, in all the accounts, to get your ending fund balance.
Okay.
So that fund balance that we give you, that's an actual number, it already includes all the previous year's interest. We've recognized that revenue.
It's just, to me, it just seemed kind of a low interest for the amount of money that what I'm thinking we have in there.
It, but it, we've, and those books were audited by our external auditors. So those revenues are accurate. Yes, they've been verified by outside sources. All the revenues have been reported. We're, there's no revenue that we're hiding.
Well, it's just, I mean, every time we ask, we end up with different numbers. First it was 30 million deficit, 20 million deficit, no it's not.
That's not on us.
Well, I mean, it's on somebody.
That's on the appraisal district.
Well, I mean, but still, we still get different numbers.
If I may, this is Noe Hinojosa here.
Yes, Noe. Hello.
Commissioners, Judge, good afternoon. It may be worth pointing out too, that interest rates in previous years have been a lot lower than today. So keep that in mind. So.
We're very thankful.
Projective higher interest rate in your budget may be helped.
Thank you, Noe.
Yes, we are very thankful. And, and in all of this, everybody has worked very hard. We need to ask our questions, everyone, but let's, let's keep in mind that we're, we're all in this together. This is a difficult year with this budget. So I understand the frustration. I've been dealing with this as well. They have as well with the auditors, I mean, the, with the auditor's office, with the appraisal district, with the numbers changing, with our imbalance. But basically, all we need to work moving forward is our fund balance. They are saying with everything included that we can use is 28 million beginning to going forward. If we pay this 4 million for this insurance, that is going to drop us down to 24 beginning. So we have to pay for bills. We have to pay for insurance. I am not sure if I can get a second on that motion or how we want to proceed. But if we want to transfer bits at a time, but we will also have to factor this into our budget with the health insurance claims that we are anticipating coming along as well. So I made the motion to approve the transfer.
From where?
I move. I'm second.
I have a second from Commissioner. Yes, from, it's all general revenue, basically. Reserves are general revenue. It's all the ending. Yes, okay. Um, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or any other changes? Nobody's happy about this. I totally understand. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Now, we can begin the other task of the budget. So we will, um, move into item D and our budget. The first thing up on our budget is D1. And I, I guess discuss and consider adoption of an order approving the 2023 tax rule setting the 2023 tax rate for the Nuasis County Hospital District and levying said tax rate against all property, taxable property in Nuasis County for 2023. You're up again, Mr. Hip. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. If the court goes with the, the recommended tax rate from the hospital district, that would be 4% above the no new rate. And if that's the number that you go with, then the order that's included in the packet will need to be adjusted.
I have the.
What did you say?
If they don't do the 4%, if they do the no new revenue, then that, those numbers will change. Yes.
Still by yours, right?
Yes, yes.
Hospital district, yes.
Hospital district.
So the rate that's in the budget order that's in your packet is the voter approved rate. That was the one that we had, we've had conversations about, but we're coming in, we're asking for something less than that. So 4% above, above the, the no new rate.
Well, I'm, I make a motion. We approve the 4%.
Isn't there, is there a specific way we have to motion this, Lisa? Sorry, I was waiting for you to jump up.
Read the rate, the number. The number has to be read out.
Yes, okay. And we don't have that paperwork anywhere?
I, I have the paperwork. Um, who's going to make the motion? Cause I have specific language that you have to read.
Commissioner Gonzalez is making the motion.
4%?
Yes.
That's because there's not going to change, right? Your, yours is not going to change as far as, it'd be the same as last year or last, last year.
The, the 4% rate gives us the same revenue we had last year.
Last year.
This needs to be read first before his motion.
Okay. So you have to take a record vote.
This first or the record vote?
We got to read them.
This requires the record, so this gets read, that gets said, I move.
Okay.
And then we take the record vote.
Do you want to read that out or do you want us to do it?
If you want to, I can do it.
I'll read it. Let's just go forward. Okay. And then, Commissioner Gonzalez will make the motion. This is an order accepting and approving the 2023 tax rule setting the 2023 tax rate for the Nuasis County Hospital District and levying said tax rate against all taxable property in Nuasis County for 2023. Whereas, the Commissioners Court authorized the tax assessor collectors to, to compute the no new revenue tax rate for 2023 for the Nuasis County Hospital District. And whereas, notice of the proposed property tax rate fully in compliance with the Property Tax Code and the rules of the State Comptroller's Office. Property Tax Division appeared in the Corpus Christi Collar Times for the Nuasis County Hospital District on August the 30th, 2023. And whereas, the Commissioners Court finds and determines that the proper procedure has been followed to lawfully consider the proposed tax rate for 2023, including proper notice of the meeting of September 13th, 2023, as provided by Chapter 551 Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes. And whereas, the Commissioners Court finds and approves the tax rate for the Nuasis County Hospital District for the current year consisting of the following. The maintenance and operating tax of .085242 that if applied to the total taxable value will impose the amount of taxes needed to fund maintenance and operation expenditures of the Nuasis County Hospital District for the next year. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. This tax rate will effectively be raised by 3.12% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a hundred thousand dollar home by approximately a negative, negative 13.61 cents. Now therefore, be it ordered by the Commissioners Court that the 2023 tax rule as submitted by the Nuasis County Tax Appraisal District to the Nuasis County Tax Assessor Collector is approved and that the following tax rate per 100 dollar value is set and levied against all taxable property for 2023. Nuasis County Hospital District dot .085242 per 100 dollars. Be it further ordered that existing homestead exemptions for 2023 shall include 20% for homestead exemption, but not less than 5,000 dollars and 62,500 dollars for over age 65 or disabled exemption, plus exemptions mandated by state law. And be it further ordered that no discounts are to be allowed for early payment of taxes, split payments of taxes as described in Section 31 dot 03 of the Property Tax Code will not be allowed. The proposed order accepting and approving the 2023 tax rule setting the 2023 tax rates for the Nuasis County Hospital District and levying such tax rate against all taxable property in Nuasis County. Having been read, public comment having been allowed and comments having been considered. On a motion by Commissioner Gonzalez, go ahead with your motion.
And Judge, I just so, we'll know that the reason I'm making this motion is because you've heard Mr. Hip say a while ago that this, uh, this rate here will not, will be the same as last year's, will not increase. And I, and I think I heard you say something about there's a less tax repaid, it would be paying.
You can't say that.
Well, well, hold on, Judge.
Why not?
You have to just make the motion as it, as it reads. You can't comment all that other stuff because it is actually increasing, but you, you can't stay that.
Yes, sir. You, you can't make those comments. You have to state exactly what it is.
Okay, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the, of the tax rate of 0.085242, which is effectively a 4% increase in the tax rate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, record vote, sorry. Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mottis?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we supposed to sign these now or what do you want me to do?
Lock the form right now.
Thank you. I'll put this aside. Um, item number two, discuss and consider the adoption of the 2023, 2024 Nuasis County Hospital District budget. And we have been provided that on a couple of occasions, their budget. Yes.
The budget is the one that's in your packet.
Hmm, somewhere. It's the second one. Yeah, it's the one that includes everything. Yes, uh-huh. So if I could get a motion to, or do I have to do something on their budget? Motion to accept, wording to, you just need to stay up here. Do you have a chair?
[laughing].
As presented, yes, okay. Do we have to do a record vote or not? Yes, okay. Um, I move to adopt the budget as presented. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 2,38,854 dollars or 5.23%. And of that amount, 820,354 dollars is taxable revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rule this year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, motion. Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mottis?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Then is there anything else we need to do? Is that correct or? We look like we've got concerns. Are we good? Are we're waiting on you? Are we fine? Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to, these are both right here. Yes.
Okay, what is this? Interest?
Discuss and, item number three, discuss and consider the adoption of an order approving the 2023 tax rule setting the 2023 tax rate for Nuasis County and levying such tax rate against all taxable property in Nuasis County. And there's a thing I have to read on this one too.
Anybody else want to read? You're more than welcome.
You're good, Judge. You're doing great.
You're in a role.
Yeah, thank you. An order, accepting and approving the 2023 tax rule setting the 2023 tax rates for Nuasis County. I assume this is your current one. I went off of what I had in my packet. Is that the same?
That's correct.
Okay. Accepting and approving the 2023 tax rule setting the 2023 tax rates for Nuasis County and levying such said tax rate against all taxable property in Nuasis County for 2023. Whereas, the Commissioners Court authorized the tax assessor collector to compute the no new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate for 2023, the county, for the county, county farm to market and lateral road and flood. And whereas, notice of the proposed property tax rate fully in compliance with the Property Tax Code and rules of the State Comptroller's Office, Property Tax Division appeared in the Corpus Christi Collar Times for the county, county farm to market and lateral road and flood on August the 30th, 2023. And whereas, the Commissioners Court finds and determines that the proper procedure has been followed to lawfully consider the proposed tax rate for 2023, including proper notice of the meeting of September 30th, September 13th, excuse me, 2023, as provided by Chapter 551 Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes. And whereas, the Commissioners Court finds and approves separately the tax rate for the current year consisting of the following two components. The debt service tax rate of .037676 that if applied to the total taxable valid, value will impose the total amount of taxes needed to pay the debt service for the next year. Number two, the maintenance and operations tax rate of .215079. and operations tax rate of .215079, that if applied to the total taxable value, will impose the amount of taxes needed to fund maintenance and operation expenditures of the county for the next year. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. This tax rate will effectively be raised by 3.50% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately a negative, negative $34.51. Now therefore be it ordered by the Commissioners Court that the 2023 tax rule as submitted by the Nuasis County Tax Appraisal District to the Nuasis County Tax Assessor Collector is approved, and that the following tax rates per 100 value are set and levied against all taxable property for 2023. The Nuasis County General Fund, M&amp;O, .212160 per $100. Nuasis County Farm-to-Market, Lateral Road and Flood Control, .002919 per $100. Item C, Nuasis County Total, M&amp;O, .215079 per $100. And Item D, the Nuasis County Debt Service, .037676 per $100. The total Nuasis County Tax Rate adds C and D, .252755 per $100. Be it further ordered that the homestead exemptions for 2023, 20% for homestead exemption, but not less than $5,000, and $62,500 for over age 65 or disabled exemption, plus a tax limitation on the total amount of taxes that may be imposed on the resident homestead of a disabled individual or those 65 or older pursuant to Article 8, 1B-H of the Texas Constitution and exemptions mandated by state law. And be it further ordered that no discounts are to be allowed for early payment of taxes, split payment of taxes as described in subsection 31 dot 03 of the Property Tax Code will not be allowed. The proposed order accepting and approving the 2023 tax rule, setting the 2023 tax rate for Nuasis County, and levying said tax rate against all taxable property in Nuasis County, having been read, public comments having been allowed, and comments having been considered. On a motion to, well, now I need to read the motion and go back, sorry. On a motion to adopt the total tax rate of .252755, I move that the property tax rate be increased, the adoption of a tax rate of .252755, which is effectively a 5.20% increase in the tax rate? I thought it's 3.5 is all we can do.
I know, it's the language.
It's, we only, but it's a 3.5. I'm not doing a 5.2. We have to do a voter approved.
I understand, it's the language.
I don't understand the language then. It's like, let's clarify. I'm not doing this.
Well, it's actually a 6.56% increase is what the first was. But the first budget book says it's 6.56% increase.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Well, no, it is. Because it's new, it's new revenue versus, and, and new growth, right?
New property, new growth, yes.
New growth, new revenue.
Per Tax Code 26.05B of the Property Tax Code, there's a worksheet that has been created by the State Comptroller in accordance with the Truth in Taxation Guidelines that stipulates how the, how, how the rates are calculated in the language in which the motions are made. The, the motion for the 5.2, which is right there.
Uh huh.
It takes the no new revenue total tax rate, this year's proposed tax rate, then you subtract out the no, the no new revenue rate, and you take the percentage of the total tax rate. And so it's a percentage of the total tax rate from the no new revenue rate. And it is 5.20.
And this is why people do not understand what the heck goes on with property tax.
And this is not my fault. That's the reason that I have to plug the numbers into the software in order to get the forms to calculate.
I didn't say it was your fault. I just, that's why.
But this doesn't require us to go out to a
That is correct.
I don't understand because it's 3.5 was like, I about had a heart attack when I read this.
Because that includes the debt service rate, the debt service, the property tax code allows you to adopt a debt service rate that fully funds your debt. Your fully funded debt service rate is point 037676 per $100 of property. That fully funded debt service rate is excluded whenever you calculate the voter-approved tax rate. So the voter-approved tax rate is set based on the M&amp;O maintenance and operations tax rates for the general fund. The three and a half percent is then calculated by taking the no new revenue M&amp;O tax rate from line 39 of the voter-approved tax rate worksheet. This is, this year's proposed M&amp;O tax rate was .215079 per $100 of evaluation. Then you take this year's, then you subtract out this year's no new revenue rate of .007272, and that gets you your percentage change in M&amp;O tax rate. You divide the second, the .007272, by the no new revenue M&amp;O rate that is line 39 of the voter-approved tax rate worksheet, which is .07807, which is three and a half percent increase.
Okay. Does anybody else here understand all of that she just read? This is still
Regardless.
Yes.
Judge, do you remember whenever I told you that whenever you read to adopt, you're going to be saying something different and you're going to question it?
I wish you'd have given me a little bit of a hint.
Remember I told you that? Whenever, whenever we were, whenever we had that meeting?
Okay.
Okay, let me ask a question. Now, before we adopt, we adopt the tax rate, right?
Yes.
So before we adopt the tax rate, do we got to go back to the general fund budget, this one here, to take out what we don't want?
Yeah, but we have to do the rate first.
We have to do the rate first.
Okay, you got to do the rate first.
Must do the rate first.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Tax law requires us to do the rate first.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
All right.
So, okay, I have made that motion and moved. Do I have a second?
Second. No, no.
Oh. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. This has to be a record vote.
Wait, on the?
On the tax rate, the, the voter-approved three and a half percent tax rate, but this motion on here with all of that language she just read out.
Well, we have to have discussion. We have to go through the budget. We have to make cuts.
No, that's afterwards. You have to do the rate first.
That's the same question.
We all said that first.
Tax law requires the rate to be, be adopted first. We don't argue with this law. It says we have to do the rate first.
We all asked the same question. Yes.
Didn't mean to ask them another question.
Okay, yeah, I know. Commissioner Hernandez, your vote.
Judge, I apologize, but I'm going to, and this is no reflection on you, Judge, but since I've been here, I've seen the, we have been, we have not been very good stewardess of the tax payer money. So for this reason, I'm a no new revenue tax.
You're, you're against?
I'm against. No, no new revenue tax. I'm against.
No, you're against the
You're against this motion.
Go against the motion.
3.5.
Yeah, just say you're a no. You're a no on this.
I'm a no, but I just wanted to state that that's the reason I'm a no, Judge.
Yeah, it's okay. We'll, we'll come to that in a minute. Yes. Commissioner Mottis?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
And I made the motion, so the motion fails. So we are
No, we have to determine a rate that, that the court wants to adopt.
It looks like it's the no new revenue. Do we have that paperwork? We have a motion for the
Lisa, I probably know the, the motion for the right, no new revenue tax.
I need to know who's going to, who's going to read and who's going to make the motion.
Wait, read what? We don't know what we're
You have to read the same thing all, you've got to read that order all over again, but with the no new revenue rate.
No, that, I don't, is that?
That's what Commissioner
Right, but I mean, I don't know.
You didn't pass, so, or do you want to adopt another one?
No, I don't, but I don't know what Commissioner, he's, I mean, I don't know what
We need a motion on what, if anybody wants to send another rate.
Right, I mean, so, I don't, yeah, I am where I am. I don't know where everybody else wants to go.
He just voted against the 3.5.
No, but I mean, is there another number that you want, other than?
Yeah, of course, the no, no new tax.
Okay, well, that's, then you have to read it.
That's why we're saying, we have to read that, yes.
Who's making the motion?
I would assume Commissioner Hernandez or Commissioner Gonzalez. Yes, Gonzalez would make it. I would give it to
Do you want me to read it, or do you want?
Go ahead.
It doesn't matter, whatever he wants to do.
Someone read, the next one makes your motion. You can't make a motion, Lisa.
Oh, okay.
Someone else wants to read besides
I'm not on, I
I'll read it. Give it here. There's one to read it. Thank you. Okay, are these supposed to be signed, or are these not any good anymore?
Those aren't even good anymore.
I'll give you everything back. Thank you. An order, accepting and approving the 2023 tax rule, setting the 2023 tax rates for Nuasis County, and levying said tax rate against all taxable property in Nuasis County for 2023. Whereas, the Commissioners Court authorized the tax assessor-collector to commute, compute the no new revenue tax rate and voter-approved tax rate for 2023 for the county, county farm-to-market and lateral road and flood. And whereas, notice of the proposed property tax rate fully in compliance with the Property Tax Code and rules of the State Comptroller's Office, Property Tax Division appeared in the Corpus Christi Caller Times for the county, county farm-to-market, lateral road and flood on August 30th, 2023. And whereas, the Commissioners Court finds and determines that the proper procedure has been followed to lawfully consider the proposed tax rate for 2023, including proper notice of the meeting of September 13th, 2023, as provided by Chapter 551, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes. And whereas, the Commissioners Court finds and approves separately the tax rate for the current year consisting of the following two components: the debt service rate of .037676, that if applied to the total taxable value, will impose the total amount of taxes needed to pay debt service for the next year. Number two, the maintenance and operations tax rate of .202577, that if applied to the total taxable value, will impose the amount of taxes needed to fund maintenance and operation expenditures of the county for the next year. This year's tax levy to fund maintenance and operation expenditures does not exceed last year's maintenance and operations tax levy. This tax rate does not exceed the no new revenue tax rate. Now therefore be it ordered by the Commissioners Court that the 2023 tax rule as submitted by the Nuasis County Tax Appraisal District to the Nuasis County Tax Assessor Collector is approved, and that the following tax rates per $100 values are set and levied against all taxable property for 2023. A, Nuasis County General Fund, M&amp;O, .199735 per 100. B, Nuasis County Farm-to-Market, Lateral Road and Flood Control, .002842 per 100. C, Nuasis County Total, M&amp;O, .202577 per 100. D, Nuasis County Debt Service, .037676 per 100. Nuasis County Total Tax Rate adds C and D, .240253 per 100. Be it further ordered that the homestead exemptions for 2023 shall include 20% for homestead exemption, but not less than $5,000, and $62,500 for over age 65 or disabled exemption, plus a tax limitation on the total amount of taxes that may be imposed on the resident homestead of a disabled individual or those 65 or older pursuant to Article 8, 1B-H of the Texas Constitution and exemptions mandated by state law. And be it further ordered that no discounts are to be allowed for early payments of taxes, split payments of taxes as described in subsection 31 dot 03 of the Property Tax Code will not be allowed. The proposed order accepting and approving the 2023 tax rule, setting the 2023 tax rates for Nuasis County, and levying said tax rate against all taxable property in Nuasis County, having been read, public comment having been allowed, and comments have been considered.
I'd just like to remind Commissioners Court, once you make this vote, you can't go back. And so that's $3 million plus that we're going to have right off the fund balance.
Plus before we just transferred out.
Plus, plus the $5 million that we're not going to get from the refineries.
Or cuts.
Or cuts, yes.
Yes. So
There's no special language to read because it's
Oh, there's no language for this? Okay.
It's just a vote.
Can you make a motion?
I need a motion and a vote.
We have a motion.
Who made the motion?
Um, do we have to do a record vote, too?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Gonzalez, seconded by Hernandez. So Commissioner, Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Mottis?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So this is the one we will have to sign? Pass it around?
I'm going to
Do you need to fill it out? I'll leave it up here.
And I'll get copies and send them around.
Okay. Um, item number four is to discuss and consider adopting an order rescinding the prior year budget resolutions and orders. And I need to read this as well. I guess I will continue reading. Commissioners Court Resolution and Order Rescinding All Prior Year Budget Resolutions and Orders. Whereas, resolutions and orders related to budgetary and fiscal management of county funds are included in the annual budget, and whereas, the resolutions and orders included in the annual budget may require revisions each budget year. Now therefore be it resolved and ordered by the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, Texas, that all resolutions and orders included in the 2023-2024 county budget are hereby rescinded effective October the 1st, 2023. And I will make a motion myself on that. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to rescind all prior orders ending September 30th, start, yes, ending September 30th for last year's orders. A motion and a second. All those in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
Aye. And we don't have to do a record vote on that, right, guys? Okay. Any opposed? I made the motion. Come on, a second. Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Um, the motion passes. Now, this is the part where we can talk about the budget and include, or people come up right on item number five.
Item five is your actual orders and resolutions that you're replacing from what you rescinded.
Oh, all of these resolutions, then? Great. Okay, got a lot of things to read. I'm going to be hoarse. Item number five is discuss and consider adoption of orders and resolutions related to the proposed 2023-24 Nuasis County Budget. The first up looks like Order of the Nuasis County Commissioners Court Affecting Budget Authority for Employee Positions. Be, this order applies Do, do we have any discussion on this, or we just read them and see? Because I had a question about this because I know
I don't know if you actually have to read each one of them because they're, not that they're really physically changed very much, but other than fiscal year.
I wanted to clarify, though, if you are in a department that has open positions that aren't frozen or anything, this doesn't affect you. We're not freezing any positions or something. Because I, okay, I wanted to make sure.
So, other than what's already in the, yes.
Do you have a question, or you want me to?
No, go ahead. I don't, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Um, Order of the Nuasis County Commissioners Court Affecting Budget Authority for Employee Positions. This order applies to and affects all employees who are authorized by the Commissioners Court under the authority of subsection 5, 152 dot 011, Local Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes, or other authority of the Commissioners Court to set compensation and control the annual budget. And number two, to all employees who are authorized in the 2023-24 budget, county budget, except number three, it does not apply to employees over which the Commissioners Court has no authority to set compensation. It is therefore ordered for each employee position that is vacant as of October 1, 2023, or becomes vacant on October 1, 2023 2023, or becomes vacant on October 1st, 2023, or thereafter during budget year 2023-2024. No official hire, shall hire or fill an employee position that is vacant unless authorized by the Commissioners' Court. No salary allowance or other compensation shall be paid except for those employees who are on the payroll as of October 1st, 2023 unless specifically authorized or ratified by the Commissioners' Court. The salary and fringe benefits for each vacant employee position may be transferred by the Commissioners' Court to a special reserve designated by the county auditor. The authority and funds provided by this budget are frozen for each vacant position until released and reinstated by the Commissioners' Court. But this is not for, you're saying this is not for people, departments that have open positions that they can hire? It kind of reads like it to me, yeah.
It is, it's the same one they do every year, it is.
Okay, it's good, so, okay.
No, it's not good, but it is.
But you have to come to court anyway when you hire somebody, but you're not saying that we're freezing and you can't hire, I just wanted to, yeah.
Wait, so-
It is saying that, it's exactly saying that.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was, that's, it was, it doesn't read right to me, but it's-
There are some items, the budget cuts, there are some frozen position we have, those frozen positions must come to court before those can be considered, but that just was a continuation from what before, the court can freeze if you so choose.
But this says all vacant positions, this doesn't say frozen or any, this is all positions.
Can we, do we have to do that one right now? Can we pause for a minute on this one, just because I'd like to, I don't, do I, I don't, I can't even find that, can someone maybe make me a copy?
It's in here, 5D5, you, did you print the budget?
Oh, yeah, I got the-
Yeah, I do, I have all of them. Huh?
They're all the same orders every year, and they've just changed the dates on them, they don't change wording, it's the same thing.
But I would like the wording on this one to be changed to frozen positions, because I think we're hindering the ability-
Well, can we just pause on the frozen positions until we have that discussion? Because one of my discussions going forward is gonna be what we do with these vacancies and how we make the cuts that we need to make to get down to the 3 million that we just, you know, eliminated on the no new revenue tax vote. So, I'm just asking if we could pause on that, because, and see what we do with that discussion, but I-
Can we skip number four and come back to it after we, I mean, number five?
It's our option, I think, I don't think these have to be-
Change the budget, because all our other resolutions, you just told me how to, how to put the budget together, basically, and what we have to do, but there's no really order in there that would affect what we're doing if we adopt the budget, we come back at later time.
The only magic language is what you had to read by statute, the rest of this is the orders that we put in place, and we can do those whenever we want.
Correct.
If I'm not mistaken, so-
Oh, we can do them even next, at our next meeting?
Oh, well, sure.
Good.
Yeah.
Because we're actually adopting the budget, adopting the order, so I think it actually gets the budget-
So we have to do it today, but we'll come back to it today, okay. I'll circle it to come back to, yes. So, then we will move on to item number six, and that's where we get into the budget, and we can talk about it and make changes.
Yes.
Discuss and consider adoption of the proposed Nueces County Budget as presented in its capacity, including decisions regarding whether to continue outside agency contracts, county programs, personnel changes, but not limited to pay steps, freezing, reduction of force and consolidation or elimination of certain Nueces County departments for the 2023-24 fiscal year and related matters. First, I would like to possibly draw your attention to the, um, items included, the items on this list in your packet, this list, are included, and these have already been included in the budget. If you have an item you would like to pull out for discussion or a vote to see if you want to continue it, we'll do it like our consent agenda, give me that number that you want to pull out, and we'll pull it out for further discussion, or otherwise, if you're okay with what has already been included in the budget, then we will leave it alone, it doesn't require attention, I just wanted everyone to be transparent, and y'all have the-
Judge, you should have a few items from me, I don't know if now's the time to-
Are they on this?
To adjust, uh, no, it's not on this, I don't know if I should add it now, or at what point.
Sure.
Now's a good time to start talking about it.
So the court should have before them a copy of, um, it's this, um, Department 1030, which is mine, uh, just some cuts that I wanted to make sure that got on the budget.
What pages that is on, or things?
It is page...
I provide that to you, as you're on the second section, you should have that.
It's on page 19 in your book, but it is a copy.
Yes.
Should be on your, at your chair, at the dice. So there are two sections under 5210, office expense supplies, I'm gonna cut that to $1,000. And item 5410, other services, I'm sorry, and to travel, 5540, cut that in half to 1550, uh, so that should come up to 2,550. So I'd like to add that on to the, uh, to the budget changes.
Is that the maintenance in repair? The copy I have has maintenance in repair?
I think it's, I think we talked about that.
Yeah, no, no, I was gonna cross that one out, but I do need to leave a little bit, just in case there's any copyright, so, sorry, yeah. So I shouldn't have scratched that one out, but that, so those are the only two that I'm actually, um, adding to, uh, to the budget, is the cuts in 5210 and 5540. And that's on page 19 of the budget book.
And that doesn't require a vote, that's your budget, so we're just, we're just adjusting, and y'all are taking the notes, so as long as y'all have them, we're good, yes.
We'll take notes at the end, we'll say as amended whatever amendments we have, if no one disagrees with that, then we can continue.
Yes.
Does this all go in, so to speak?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Perfect, are there, um, any items on, on this that we were talking about that anyone want, I think you had a couple of things that you wanted to pull Commissioner Gonzalez from this for discussion? Yeah, find the right list, sorry, I've got a whole stack here going everywhere, too.
I want, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm gonna go back to number 11, pull number 11, uh, since we have $5 million in contingency, uh, I just thought, you know, it's a solid, but now it might be a little different, because we're gonna need more money, but I thought we could use, uh, $2 million of that to help, uh, reduce the debt with the, to help with the, uh, fund balance. Uh, I don't know if we can do that.
Item number 11, he's talking about the contingency appropriations lost due to the refinery tax dispute.
But what are you trying to do there, I don't know?
I get two, uh, not bar, get 2 million from, we had, it was a 3.2 to 5.4, Dell said something, we had 5 million.
Right, I think it's wrong.
There's $5 million contingency in the budget.
Right.
Yes.
I want to use 2 million to, to help reduce the fund, you know, reduce the debt for the fund balance. So now, because now the fund balance is gonna, Dell said it was gonna be what, Dell 40, 24?
24.
So wait, Joe.
Now the debt is covered in our, in our, but are you talking about for no way for our debt? We covered our debt in our-
No, no, Joey, this is a, but this is a red number, meaning, this is, this is a negative number.
No, no, but Dell said we had 5 million.
We have, we have $5,423 as contingency in our, our budget at the moment.
Right, but, but you're-
But that's not right, that's, that's what we had before, we moved money over there.
But he's, but, uh-
We moved 5 million.
But you've got that accounted for in the budget, right?
Yes.
So this is already in the budget, it's 1.7.
Yes.
Right, because this is, items included in the general fund as presented by the budget officer are part of the budget, so this is already in the budget. So in other words-
Yeah, but the 5, the 5 million is in the contingency.
Yes, it's a contingency, yes.
So why not use 2 million from there, from the contingency, leaving a balance of 3 million?
No, he's already-
Well, we can do that, but again, contingency is only if you need the funds, if you don't use the funds, you don't get any additional fund balance, because it's not an actual expense.
Okay, so actually, we do it for the fund balance, the fund balance?
Right.
Okay.
So-
He had another item he wanted to pull, too.
Commissioner, Commissioner, court would have to make, take action in order to use the contingency appropriation fund, so having it in contingency appropriations doesn't entitle someone to use it.
It'll take a motion from the court, y'all don't have the authority to spend it, it still has to come, yes.
I'm glad you said that, everything takes court action.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, number 15.
Number 15?
Yeah, I know, we use 1 million for the software, and that's the one Dell was talking about, software, and it was 80,000 or something, but I guess it's 1 million.
All of those listed down there are all of the software charges for this year?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, um, I'm just saying we take out 2 million from the waiver, or 2.5, again, to help reduce the debt for the fund balance, you know, and bring up the fund balance a little bit.
With it-
And, 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 and probably, uh... I'm, you, I'm just trying to hope, if we got, in the 1115 waiver, you know, I think we have, what, about 4 million in there now?
Right now, we have 6.
1115 waiver is kind of like contingency as well, you don't need to transfer it in there, because we just spend it when we have to-
We're gonna take it out.
Yeah.
Estimate, I believe we have 6 right now, if we do the fund balance from last year, it's 4.8, we received a little bit of money this year, around 1.7, so we're probably right at 6, 6.5.
On 1115 waivers?
We're gonna be using the 1 million of it, so we're back down to maybe 5.
So, what, are you saying, can you move something from 1115 waiver into the general fund balance?
No.
That's his question, I think.
Yes, according to what the, what, we're working with the, the county attorney, the 1115 waiver can be used for whatever you want.
Can be spent, but not just transferred sitting in our, in our general fund balance, yeah?
Now it can.
Right, but it, but if we put it in the reserve, like if we put it in the general fund balance and designated as reserves, is that something that we can specifically do, so it's not a one-time kick the can down the road thing, but it's an actual use of funds that we're able to use that would build up our fund balance? Because you've already told us, starting out, we're going from 28 to 24.
What we did is that we, we used the $1 million coming from 1115 waiver to cover the software we knew there, so that 1 million is actually covering expenses. If we do some additional funds, then we know that additional funds is not really assigned an expense, so if it's truly put in there, that would be additional reserve, so, possible.
And if it is additional reserve, I'm just saying we can cut, we can cut, this will help us cut back those 3 million we just-
Again, it's up to the court how you want to do it, because we're, right now, we're transferring $1 million from 1115 waiver into the general fund to cover the balances that we have.
On a one-time fee?
One-time, this for, for the software.
So if you put it, if you transferred another $1 million into the general fund balance for reserves only?
That can be used for reserve, that can be a 100% reserve.
And that would, would that erase some of the deficit that we just created?
Bid with, yes.
Yes.
So in real time, that would be something, that's a great idea, Commissioner?
Yes.
That, that we could do to, and it won't come back, it's not a one-timer, because we're saying it's in the reserves.
Right.
And we're taking it out, so we can use it on anything, so-
Or you can take out 2.5.
Well, no, I know, I was just using my, that number, you can pick whatever number you want.
Because we're, we're actually using it to offset the software, as long as it doesn't affect any other additional expenses, anything else that brought in will be to the reserves.
So could we take the whole $3 million and put that as a, um-
You could, but, uh, I would say we, we know we have a lot of, uh, issues with the roof, this, the $6 million can be used for the roof.
I got another idea on roof, yeah, I got- I think we got the roof covered.
Yes, we can, this is something we, we can definitely do the additional funds from 1115 waiver, however, whatever y'all want, we have 5 million of them there right now.
Because we haven't touched that 1115 waiver for anything significant since, I don't know when.
The last thing you did was last year, when you gave 1.5 million to the, the Health Department. And that was it.
And we're done with that?
Yeah.
We're done doing that?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't mean we're done with them, but we're done with that.
And the other expenses have been very, very minimal, not much been going through there.
So what am I missing, how, how does this, how does?
Why have we not done that before? Why have we not used that?
There was a lot of restrictions on the 1115 waiver, because the way the, the federal, the federal government was giving us the money, there was a lot of restrictions, it had to be used for certain things, but then once the waiver ended and working with the county attorney, those restrictions have been lifted.
As of when?
Uh, good question.
There are reimbursement for fees that were, for expenditures that the county made, so once that money came back down to the county, I don't, I don't see Johnny hip here, but, um-
He got his money and ran.
That, uh, that can be, um, that, we have an opinion, and we can circulate it again, but, uh, not from us, but from, I forget what agency, but it can be used for whatever. I don't know about that time difference, but as long as I've dealt with 1115 waiver monies, they've been spendable, however.
It was restricted at one point.
I know they're not restricted, yeah.
It was restricted at one point.
Yes.
When it was a health county, uh, health district.
You're right.
Was restricted, and the only thing you could use it for was for outreach programs, because what the grant was for.
When we first got the grant, we had to use it, we, the county had diabetes, we had navigation and one other function that we were able to use the funds for, and that's how we got those funds in, but then at some point in time, we got direction from the Health Department that we didn't have to do that anymore, and track for that expense anymore, and it became used for the county, and we were using it for both city and county health until we split.
Okay, so let me, let me make sure.
That's great.
This is almost too good to be true, and I'm not gonna like get excited until I ask this for the 14th time, to make sure, if we put this in and we designate it for general reserves only, then that's not kicking the can down the road, and we're gonna end up being short next year, right? Because it's-
It is kicking the can down the road. Because you're just adding a one-time-
For the reserves.
A one-time surplus of cash, I, it gotta keep walking back to where it was.
You need to sit closer.
To the reserves.
Get a microphone.
Right, and you're not spending it. If you're not spending it, how is it, how is it kicking the can down the road?
Okay, so you're giving the, you're giving the general fund a one-time surplus of cash that's going to help your fund balance. Again, your fund balance is your beginning fund balance, plus your revenues that'll include this transfer in minus your expenses, so it's gonna offset those expenses, that's how it's going to increase your fund balance. Next year, you won't be able to have that surplus of funds to transfer in, so you're gonna have to come up with that deficit.
We'll have that-
You might need it.
But we, if we have a deficit.
Correct.
When we have a deficit, yes, sir.
We got a problem now, we're gonna take care of it.
But how will we have a deficit? Because next year, we go back to, we know we're not gonna, we, this was the bad year, because of-
The refineries are gonna pay next year with the 250% increase?
No, but we've already got that factored into the budget, and that, that changes next year, in other words, the effective tax rate is based on, or the no new tax rate is based on the amount of money that we get brought in.
That you adopted this year, so next year's revenue is gonna be based on the amount that you adopted this year. So, the shortage that we're gonna have this year is gonna be the shortage that we start with next year.
The shortage that we have-
We have this year.
Which is the 3 million.
Is going to be the shortage that we start with next year.
Okay, so what is the, what is the amount that, that, the difference between the effective tax rate and the, um, sorry, no new tax rate and what we just did, 3 million?
No, no, you adopted the no new revenue rate.
Right, and, but what's, what do we have to cut, or getting, to fix 3, 3.5, what's the number?
It was, it was 5 million for the refineries that aren't gonna pay, and then-
No, 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 the, the difference between the no new tax rate-
Around 3.7, I believe it was.
3.7 on the tax that were not, without the 3.5%.
3.82.
When I put the cuts in, I think I gained, got down to 2.7, 2.8, so it's not quite the-
We gotta operate this in real time, right? I need to know, based on what we did, just did, what we need to cut, okay?
3.7.
Cut or add revenue, so what is that number?
If you, when I did the revaluation, and when Commissioner Gonzalez asked us to redo the K1, our, our, the one for our estimates valued based with our cuts and, and the revenue we had in for no new revenue tax, I was right at 2.8 million dollar deficit.
2.9.
Okay, so that's our, two point eight, two point nine.
And if we do additional ones from the eleven fifteen waiver, that'd be less, yes.
Okay, but, all right. And then, did you add in the two positions that we just did a minute ago?
No, not yet.
Okay, so those are gone.
Those would be gone, yes.
So that has to be added in.
But, but they're not gone. They're just moved to a different department.
No, 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 no.
Well, the, well, the one position was already reduced, because it was already taken out of the budget.
One was gone, one was.
Additional one would be.
And the other position is.
Additional one, one eighty?
Right. So that additional one eighty has to go into real time.
Yes.
Okay, right? So that has to go into real time, so.
And then you're cutting the department, so whatever the department expenses are, so.
Say again?
The department expense for, for supplies and stuff and stuff, so. Not really, it's very minor.
So that two point, is it two point eight or two point nine? Because I mean, I, you know me, I run my little.
I think it's two, two point, let's go two point nine, two point nine.
Okay, so two point nine, and we just, and minus one.
My, one, let's say two hundred thousand.
Okay, so we're down to two point seven.
Yes.
Going in. Now, I, I hear what, I am, I, I hear what Lisa's saying, and I think that's, that's why, that's why I asked it for the fourteenth time, because I, I wasn't sure that wasn't a kick the can down the road kind of situation. But what I was asking was, can you designate it to the general fund reserves that it can't be spent? And does that make a difference in that analysis? In a lease, in Lisa's analysis? If you, if you committed to the general fund and you say.
We, we can transfer whatever you decide additional from, from eleven fifteen waiver. But the, the problem of restricting it for certain things, that's a little bit complicated, because we combine all the revenue into one pool and we take the, that pool out to use it for expenses. So as long as those expenses don't exceed what they have, that additional money coming in will definitely be reserves.
So yes, okay, so, okay, so, um, what we can, we could take a million and, and Lisa's going to say probably that's going to cause us deficit, and, and maybe it will, maybe it won't, but we also have five more million in there. That we could do another million next year, another million next year, another million the year after that.
Or we can pull it out in the middle of the year.
Right, or we could refurbish it.
Yes, that's correct.
So I don't think it's smart to do the whole amount, but if we did a million and then we looked at some other cuts that, that, that we've got on this list that will add up, I think we can make some cuts too that could get us to the two point seven that aren't super painful.
Commissioner, as, 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 I did provide you with the, the updated list of what our, our revenue from interest is, so let's, let's, let's talk about that for a minute. Because in our budget, we normally budget a very low amount of interest for the general fund of anywhere from eight hundred thousand to a million. And let's say we bring in the same thing we did this year of four point six.
No, can't do that, yeah.
That's, that's additional funds that we didn't have budgeted.
But we can't do that, Dale, because that money's going away. That interest is going.
And we're fixing to start spending it and it's going away.
That interest is going down, but, but I do think we should use some of this interest for capital projects. Like I think the two point five million that's sitting in the capital project funds ought to go towards the roof or go towards some cap, other capital project that we know we have a huge need for. That, I think, because that's a one-time expense for, for.
We, we definitely can, but I remember we've already went through the last few courts. We've already been working with, with three of them that they were going to use the interest on certain things already. So some of that interest has already been used.
Well, that's what I'm asking is. But there's more coming. There's also more coming.
More coming, yes. More coming, yes.
So, so what, that's the question that I've been trying to get to is, what is not allocated today? Of this two point five, I don't think anything's been voted on, right? So we, we certainly could just, and, and the, and the roof's not that big a deal right at the moment, because it's not part of this budget. Like, we know we got to do it, but I'm just throwing things out. But I'm, I'm more, my point was not to make a motion on the, on that. It was just to say, for me, using interest on one-time expense things is a better way of doing it than trying to stick it into the budget. But, but with the eleven fifteen waiver, it's a little different, because if we, we know we have six million bucks sitting in there, we could do this for five years, at least. Because I think some of it's accounted for, maybe it's only five now, I don't know. So we could do this for five more years, which would kind of offset some of what Lisa's saying, which is we could end up shortage. So that's not a, I mean, that'd start us off if, I mean, if we transferred one million in, one million in from, and we could, and could we make that, um, could we just make that like a designation now? Could we say that, I know we can't bind courts necessarily, but could we, or maybe we can. Could we say we're going to do this for the next five years?
You can bind for one year. You can say, for example, we're, we're, we proposed transferring in a million dollars from eleven fifteen waiver. Let's say we're going to, let's say the court agrees, we're going to do, let's say more, let's say that we're going to do two. We can say this one million additional funds has to be put into a restricted fund, a restricted area that can't be used without court authority. And then, then, then a hundred percent guaranteed reserves.
And then we could, can we also say, and the intention of the court is to do that for the next five years?
Unfortunately, we can't really restrict the court to that, so we have to each do it separately, but if you can do a plan, that, that's definitely a plan we can, we can talk about, yes.
Because I think, well, we have to, because we're going to get, something's going to happen during the year, and we're going to forget this conversation, or, and, and we're going to want to use some of that eleven fifteen waiver money. So I'm just trying to set something up, maybe that's not binding, but that at least articulates our intent to do for the next three or four years, you know, whatever, right? And, and until, until things, if things level out, we may not always have to do it, right? But, but to me, it's, I know it's kicking the can down the road, but it's five years down the road and we're going to grow and things are.
What we can do on, on the eleven fifteen waiver department, we can put restrictions there. Let's say this can, can, this has to be, this, these funds cannot be used without strict authority of the court for this purpose.
Everything we do, and if we make another vote, we're going to.
No, 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 or these funds are intended to be used for budget purposes for the next five years unless changed by the court.
Yes, and we can definitely put notes in, notes, notes to those statements there. That way, we don't really restrict the general fund's authorities, so.
Yeah.
But I'd make a motion to transfer a million dollars from eleven fifteen waiver.
One million dollars already there.
Yeah, there's a million already in the proposed.
An additional?
Add an additional million.
Additional million, additional million, okay.
My bad. An additional one million dollars into the general fund balance with the intent being that the court will restrict these funds in the future going forward to only be used for budget purposes unless changed by this court.
Unless voted on by this court.
That's a motion?
That's a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign, the motion passes.
Good idea, Commissioner.
Any other, um, things?
Yeah, I got some more.
Go, man. Roll, baby.
Number seventeen, I, I pulled seventeen because he's got, I have a question mark on there. He's got savings, but what, what savings are we talking about?
We, we, we voted on that one, remember, to cancel it going forward.
We had some more cars ordered and we canceled the order coming in. We, since our fleet is pretty current now.
Oh, the cars.
We voted on that in the previous court, yes.
So I have a question on that.
We're going to cancel that, we're going to cancel that.
I'd like to.
You want to add your name to it?
Can I get permission to add?
Yes, please.
My eye to that last motion.
It's just one million, and with the restriction that.
I have a question on seventeen.
Very limited in using that fund except for this, yes. Yeah, sorry, Commissioner.
I was aware, I was told to me that there was a car in inland parks that it was, that inland parks didn't get, but they were being built for it.
I am not aware of that.
Can anybody answer that?
Edward was here earlier.
Purchasing would be the one overseas that.
That would be purchasing, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
They were still getting built for that car, but they never got the car.
So you say savings, what is the savings?
What's the question?
It says savings there, what is the savings?
When we, when we, when we budgeted the, 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 the value of the car, when, when Michael brings this in, he'll say, we're going to get fifty-three cars. But we don't know when in the year we're going to get these fifty-three cars, so we budgeted the full amount in the year. And so when, when we now know that we're going to suspend this, we reduce it down to exactly what we needed, so that's where the savings are.
So how much is that?
It was nine hundred ninety thousand dollars savings.
Nine hundred ninety thousand dollars.
But we didn't cancel.
Hundred ninety thousand dollars of savings.
We didn't cancel very many cars then at a hundred ninety thousand.
Nine hundred ninety thousand.
We, we canceled about fifty, fifty cars.
One hundred ninety thousand.
Because they're, they're about six thousand dollars apiece.
Oh, they're only.
Per year.
Least, sorry, excuse me, I'm like a car for six thousand dollars.
Per year. Per year. Per year.
So can we, can we get a, okay.
I'll, I'll get with Michael and see where, where it is. If, if that's the case, and it will, we get the billing from, from, uh, Enterprise. Enterprise works with, with purchasing to make sure they have who the cars are assigned to, to make sure we get your bill right. And we'll work with purchasing to get that fixed.
No, I was looking at that, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, number twenty-four, I pulled twenty-four, just, I have a couple of recommendations on that. Is that we, we're using the seventy thousand, it says here, general fund budget reduction. And it says here that we're using the seventy thousand from the capital credits. I guess that we're using the seventy thousand from?
Well, we are, we're going to move it from the general fund to a special revenue fund thirteen seventy-nine, which used, at one time was called family protection. Now it's capital credit administration where that could be used for economic, economic development as well as the other, uh, economic function that are on there.
And my recommendation would be that we do thirty thousand, thirty thousand and ten thousand. I don't know.
Thirty thousand for, thirty, thirty and ten?
Right.
I, I.
That's my, that's going to be my recommendation.
I understand, I got, I got. So you want to, you want to reduce the, the group that does the economic development for the entire county and the entire area versus just for Robstown?
I don't know what they're doing, to me.
I do.
And, you know, we'll, give them fifty each, and, but I'm, that doesn't matter to me. But I'm just saying, this is my, my motion, you want to have one to increase theirs, it's up to you, but I'm just saying, you know, there's a lot of stuff happening in the western area of county. You know, that we, we don't think that there is, but there is a lot. There's a lot of growth, a lot of companies are coming in and inquiring. We just went to, uh, one for, for OxyChem. They're going to be a, a Clayburn County, uh, in the, in the King Ranch, but they're going to interest through the Ken Road Seventy by Bishop. So there'll be a lot of traffic there. So, you know.
But where do we stop? Like, I think we ought to give it to other people then. If you're going to go that route, why aren't we giving something to the people who do economic development in Port Aransas and Flower Bluff and Cal Allen and Tolosso Midway? All of these places deserve some, and that's how we've normally done it. We give it out of our own.
We could just bring it up and see if we vote on it. So.
I'd like to.
My, my, my motion right now is to, to, uh, do thirty, thirty and ten.
So we have a motion to change this seventy thousand dollar for economic development to divide it up, distribute it. Thirty thousand to the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development, thirty thousand to the Robstown Area Development and ten thousand to the Downtown Management. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
And discussion, Judge.
Yes.
So unfair.
I, I want.
So wrong. Come on, man.
I, sorry, I'm going to vote against this, but I did want to get on record to say, I think we should keep it at fifty for the R E D C, uh, R E D C, C C R E D C. Uh, I, I do want to see an increase for the R A D C, the Robstown Area Development Corporation and the Downtown Management District. I've done that over the last couple of years and I plan to do that with my own funding. And I thought that was one of the philosophies, one of the concepts that we talked about was to help reduce the budget as much as we can.
Using our own funds.
It's to use our own funds. So that's what I plan on doing. So, uh, I'm, you know, like I said, I, I support the motion to have the discussion, but I'm not going to be supporting it. But I will use funding that's allocated to me and balances that I have to be able to help support the R A D C and the D M D. Especially the D M D. I've been going down to their art walks, their music fests the, the last several months. And I encourage everyone to go the first Friday of each month, and it's an unbelievable downtown scene that you find in huge cities. I mean, you can't even walk down city streets or sidewalks. All these amazing, um, buildings and offices are open, art displays, music, food. So I'm, I'm planning on, on supporting them as well. So I, I think we should, we should all look at.
You want to amend the motion, Commissioner? I'd be glad to work with you on that.
I, I was just going to add it later. I don't know if it's easier to, to do it later or to add it now.
Add it later, we can all see what we have.
Yeah, I mean, I could do it either way, but I guarantee you, Commissioner, I agree with what you're saying about R A D C. They are getting a lot of growth out there, but I was going to put money, an extra twenty to make up, to get us to the thirty. So however y'all want to do it, I mean, I could do it now.
If it's good now, you can increase it later if you want.
Are you talking about Robstown here?
The Robstown, and then I eventually want to add some more to the D M D, the Downtown Management District as well.
And I want to comment here. I mean, guys, we all think these are great organizations and do a lot for our community. I don't think there's anyone up here that isn't thinking that line, but given the budget that we're faced with, I would have to agree. This is the amount we set aside and whatever we can do on our own within our budget, special revenue or whatever, is a great idea to add to that.
Here, as you, as you mentioned, this was, this, these funds were moved out of the general fund to a, a special revenue fund called Capital Credit. This last year for Capital Credit, we received ninety-nine thousand dollars. Right now, we have three hundred and twelve thousand dollars in the fund balance. So if we want to talk about a possible increase for, with the court knows those things fit, fu, fu, this, this fund has funds available to do it.
There's money there?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to, but based on where we're at, I was, I'll be honest, I mean, you've already made your motion, but I was going to make a motion to cut it all for one year, because we're, we're asking everybody else to make cuts. All these budget cuts are coming in. We've said, we, you know, kind of no reclassifications, no raises, no, other than what we have to give by policy. We've talked about all these cut, cut, no do, no new, extra, and that was one of the things I was going to say we cut this year to, to make some of the seven, the deficit up. Because as the judge has said so well so many times, we got to take care of what we got to take care of, what we're statutorily obligated to do, and this isn't one of those things. And I'm all for giving them, you know, I, I'm glad we give it to them, but shoot, I think we ought to just take it away and take it out of our budget. And if someone wants to make some one-time special thing from some, some other deal, but I think it ought to come out as a line item completely.
Yeah, Commissioner, we are already reducing it from the general fund, so it's out of the general fund completely.
I, I get it, but it's still taxpayer money. I mean, it's collected money.
No, this is the capital credits. It's restricted for use. It can only be used on development districts and family protection.
Family protection. I knew there was two things, yes.
Then, you know, maybe we ought to bring back all the economic development. I mean, in other words, if we're going to do for three, we ought to do for twelve, or we ought to do for none. Because there's a lot of economic development groups out there that are just as good as Robstown, just as good as the R A D C, just as good as Downtown Management that we don't fund. So where do we, like, where do we stop and start, right? I'm okay with making it equitable, but, but it can't just be, you know, those. I mean, I, I got to fight for the folks that are doing the economic development in my part of the county too. And let me tell you, you don't think there's great economic development on the island, Port A, London, they're, they're kicking butt and taking names. And the only money they get is what little I give out of outside agency funds. So if, if, maybe we ought to bring this one back and just revisit it, if, if that's what we're moving it to, and it's not going to affect the general fund, but I, I mean, let's have it.
Want to give it out of your own budget, we can do that too.
Right, but y'all don't want to give it out of the general, I want to give it, if we're going to give to all these three, let's give them to everybody.
Yeah.
Out of the capital credit fund. Or let's, or let's use the capital credit fund for something else that we take care of our own.
This is not affecting our general fund. This is not affecting our budget. So we can pull just the economic development and push it to the twenty-seventh agenda where we will know how much more. We will have all of the things there. So let's pull item number, um, twenty-four. We can, in the meantime, check on your own special revenue funds.
That's a good idea.
And you can, there's, this doesn't have to be voted on today, so.
So we would.
Pull this whole item out. I will make a motion to bring this back on the twenty-seventh, so.
Oh, yeah, you have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, you have a motion and a second. That was for just discussion. He said he was voting against, I'm sorry.
It's still a motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Commissioner Gonzalez's motion to increase the, huh?
I was going to amend my motion if you want.
Oh, you were? Go ahead, sorry.
I went to the twenty-seventh, I mean, I don't mind doing it.
That's what I thought. We should bring it back on the twenty-seventh.
You got to vote on the motion.
I forgot you had a motion and already going, yes.
Who was the second, was it me or?
I moved, I made my motion that we, uh, bring it back up on the twenty-seventh for discussion and vote.
And, and how much, second, how much did you say was in there?
Right now, the fund balance is three twelve.
How much?
Three hundred twelve thousand.
And it can only be spent on economic development and.
Economic development and family protection.
Family protection.
The three twelve was the beginning of the year. We, we received ninety, we spent thirty, so it's, uh, right about three seventy probably.
Hey, amended his motion to change to the twenty-seventh.
Could you give us a list of what it could be spent on?
Are you still going to second that? We have a motion and a second to push this to the twenty-seventh. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Any other items, Commissioner Gonzalez, before I move on to somebody else?
Yeah, I got one more.
Okay.
Okay, number twenty-six, we just mentioned one ago about, would, would that also fall under the same category as twenty-five? Like the C and D, the Chamber of Commerce?
You mean twenty-four?
Yeah, twenty-six would be, twenty-six, C and D, would they also fall under the, under twenty-five, I mean, under twenty-four? You know, because, uh.
I don't believe so, but that's more of a legal opinion for how it fits, so.
I would argue they're definitely economic development. TUIA, oh my gosh, are you kidding me? And C C Chamber of Commerce? Holy cow. That's exactly what, that's the military task force, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
If you don't think that's, if you don't think that's economic development, we got another.
Those bodies should go under twenty-four. That's the only reason we can use those monies.
You would need to get a county attorney opinion.
But are memberships allowed for that? This is a membership?
No, they use it to advocate. They use it to fight windstorm increases, then they use it to make sure we maintain our military bases. Which, those two things are billions of dollars of economic development, meaning if we don't keep those rates down, then we, people flee this place. If we can't keep our military bases here, then holy cow, look at the jobs we lose. Now, if you want, I mean, I, let me tell, I'll take, I'd, I'd be wanting to take a chance on that today until somebody tells me different, because that's big time economic development.
Once we review their documentation and see what on paper is what their obligation and their authority, we can make an opinion on that, but not based on what's here.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, that so we can know where to put them back on twenty-four.
We're happy to do that research.
Yeah.
I'm willing to take a chance if you are. I mean, I, I think, I'm willing to take, make that motion now to move that up into twenty-four and to bring, to that gets brought back on there. And then that would reduce, that's another great idea, Commissioner, that would reduce sixty-five thousand. So it would, it would remove twenty-six, C and D at Commissioner Gonzalez's suggestion up into item twenty-four and remove that then from the general fund. So that would be a cut of sixty-five thousand from the general fund.
So move.
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, as long as the attorney opinion says that it is allowed to.
I didn't say that.
Well, then we're moving it in there. We don't have it, it's going away. Okay.
As long as the county attorney comes back and says.
All right, I'll take that as.
As long as the county attorney comes back and says, it's okay to do it.
Thank you.
There'll be.
We do need to see if it's okay.
Section twenty-four. All right. Come on.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Any more, Commissioner?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any, Commissioner Hernandez, didn't you have some?
Uh, no, Judge. The one I had was also seventeen.
Okay, perfect. I have one thing to bring up very quickly, should be fairly simple. And I know we have several people here that want to talk about theirs, but J.J. sent an email to you, I think, Dale.
Yes.
His state approved the fund. This is a state-funded deal, so it shouldn't be, it's not a cost to the general fund for the employee, right?
That's correctly. We need to make sure we add it to the budget for the Veteran Cemetery. As they somehow pay, it'll be paid for from there as well as the benefits from there. And we'll make sure the adjustments, because we had a little bit of a contingency already built into the fund. It should be not a problem.
It's for his admin assistant and increase at twelve thousand, but it is no cost to the general fund.
To be amended to the budget because of what you already included, but we'll make sure we include that for the Veteran Cemetery.
Do we need a motion to do that or just a statement?
Get everything done. We say amended, amended, that'll be included.
You have that note then, so we're good.
Did you get my question answered on, was it the ARPA-funded positions? I think you had the deputy medical examiner and the investigator. And I think I emailed you, was it yesterday or Monday, about it?
With the way we did for the, for the ARPA funds, we removed the investigators. The deputy medical examiner was moved out of ARPA into the general fund as a plus. However, the deputy chief will be a reduction once that person has been moved to the medical examiner. So we'll have a savings of forty thousand dollars in the general fund.
So that funding though, that listed me under the line item, is that going back into my?
Yes, it'll be going back into your, yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
We have a few departments here that want to bring up, go ahead, Commissioner Chesney.
Go ahead and vote in the next base, Judge, before we go forward.
Yes, but we have some others too. So I wanted to see if anybody else had any, yes, by all means.
Okay. Judge, I'd like to also, what I'm, I think we still have the hundred thousand for outside agencies in the budget, right?
That's correct.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we, for one year, reduce the general fund transfer to special revenue for outside agencies of a hundred thousand dollars. That would be my motion. That would be for all.
Is that on number twenty-five?
Yeah, it's number twenty-five.
Do you have your own money, your fund?
Right, right, right. We just wouldn't get a new allocation this year.
For one year.
Right, one year.
So you want to take this out and everyone uses their own special funds?
That's up to the court, wherever the court decides. Right now, it's in the budget.
We have a motion. I'll second that motion.
He seconded.
Oh, Commissioner Gonzalez already seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. But we are going to continue that, but just use our own other special funds for that.
So one time, one year only, yes.
Yes, one time, one year only. Okay, we have a few people here to talk about their departments. And then we have four other votes before we move on. I think Mr. Solay, you were here for us. Y'all were both, anybody wants to jump up to the microphone if you're here to talk about your changes and want requests, now is the time to do it.
Thank you, Judge. I've prepared a packet for each one of you. I may have your permission to approach to give you this information. Thank you. The request I'm passing out is pretty simple. It's, if you refer to the first page, it shows a savings of twenty-five thousand dollars by eliminating the H R Generalist position and the Employment Coordinator position with the proposal to have an H R manager. Would like to promote one of my staff members to a H R manager. By doing so, would not only resolve some concerns in regards to overtime, it would place that employee in an exempt status. Next year, the proposed budget gives me one thousand dollars in overtime. And that employee who has been working very hard on our Workday project has had a hundred and twelve hours of overtime in the past three pay periods for six weeks, which equates to about five thousand dollars. So I really need someone to be able to provide that administrative support and to do so at a higher level. Right now, she's on the same level as my other three employees. She's conducting supervisory tasks, but is not in a supervisory role. And I also need someone to provide administrative duties in my absence and in coordination with me. So the proposal is for one of my staff members, the H R Generalist, to be made the H R manager. The county will still realize, as I stated earlier, savings of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the current proposed budget only eliminates the Employment Coordinator, which was submitted at my request. However, that request still needs to have the duties that are in my department completed. And so I really need to disperse those duties, divide them up. I'm gonna be revising the job descriptions for my department to ensure that all tasks are completed. And with Workday implementation on January first, it really is imperative that I do that because the job responsibilities will be changed. And it really makes it that much more urgent that I have an H R manager in that department to provide some of those administrative tasks.
So you're doing away with two positions. Are you going to, is the H R department still going to be able to keep up with? I know we're not, oh, just one position. It looked like two here, sorry.
In essence, it is two. You're right, Judge, is the H R Generalist and the Employment Coordinator. But in place of that, I will have an H R manager.
Oh, so you're putting her, the one, so it's really just one. Okay.
Remaining the Generalist and the Manager, yes.
I just glanced at it wrong. Thank you.
So this is giving someone more money, a reclassification?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, it's a reclassification. It's eliminating one and reclassifying one.
So here's my, here's my beef.
I know where you're going with that, Commissioner. Can I just add?
You bet. Jump in.
In the next year, I project she'll probably need twenty-five thousand dollars in overtime. Based on the training that we have to do as an H R department to the entire county, the task-wise with my department to provide training, that is not in the scope of duties for Workday. And so I will need that continued support of overtime and continued support of hours. And even with this proposed budget, that twenty-five thousand dollars is going to be cut in half by just adding already to her existing salary. So it's still a savings.
Right, but, so here's, here's the thing. Everybody in this county could be creative and come up with reclassifications at salary savings. So when we kind of sent the message out, we sent the message out of, and I'm not speaking for everyone, but nobody, I mean, this is kind of what I said and I think others did, but whatever, was, look, during this budget, how do we, you know, how do we do, how do we do reclassification, in my opinion? How do we reclassifications at a time like this, right? Because that means, because one department head or elected official was more creative than somebody else or has another fund somewhere else or has this, then they were able to get more money for their people and get raises when the rest of the county was asked to cut, 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 cut. So to me, I get their justification. And there's going to be other ideas that are coming forward, that their ideas are good too. But I have a real problem with the message we're sending because we sent all these messages out to all these budget departments. Man, you better cut, you gotta cut, you gotta cut. Don't ask for raises, don't ask for, don't ask for, don't ask for. But then, okay, then we need to send this back to every single department head. If we're gonna allow one set of reclassifications, then we got to let everybody have a shot at reclassifications and salary savings. Because I don't think it's fair. I don't, I don't think reclassifications right now are fair. I don't think it's fair to you to do. I don't think it's fair to anybody else to do it. So your numbers and your math may be right, just like the rest of them might be. But, but then we should have said to the rest of the department heads, hey, go ahead, give us your best shot. If you can come up with salary savings and all these other things, because nobody, not a lot of people did that because they kind of got the message how bad this budget was going to be. So I'm in a bad spot today because you have a great idea, Mr. Hernandez has a great idea, other, Sands has a great idea. But I'm stuck because we sat out here and said, told everybody, don't come back with raises, reclassifications, cuts. We want cuts. And, and yet, so you got creative. Kudos to creativity. But it wasn't the message we sent. And I just, it's hard for me to support reclassifications for you because if I got to do it, you got to do it for everybody else. But you don't need everybody's vote. You just need three. So I'll shut up and see if you got the three.
Let me appease you, Commissioner, because you're right.
You don't need to appease me. Just, I'm just telling you where I'm coming from. I mean.
Yes, sir. And I understand that, but please keep in mind that I did make a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cut in my department. And part of that cut still had this plan in place. We still have to get the work done with less staff and more work. And so when I should have a staff of six, I got a staff of four. I'm eliminating a position and I'm reclassifying a position to make sure the work is done and gets done fairly. Isn't fear to ask one of my employees to do managerial work and not have her in that position? She's been doing that since I, before I even got here.
Well, that's, shame on us for that, for sure. And it should have been handled, that should have been handled years ago. She shouldn't have been doing that. Or he or she, I'm sorry, I don't know who it is.
But this is our opportunity to fix it. And so I'm presenting this to the court for approval in consideration of the concerns that I just brought forward.
And I think a little different, a little bit, a little bit different. You know, we said no reclassification, no.
Microphone.
Speak into the microphone.
No, adding new positions. And I think that if, I always look at the fact that, you know, I appreciate the fact you're going to do twenty-five thousand dollar savings. You're shuffling around people with, I guess, you know, you got to do that in order to, to come up with what you want, bless you. And so, you know, and it's hard sometimes, but I think as long as you're not going above and beyond of what we're asking you not to do, we, when I mean no classifications, I really meant no classifications to a higher grade, you know, higher, requesting more money than what you have already. If you have money already in your budget and you get rid of a position, I think that's something we need to probably consider. And you get rid of. And I know that probably maybe next year you're gonna, but when you give it a position, it's gone, right?
That's correct.
Positions don't come back.
That's correct.
So it's not about getting rid of it and saying, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put the money back into the other ones and, you know, and it's still going to be there, right? I think that, so I think a little different. I think that as long as it was in that circle, I think it was something we probably had to consider, I would, I would consider. Not about anybody else. So we have to sometimes survive with all we have, right?
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate all the hard work everybody does. I know, I know, even Commissioner Chesney appreciates that. But I mean, he's got a different view of certain things. But my, like I said, my feeling is if you're not asking for more above and beyond, and you can work it within that circle, you know, and then there's a savings, it's even better. I mean, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that.
So we'll see. I'm just letting you know what I, what I'm looking at.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
I'll save us time to say ditto what Commissioner Gonzalez said, so. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll do as well. I didn't learn anything this morning about the insurance problems we have. And they should have gone to your department and so forth. That means you need the help in your department?
I do.
So I am also considering your request.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that as well.
And my comment would have to be, and I'm sorry, Commissioner Chesney, I know, I understand your thoughts completely.
It's a great idea.
We did this. We have done this. We are still in the same year. We have allowed other departments, as long as they can tell me that it is a definite budget cut in your department. I think next year, no. Anybody that comes to us, we need to say no, absolutely. But when you start something and you allow it for other departments, it is hard for me to stand here and say no to you when I said yes to other people. So as long as they can tell me that it is in fact a cut, I am fine with that.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks, sir.
Make the motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion. Sorry to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstain? Yes, thank you.
Good idea. It's just, can't do it.
I totally agree. And, and I will absolutely say no next year. Let me warn everybody. Oh, this will just be added to the budget, an amendment to the budget. Okay. I make the motion to amend the proposed budget with these. Oh, we have to go.
That's the right way to do it.
First.
Yeah.
You did it right.
We did it right, yeah. Never mind.
And so you got to put that cost savings in?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell, good morning.
Good afternoon, Judge. Commissioners, I'll try to make this.
Sorry, I thought it was morning.
Try to make this as brief as possible. I'm putting out a presentation. With the loss of the two ARPA-funded medical examiner investigators, we've put a proposal forward for an amendment to our own budget, which has a net zero impact. We are going to try to eliminate the two part-time ME investigators that we have in lieu of trying to bring on the two eliminated ARPA-funded investigators as full-time. And to do that, we're going to offset some of our own budget categories. We'd like to reduce our temporary employees by twenty-three thousand. We'd also like to reduce our postage by a thousand and our travel by five thousand. That should make up the difference that is necessary to, to make that change for the ME investigators, to preserve those positions.
So Dale, what does this reflect?
What does this reflect? Actual cost to the county?
Net zero. If you, if you allow the cuts in the travel, the other expenses they have and bringing in the new and deleting those two part-time positions. Because we already had several positions deleted from their departments. We deleted the deputy chief once he's appointed the medical examiner. And we've already deleted the autopsy technician that was already there. And with that additional, then there's still going to be some cost savings in the medical examiner's office.
So is this a, it's a net zero, but is this a raise, a reclassification?
These will be, these will be actually, we're actually deleting two positions and we're creating two positions. We're deleting two part-time, creating two full-time.
So this is different, right?
It's not a necessary reclassification.
It's just moving people around, but at same cost.
I'm trying to figure out how to vote, because I want to be consistent. I don't know what this is. I'm just trying to figure out how to vote.
What they're asking to do, they have two part-time positions. They're asking those two positions to be eliminated. And they're asking them to create two full-time positions under the same type of work.
But no, no pay raised, no pay?
It'll be a cost a bit more because part-time is a little bit cheaper than a full-time. It's about twenty-eight thousand dollars more expensive to do full-time than part-time.
But is this a reclassification?
Basically.
Okay, so it is a reclassification?
If you can count that way, yes.
If it's not a reclassification, I can vote for it. If it is, I can. I mean, I'm just trying to be consistent, so.
Technically, it's moving from part-time to full-time. It's, it is kind of, you consider a reclassification.
Stain again. Go ahead. Just go ahead, go ahead. I'm not going to stick on, just make me as extensive on all of these.
But it is a zero-cost increase and it is still a net decrease in their, they did budget cuts to their department.
That's correct.
Everybody did, yes.
Everybody did, so.
Do we get, I'm keeping my tally with this, assuming it passes, will we get some more savings?
With this, there is no, there are, savings are already built in. I mean, this does not include any additional savings.
You're not cutting anything in additional than, than what you already submitted. Is that correct for us?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's no extra cost either. So this is, they've already made their cuts, so.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve your changes for the medical examiner.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to make those changes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one abstain. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Hernandez, you're up in the hot seat.
I also have a packet. I have a copy for you. So for early clarification, we are requesting to delete positions and reclassify. So for Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you.
I respect and understand your position. We seek to reduce five positions in our office and reclassify all remaining attorneys in the office, including supervisors. What you see on the front page and in the attached pages, we submitted our amended proposal, which included this way back when. This isn't something new. We submitted this back on August eighteenth of twenty-three at ten fifteen a.m. And attached to that are the required. required worksheets, which automatically enter the salary savings versus the employee benefit saving, and then the total, um, additional costs, and then behind it, you see each of the categories of attorneys, and I will clarify that our office is the only office in the entire county that has, you know, felony prosecutor, misdemeanor chief, felony prosecutor, attorney one, attorney two. I don't want anyone to think that any other department gets to piggyback, because the law very clearly states that you take the job title and the job description and the duties and the caseload, and it's similarly situated, and it's very clear in the law.
So, these attorneys that you're changing won't affect the public defender's office or the county attorneys?
Nope, not if, not.
Auxiliary court, they're, they're felony. The auxiliary court has a felony attorney.
The auxiliary court felony attorney, if you look at the job descriptions, which are public record, there's clear distinctions in the job descriptions, both between the civil attorneys, the public defender's office, the auxiliary court, and the prosecutors. And when you look at the caseload, I don't think there's anyone that can stand up here and make a claim. So, for example, um, the numbers we got at the Board of Judges meeting for the public defender's office, respectfully, our office took in about fifteen hundred cases this past month. Your public defender's office took in forty.
Well, they're just getting started, I mean, come on.
It doesn't matter, they've been in existence a year, and they're only gonna have to take by virtue of the grant fifteen percent of the cases. We take a hundred percent. So the math is always gonna be like that.
Well, that doesn't matter, though. My question is, what I was told on this one, which is significantly different than the others is, and I shared this, my thought with Ms. Hernandez, so this is no surprise, is that part of the reason that I have a problem with this one, different than the others even, is that this does affect the other attorneys, because that's what y'all told me. So, if that's not true, then let me know.
Clarification, because if it doesn't, it's great. If it does, it's a problem, yes.
This has been an issue before that we brought up, and then the county attorneys were working, and we had to do an adjustment about a year or so ago, and, and currently right now, the attorneys are under a certain PCN number, which is Position Control Number, that they're theoretically the same, and we have to look at the personnel file rules and say that, that there could be a separation, as, as, as the DA is talking about, but, but this was brought up a few years ago, and we had to do a big adjustment for the county attorney.
Yes, we did.
And we are happy for you to.
Yeah, I'm sure you are.
Assist the district attorney's office, and we will make our request shortly thereafter.
Yeah, I mean, this is a huge impact, because you've got, there's, I'm sorry, I don't, we have, this is how we've always done it, Ms. Hernandez, I mean, and you know that, you've been here, I mean, you've seen it. We had to make that huge adjustment for the county attorney before. The public defenders are gonna come in, and whatever their caseload is, their caseload is, but they're, they're, they're attorneys at a certain level, we're gonna have to adjust for them too, so it's going to happen here. There's no way we're going to escape it at this eleventh hour, trying to come in and saying that this will, not eleventh hour, you've, you've put it forth before, I don't mean it like that, but eleventh hour in the, for us, it is, I don't see how we escape that. I don't, I just don't see.
When it reduces your budget, it's going to throw theirs out into the.
What I heard Dale say is while we are all under this same Position Control Number, it doesn't have to be that way.
But it is.
But we're at the end of the budget cycle. I'm asking for this. If you're gonna deny it because you're going to say that you don't, do you have a legal written opinion that says that?
It's a policy. That's what we operate under. I don't have to have a legal written opinion. I have to have a, we have to follow the policies that this county operates under. And we've always done this, we've always done this for years.
It doesn't make it right. I think that's what we're learning, and through all this budget process, is it doesn't necessarily make it right. Maybe this should have been fixed a long time ago.
Maybe that's.
Because it's really hard for me to go and explain to a bunch of attorneys why they have thousands of cases on their caseload, and they make the same pay as somebody who has forty.
But if you, if y'all were full, would you have less caseload?
No. The caseload is the caseload.
How many attorneys do you have that are?
We have eight openings, but we're asking to reduce, so you're talking about a difference of three. I mean, we're giving up five, so that's not included in that eight.
Can you just spread that wealth among all the attorneys?
That's what I'm doing.
That's what she was doing.
No, but you're going above and beyond them.
No, I, I'm, I, in order to spread the wealth, I have to reclassify. I can't just turn around and say, I'm gonna give each attorney money. It has to fit into a classification.
Without asking for more money, two hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm not asking for more money, I'm still giving you a big cut. You're still gonna have a cut from us.
She is doing a reduction. The problem is that her classification is going to cause them to go up.
And the public defender.
In the county attorney's office, in the public defender's office.
We just get rid of those five and just spread that wealth to the other attorneys without having to ask for another one.
You're saying them, everybody's?
I would spread them to all the departments?
Is that what you're saying?
That would work, but that, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, that's what, I was like, what?
Talk about her attorneys, you know, but, I mean, if you're getting rid of five, and you split it with whatever, all the attorneys you have, which is nine or ten, I don't know how many you have, but would that, would that be okay? I mean.
I'm not understanding what you're asking me. I think I've, I think I've lost you. I'm not understanding what you're asking me, respectfully, Commissioner.
Okay, let me see, because here, what we, what the numbers we're looking at is an additional, two hundred and sixty-three thousand for new personnel. I'm just saying the ones you're gonna get rid of, can you split them with this attorneys here?
What?
And they stay within the circle, you know what I'm saying?
That's what.
This is just the reclassification. On the first two pages, it shows.
What are the positions that are, that are being removed?
One eighty savings.
We're eliminating, um, an appellate division attorney, we're eliminating two felony twos, a felony one, and a misdemeanor one. So, between salary and benefits, that's a savings of four sixty-one, six thirty-seven oh five. If you go with the budget worksheet, the one that we fill out, maybe it's off a little bit, but I tend to go by that because it's correct. When you take the next pages, the next three pages, those are your additions, and when you do the final math, you still end up with us offering a savings after you include the, uh, office expenses, the special personnel service, travel expenses, a savings of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
And how much are the raises for each of them?
That would be the addition of.
Into seventeen thousand, if I remember right, per, depending on what you, how much you.
Between, like, between eight and probably, I don't know what the highest is, eight to twelve, eight to thirteen. It's gonna be an array in there.
You know, I hear you, and I, I somewhat agree on the, um, caseload for our attorneys. Maybe that is something we really need to look at when, and I know it's been brought before us before about the public defenders is new, they haven't been around that long, but I think they're limited on how many cases they are even allowed to take, aren't there, isn't there a set number they can only take, which is in no way, shape, or form comparable to your, what you just listed, if, if that is in fact correct numbers. I don't know anything about, I can't remember what it was or anything, but.
Correct.
Um, you know, it's not apples to apples to me, if you're, you're doing one case and doing this, so I, I, I don't know how to fix this. If y'all discussed this before, how many cases do your attorneys get?
Well, if you want to talk about a comparison, it's a very difficult thing to do. For instance, the attorneys in the county attorney's office often come and are required to come with a lot of experience, um, regarding, they've been in courtrooms, and now they have to learn additional codes. It's not just the penal code, it's federal law, it's state law. I mean, it's not a comparison to say, my set of attorneys does this thing more than any other, because, well, my set of attorneys does more CPS cases, and, and, so it's not a, it's not a logical argument to say, we do this, therefore we are more deserving than the other.
But in the, in the public defender's portion, that is set up, the similar, and if they're limited on how many cases they are only allowed, I mean, you don't get a choice. When we give you a problem, you've gotta fix it, no matter how many cases you have going, or you have to hire outside counsel. Um, I don't know the solution to this one, sorry.
Yeah, which is why I think we're cutting her outside counsel budget too, right, didn't we?
Yeah.
Isn't that one of the things we cut, so we're, we're pampering.
But it's on the discussion, I think, for more legal reasons.
Or, or it's on the discussion, I mean, or it's in the budget, isn't it, too?
We didn't include any additional.
Not that one, no.
Oh, you didn't include, okay. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm, this one is, I'm sorry, I just, it's not, I, it may have been done wrong for the last twenty-five years, but that's how it's been done. And certainly, if, if it has been that equi, that inequitable with the caseloads, then that should have been an argument made before today, because then we can't change a whole policy today. We, because we can, but then we're gonna have to calculate how much it's gonna cost, because I don't know how we do that analysis today, and otherwise, if we do this, then I think we have no choice to know that we're gonna have to do for the county attorney, we're gonna have to do for the public defenders, as is our policy right now. Can that change later? Yeah, but as of right now, if we do this for them, what I've been told, and we've always done, if it's not right, then we can fix it, but as of today, we have to do, we have to do that.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, uh, if it's been done wrong for some time, when do we fix it? And also, shouldn't we take consideration that this?
The only other thing I would say is that this isn't the first time. We brought this up with the corn fairy study. The corn fairy study told Commissioners Court that it wasn't right, and that the job descriptions needed to be reviewed, so let's not.
Why didn't y'all take them and get them reviewed?
We, we, I came to you and I asked you to.
No, no, you haven't, you, Ms. Hernandez, we have an HR department that does that. We don't do the, we don't do the review, so y'all could have gone and.
I've said this to Julie Garra, and I said this to Timothy LaSalle, the first time I met with him, is that we had a problem trying to get raises because of job descriptions. I sat in his office, and that was like the first thing I told him. And like I said, this is since the corn fairy study, that we've been talking about this. So I don't wanna make it seem like this is some last ditch effort. This is something for years we've been talking about, because we've all acknowledged, and it's not just our office, it's the entire county of employees that's underpaid, and so I am happy for HR, and I am happy for the medical examiner's office, that their proposals went through, because we have to start somewhere in raising the salaries of all the employees of Nuasis County, not just mine.
And we've done that for years, but thank you, I appreciate that, for your staking up the county employees, and I wish you'd come more often, because, and, and remind us when we do have, pass the raises for county employees, and we do the things that we've done, and we've sucked up on the insurance benefits, and we've continued to try to increase those things, and so we have been doing it, since you're taking on the mantle of the, all the county employees, I'll, I'll take that on as well. But at the end of the day, if you have the inequity, then in my opinion, you could have had, been in Mr. Saleh's office and Ms. Garra's office, or come to this court and said, hey, push the issue, because we always respond, we don't, we don't always respond the way you want, we always respond and say, hey, could you put this on the agenda? Could you put this on the agenda to do it? Because I don't know that it's been done, done wrong all these years. I'm saying, if it has been done wrong all these years, then I don't know how we fix it today, because you can't just, you can't just fix it today without changing the policy. And if that's been the policy, then the only way to change that is to put it on and everybody vote on the policy. But that's why you can't, you can't, I mean, you can't just change a policy without having some public discussion and bring it out and do all these other things, but, I mean, if we need to put this on the agenda, let's put it on the agenda and discuss it, and let's talk about how other counties do it, which is how we have discussions. Let's put, let's see what other county attorneys and other district attorneys in counties are size. How do they, how do they do this? Would, other counties have to do it? If we've been, if there's other counties that do it, all we gotta do is make those comparisons. I'm happy to do that.
Well, then, I'm asking you now to do it. I'm asking you now to do it, to go ahead, and if it's not gonna affect this budget, then it can affect the next budget, but I've been respectful, and I don't need you to make me sound like a martyr, saying I'm picking up the mantle and talking about the other employees, because every single time.
And I don't want you making me feel like a martyr either, because you're trying to blame it on us.
I come in, I am respectful of this court, I am respectful of your vote, and I have always come in to champion the other employees. I always mentioned the district clerk. I came in when the officers were first doing their collective bargaining, and I'm not saying any of you have not. Clearly, if they have the benefits, they've been voted for. But there's no reason, Commissioner, to tell me I'm picking up some mantle, because I support all the other employees, because we're all in it together. That doesn't mean y'all aren't in it with us. I think we're all in it, and so, it's like Judge said, collectively, we came up with two-plus million in cuts. That was a collective effort, and it includes everybody, and so.
And I'm sorry, I'll put it on the agenda right now myself, Ms. Hernandez, because.
Well, that's what I just asked, and I appreciate that.
And I'm telling you, I'm responding to you and saying, I'll put it on the agenda for the twenty-seventh of September, to start that process and figure out how we do comparisons, and I'll tell Mr. Saleh, he's sitting in the room, I, I want, I would like to see a comparison of counties our size and how they deal with this issue between county attorneys, district attorneys, and public defenders. Because if there's a better way to do this, then let's dad gum do it, because I'm sick of it too, because I, I don't wanna say no to a great idea, but then I know if I say no to, yes to this great idea, Jenny's coming next, and, and so is, so is Dennis.
I think outside emergency situations, the budget can't be amended, at least that's my understanding of the law I got.
But I can't do that, I mean, that's not fair, I mean, I can't.
I'd like to ask.
To the microphone, Mr. Saleh, please.
So can we put that on, Mr. Saleh, for the, can you get something started on that?
I, I think it's gonna take some time to investigate and do that, but I absolutely agree it's necessary, and I will work with y'all on that as well.
All I wanna say.
I'll be, I'm sorry, I'll be happy to work with Ms. Hernandez. This is a great opportunity. Right now, we have a policy amendment committee in place, they're working on our county policies, and our hope is to have a new employee handbook with new, uh, policies as of November first. This is great timing for that to occur, and we can review those policies. I'll be glad to sit down with Ms. Hernandez and figure out what we can do, and begin that study that you requested, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Judge, I just wanna add.
Yeah.
That we need to remember that this department has, uh, problems trying to keep employees, and some of the attorneys are just going across the ocean to St. Pat, because they get better pay there, or other places. I mean, so, yeah, Commissioner, thank you for, I was gonna suggest that, put it on the agenda for the seventeenth, and then we should add, appropriately, if Ms. Hernandez is still gonna bring the same proposal to us.
I would just ask to be part of that process, Commissioner Chesney.
I would think both, that all three offices should be a part of it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That'd be, yeah.
Very much, thank you.
So can I ask this question, like, just to, to, so that we can figure this out, right? Because if, if we, we, we've amended budgets before with salary savings later, right? So if we, because if, because if we don't eliminate, and I wanna make sure I'm right on this, Ms. Hernandez, before you leave, if we don't eliminate the five positions, then you'll still have the same amount of budget potential that we, we could do this later, once we get this figured out.
If there's a savings.
And if we figure out how it's gonna affect the other folks too, because they'll still have that same amount of budget money, or is that not right?
Well, what we have to do, you can figure out, the, the budget will be as, is, is adopted with, with, without the changes in there, and if you come in at a later time, we can definitely do a reduction, reduction is no problem. Any, any increases will be had to come out of contingency.
Oh, well, but wait.
The problem I've had in the past, is when I come in and ask, I'm told we can't change anything in the budget outside an emergency, because I tried to come and ask for certain things.
You can't increase.
You can't increase.
But if we leave it in your budget, then you can transfer and negotiate.
Right, well, I'm assuming, I'm assuming rightfully or wrongfully, that if you're not gonna approve what I'm proposing, then there will not be a reduction in force in the office. Those salaries remain.
Correct.
That my salary savings will be available, and also that we are not subject to any freeze, since y'all did not pass the resolution.
That is correct.
And so that means those funds will be available, so if that's not gonna happen,
I think now's the time for anybody from the county attorney's office to say, no, there's gonna be opposition. Should we try to come up later on and do that?
No, no, I'm saying, as long as those funds are still there, what I'd like to see is this study between all these other counties, right? If, if there's something that these other county, what I'm gonna look for, transparent, is if these counties are doing it way differently than we are with county attorneys and district attorneys, that's compelling to me. Sorry, Jenny. That's compelling to me. Sorry, Dennis. If they're not, that's compelling to me too. Sorry, Ms. Hernandez, right? So, I mean, I need to see the results of what this renders, keeping the dollars in the pot for the moment. That's just me, keeping the dollars in the pot, so that it's possible, but I, I gotta have some data. I mean, not just the corn fairy, but I gotta know how these other counties are doing it, because if you think we've been doing it wrong, that's a fair assessment. We may have been. I'd just like I just would like to see some of these other counties our size and what they do. And if they've got a way to do things differently and they're doing it and there's some law or some-
They have job descriptions that have the pays and I can already tell you it's different for all the departments. So we'll get the, we'll get the data, we'll work with the H R director and we'll get it.
But didn't we pass a policy that, that, after the budget, from now on, nobody could come?
Can't raise.
You can't raise, increase your budget, but if you have it in your budget, then we can yes. And she's not deleting her position, so she will have savings in her department.
And if it turns out I'm wrong, I'll be the first one up here championing both the other departments for y'all to do the same for them, so long as they have the salary savings. That I'll tell you.
Right. And that, you know what, and you know what, and that gives them a little heads up, that Jenny Saturn-
However, the county's obligation to treat like employees like is not dependent on salary savings. It is an obligation that the county has outside of salary savings.
And I, and that's why we've gotta do some research because I-
Job descriptions need to be included. Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can we just like table this one and, I don't want to say, I don't even want to-
We don't have anything to do, we don't have a vote or a motion. We don't have to do anything on it. Yes.
So it's, it's still there.
We would just need to add those five positions back because they were removed from the proposed.
They weren't, because we had to vote on it. Yes.
They weren't. I did, I looked last night, they were not, they were not removed.
No, there's no action necessary. Yes. Um, any other departments here that want to come up?
May I be excused?
Yes, you don't have to ask to be excused. Yes. Um, okay, then we will bring up item number one on your amendments for inclusion as well, the legal fees for the county attorney's office, 181,000.
I would like to speak to that. Court, that is not much, if anything, to do with the county attorney's office. And I sent a change from our office to the wording. That is an account number, that is a four-digit number, which some money is used for the county attorney's office for outside legal fees. However, the majority of that account.
No, it, it's all, it's all attorney fees. In 5301, it's all attorney fees.
What, what do, what do we have to do on this item? On these four?
This is, this, if we vote to do these, it increases the budget. These are not already included in the proposed budget. This is up for discussion.
Back page of this.
5301, which is attorney fees only.
It's in the documents we have, yeah.
So what is the proposal? The request is for more?
For 181,650 dollars.
That includes attorneys that do things.
That includes attorneys for what? Come up to the microphone, please.
So I believe, and Lisa, can you correct me if I'm wrong, this is the 1285?
5301 attorney fees.
5301 attorney's fee account, and that includes multiple, that includes other attorney's fees as well. I have not seen the most recent breakdown of this, but I know it includes other attorneys that our office does not manage or are not matters related to the office. Although I believe perhaps, uh, maybe a majority of them do go to the office or are part of the office. Now regarding these fees though, many of the obligations under the fees are related to jobs or, or, or cases that the county attorney's office cannot take due to conflicts of interest. Um, what happens is whenever we represent, for example, the jail, um, there are multiple parties and we cannot represent all of the parties. We do always take those cases ourselves. The ones that we can take when there's like multiple parties, we take one of the parties, but there's additional parties and those have to be, um, assigned to other attorneys. So that makes up a lot of the cases. And then there are other matters on, on, related to economic development. I believe there was some matters related to the, um, the TERS and the abatements and other issues that required expertise that our office didn't have. So-
This is such a specific number. I'm just wondering why they increase like this. This is already a debt we need to pay or is this, I mean, you're asking for increase in that account?
Well, the history has been showing that the amount of budget we have there has been well exceeded many years in a row and we wanted to, uh, not have a deficit every year. So we thought additional funds were, were necessary, but that's up to the court because it's depending on how many attorneys we hire throughout the year.
So who proposed this though?
Why the amount?
This was just, uh, I think Teresa worked some of the numbers up and some others, uh, put together because of our, our deficit this year that they say, but they need additional 140. I think it came from, I think Teresa originally came up with the number.
So I mean, did, did y'all ask for it? I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this and-
We did not and we don't control who all uses funds out of that account or for what purposes. Um, and so I simply wanted to clarify that the county attorney is not coming asking for this additional money. And I don't control everything in that account. So if it needs to have more money, that's great. I take issue with it saying that the county attorney came asking for this.
And that's what I wanted you to clear up. So, I mean, if you're not asking for it, then-
I guess we could always go to, um, other funds if this amount is needed, if we don't approve this today. Yes. So I don't see any motions for this, any, any. Okay, moving on to item number two, the transportation of inmates from an Oasis County jail. Is the sheriff requesting this one or is this one just, um?
Last year, because of all their vacancies, they had to hire the, a, a, a firm that charges a significant amount of funds. And this last year, they were 400,000 dollars in excess of what they needed. Some of it was paid by ARPA funds. Uh, working with, uh, Chief Cook and the sheriff, they're, they're starting to getting some more staff in and they're, they, they've agreed that, uh, any, any local transportation will be done by their office and any close that are not within a certain distance will be done by their office. So it almost sounds like we do not need this additional funding, but it could be a case where if we have more vacancies, they could, could come up again.
Okay, well, let's, if we don't need it, let's go.
We can come back and ask for it if we need it. We can use something, yes. Any of these or no. Yeah.
Guys, I mean, they're on work status anyway.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hernandez, you're okay. We'll get, we'll just get it from you later, right?
Sure. Um, any of these, anybody want to bring any one of these up then?
Yeah, number four. Just, uh, Lisa, number four wasn't supposed to be a, um, a, an added, that it was supposed to be used-
You had told me that you wanted, that you weren't gonna reduce Dr. Gonzalez's. That's correct.
The travel, from the travel, to reduce it to another, this shouldn't, this is not a, a, um-
It's not an increase?
Increase. It's part of the budget that was there already.
Yes, it's just like the others that came before that had the reductions and they were going to have a personnel increase. And it would be offset by the other, by the other reductions within that department. Um, my question is, I don't know where the 900 came from, because you had expressed to me that it was gonna be 1,000. And then the, with the benefits, it became 1,078 dollars. And I'm doing this by memory. So that could be off, but it was not quite 1,100. So are, are we changing the amount now?
Well, no, I mean, I never changed it. I mean, uh, it was always a thousand.
This has already been included? There's no reason for this?
No, it's not included. It's, there were other reductions.
Yeah, I thought you were taking the 2,000 that you got for the travel and you were splitting it between the two. So you were taking 1,000 from Dr. Gonzalez and giving 1,000 to-
From the travel.
Yeah, because there was 2,000 in the travel, but he only got 1,000.
No, there was, there's, there was money in travel and then there was money in car allowance. He's not, he's leaving Dr. Gonzalez's car allowance the same.
And he's taking it from that budget, from the Calderon building, the two people that went over there. I didn't know they have a budget that's totally that.
What's the budget that comes with the hospital district? It's already in there.
They have a travel budget though?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did. The original travel budget was 6,000. We reduced it some, so there's that left. Yeah.
So wait, who's money, who, where's this 900 coming from?
This is the outreach, uh, medical clinic that we have with, with, with reimbursement from the hospital district.
No, but I mean, like where in the budget? Meaning it's, I don't want to take another 900 from the hospital district, but if it's 900 we're already getting.
I believe the, the agreement was reduce travel by that 1,000 and just move that travel up as a car allowance.
Who's travel? Dr. Gonzalez's travel? Who?
I think it was for the other, other-
It's for Aaron Diaz to give him a car allowance because they had 2,500 at the beginning. 2,500 was being used by Dr. Gonzalez because he was doing, going to the conferences while he was still at the hospital, at the, uh, hospital district. When we transferred everything to the Calderon building, it stayed the way, it stayed the same way. So instead of reducing his salary, reducing the car allowance, there was 4,000 in the, uh, in the travel. And we told Lisa, go ahead and get rid of 2,000 and lift 2,000 on travel and use one of those 1,000 as his car allowance.
Is that what you did?
We, just like with all the other departments, they had cuts because the hospital district is paying less money for 3094, which is now renamed to, um, the outreach medical clinic. But they're gonna pay less money and so, and they're going to give 40,000 for the mobile clinic. They're going, and then they reduced the amount that they were gonna give 3094, so therefore we had to reduce the budgets there. But this would, it, it is within the perimeters of the amount that will be able to be reimbursed.
The commissioner said that we, we still have a car allowance of 2,500, but that 2,500 is split between 1,500 and 1,000 and we reduce the travel but to 1,000 dollars. So it's, it's in the budget, yes.
And why does?
It's just, it's a personnel matter, so it has to go on separately.
Why does the person need a car allowance?
Because they travel.
Like where?
Sometimes they go visit, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm asking, I don't, this is-
They go to banquet, they go to Blunder, they go to-
And this is 900 dollars a year?
And, uh, yes.
It'll be 1,000, which is, 1,000 plus benefits goes to 1,078 dollars. And again, I'm doing it based on memory. I'm pretty sure, a year.
Commissioner, but I'm saying that this is just a, a shifting of funds. It's not new money.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so-
But we shouldn't have to vote on this. This should just go in their budget.
This is like a personnel thing.
It's a personnel matter and y'all control all personnel matters.
It's part of the budget already. It's not an increase or anything, so we're not voting to increase anybody's, yes. Okay.
Well, this is, really would be where Dr. Gonzalez should come forward and saying, I'm going to, as an apartment head, I'm gonna move 1,000 dollars from this line item to this line item.
It's kinda like what the other departments have done, that we have accepted because it is not an increase or anything. So, yes.
What are we giving?
That's correct. Okay, this one is, do we have a motion then? Do we have to do a motion?
It's, it's not a-
No, no action needed. Yeah.
Kara, your items, you have, I passed you up all ago, sorry.
They'll never miss you.
Probably not gonna work.
This is, um, I think I've spoken to all of you about it. It's just a request for my staff and thank you for working with Dale on this. And as you can see, um, it is not, it's actually a decrease. You don't need to give me that. You're gonna, you're gonna stand anyway. Um, so as you see, I've actually said, you know, our auditor seal of approval with his, um, email on the back saying that it is not.
To the general fund, this is not an increase. This is actually in fact a cut now. The change is made.
Oh, that's nice of you.
Thank you. And I'm just restructuring my office and it's quick and I would appreciate y'all's approval and support on this. Thank you. Um, thank you.
Yes.
This is a discussion-
There's a motion in a second, so go ahead.
Is there, is there gonna be a transfer from the special revenue to cover the expense?
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna transfer and they'll know, so it's okay.
Wait, just-
So we have a savings of 17,000?
But it's coming from special revenue, right? It's coming from special.
Well, that is my special revenue from Fund 13, which by law we're allowed to do.
And so we're gonna do a transfer from Fund 13 to the general fund?
Yeah, they're gonna- Take care of it.
It's gonna be consistent, like it's gonna be, this is forever and ever, amen.
Absolutely.
And you're not gonna complain next year when we transfer from your fund for this, everything, everybody's good with this, right? Y'all are all clear.
Why would I complain? It's my idea.
Oh, I know when we touch, I know. It's like-
I mean, it's like a forever, she's saying this is forever and ever, amen.
Absolutely. This is my staff, yeah. Yes, we're good. Thank you.
And how much goes into that fund every year? I'm sorry, I actually forgot.
I don't know, about less than like 300,000.
A year?
Mm-hmm. But it paid, yeah. Uh-huh.
Okay.
Well, because that, all the collections have been down, not collections, but the filings have been down because of the housing boom ended.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, so it really affected all the recordings.
I have a couple of items I want to-
Oh, can you vote, please?
We have a motion by Commissioner Hernandez, who was the second, all second, whatever, all second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose or abstain?
Abstain.
We're good.
Not as well.
And Commissioner Gonzalez, you had a more?
Yeah, I have one, it's on the law library. Uh, it wasn't listed anywhere. And I thought we had talked about that, where we, I know we had two people assigned to the law library.
Yes.
So I don't think we need two people to the law library.
We've been working with Ida and right now, uh, we, we're, she's considering moving one of her staff out of the law library over into, back to the library. Uh, of course, I will take action to the court to, to do this as well as, uh, reducing her, uh, Westlaw or whatever it is for that. So, uh, given the amount of money she gets bringing in every year, about 130, 140 with one employee with a small amount of additional supplies, uh, the, the law library can function with one.
Is that, did she turn that in as part of her cuts or this is still up for discussion?
I don't know if she's submitted in yet, but-
Well, this is the budget time. It's like, when are we gonna do it?
That would be an increase to the general fund to transfer the position.
It would.
You voted yes on an increase.
I ran back to-
Lisa, what did you say?
If, if you moved a position from the law library to the general fund, it would be an increase to the general fund.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's where we got it from to begin with. So we should put it back where we got it.
Wait, but that's an increase to general fund. Wait, what did you ask?
No, he's wanting to take one position away from the law library.
Oh.
The law library gets-
We're doing that, then move it back to library, which is the-
So it's gonna be a higher cost for the general fund and the special revenue that's collected for the law library.
Saying eliminate the position. Eliminate the position. How's that an increase to the general fund?
What Ida said was move it over. No, not a reduction in force.
What he was talking about is eliminating one out of there, not moving anywhere, getting rid of one person in there.
What Dale said was transfer to the general fund.
That's what Joe said. Doesn't matter what Dale said, matters what Joe says. No offense, Dale. He doesn't get a vote.
Vote now. Uh, someone could probably call Ida real quick and get over her, but, uh-
Is that your suggestion or your suggestion?
What was, I didn't-
That was a suggestion, but it became a motion that we eliminate the one person from the law library.
Up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
One person from the law library, uh, leaving one person there, uh, to, to maintain or manage the library. But also that one person be eliminated. Since I think originally that, uh, was placed there from the general funds to begin with. So we just need to eliminate that one person.
Second. What's?
I know she's got a lot of staff already, but-
Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign? Oh, did we have to do, I guess we had to do-
Wait, you're saying, but that's general fund.
No, if we eliminate the position, the position don't come to the general fund, the position goes away.
Right.
Yes, so there are no, no, no increase to the general fund.
And no decrease.
That is a reduction in force. That's a reduction of force. The employee would-
The law library is being decreased.
I can't hear Dale now.
The law library is being decreased, which is Fund 15, and so it's being, where it'll operate as a, as a, good fund because right now it's, it's a deficit.
Oh.
We eliminated one position.
So that does help the general fund because we're not having to fund it.
Correct.
We're not having a deficit in there.
See, it does help the general fund.
Yes.
Hold on. And then what amount?
Right now, we're transferring 35,000 dollars to the, to the general fund. If we eliminate one position, we can probably reduce that transfer to zero. So probably could save 35,000.
Okay, so that's 35,000 dollars, that's got it. Okay, go ahead.
One more?
Yes.
Do we have any idea how, how we're doing now?
How we doing what?
How we doing as of now, right now?
Right now, we're, it's negative 64,000.
What? Oh.
I have one, one more, it's just a recommendation, um, um, on risk management.
Risk management, okay.
Uh, I don't know how many staff they have now.
Two.
Uh, and Judge, I don't know, is this something that probably affects you, that if we put risk management under E O C? This is just my, my thought to-
Combining the two. That's not a bad idea.
Great idea.
Because I don't, I don't know, we're using space there, then we're using other, uh, department head, what am I, not need department head? But you know, I think that if working under D would be good to make sure we stay within the boundaries of the workless comp and also, uh, the investigations that when you do, in case there's an accident. And all we do is remind people that-
Microphone.
That do the drug, that have to take the drug test. So I just think that if we do, maybe we could merge that.
Combine the two, to, um, emergency management under D and, and really the risk management, uh, the people, it would probably help because we've depleted all the people in there so she could use some help.
So we would, we would then move to eliminate the, or, we'd have to eliminate the department, reassign the employees, is that what you're saying, under emergency management? In a, in different, different roles, right? Eliminating the department and department head, but reassigning them to the emergency management department, right?
They could have, they could have, you know, a dual role.
Working both.
We'll let y'all work out.
Plus whatever is needed for the E O C.
Right, so, but you're, but you're saying eliminate the department?
Right.
Okay. So I would second that.
Is that all? One motion to eliminate the department and reassign under emergency management?
And the department in question is Department 1125.
Yes. Mm-hmm. So we have a motion and a second to combine those two. Um, all those in favor?
And wait, Judge, make sure it's to eliminate the department.
I already said that.
No, the department head and reassign those two.
Under emergency management.
Okay, and y'all can figure out the titles and roles. Okay.
Yes. Yeah. Um, all, I, all those- Um, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign. And that's a small savings because of combining, you know, you, but not much, but salary still, so. Go ahead, anything else? You're on a roll now.
Dale, did we reach your sixty-four thousand?
We'll do it.
Did we reach the negative we had a while ago?
We're still working on that, uh, Judge, while we're consuming some items for the, um, uh, uh, a budget, when we were looking at some of the departments, in Department one eighty, we missed a, a, an entry for, uh, professional services that, uh, Scott Cross will need for his department.
Oh, thank you for remembering that, yes.
So we're asking to amend the budget by adding additional thirty thousand.
Yes, and I'm glad you brought that up, I was supposed to bring that up, and I forgot, yes, um, do we have to have a motion for that, or we-
If, as long as we know that this is gonna be added to the amendment, when we do the final amendment, that'd be the case.
This is his professional services, it helps him do those doom protection permits, it's the lady he has had doing that, she's doing a good job, and we wanna keep doing that, but he made very significant cuts to his budget.
This will definitely-
Yeah, that was supposed to be left in, and some of it didn't get left in.
Yes, yes, it was just an accident to be left out, thank you, thank you for bringing that up, yeah.
Thank y'all.
He sounded like he was in there.
He was on, and was gone.
So- Question?
Go ahead.
So my, my rough count here, based on what we've done from the two point nine that we need to get to, is that we're somewhere in about the one point four seven five, that we're still needing to make some cuts, okay, but, um, my, I kinda wanted to, to go towards the vacancies, right, so, we have two hundred and one vacancies in, in Oasis County, and I don't know if, if that's down now because of what you've done, Dale, or not, but where do, that's a place I'd like to start, looking at some of those, because again, we're all trying to not take people, right, we're, but vacancies are, I get it, that affects departments, and I understand that, but at the same time, it doesn't, hopefully, you know, get us where we're gonna do, 'cause we still need to cut another one point four seven five million, according to what I've found so far.
Give me a few minutes, I can, I can give you a true count.
And, and Ida's online, and she'd like to address the court.
Uh, yes, Judge and Commissioners, um, I'm sorry, I walked away from my desk, and as soon as I get off, I he, I heard something about the Law Library, so if y'all could please, uh, give me some heads up, and let me know what we're, what I missed. I know I just heard about removing one of my positions, which I, I know we've done our due diligence, and, uh, I took care of my budget, and right now, I know when I spoke to Dale, you know, uh, the last time, I think Commissioner Jag had mentioned about moving one of my librarians to, the librarians from the Law Library to Bishop, well, we can't do that, because, uh, what Dale told me was that, that, those positions, uh, we get from, the money that we collect from revenue, and we can't commingle any of that money to my department, and I don't have any current openings in my library to add an additional library, or remove one of my librarians from here, so I know we can't do that, and so, I know I, I cut as much money from the Law Library as we can, and so I really do, do not want to cut any of my librarians from the Law Library, and, um-
All right, that's been done.
I've done as much cut as I can, and I know we are receiving funding from the revenues that we collect, so if there's another option, except I don't wanna delete my position from the Law Library.
I, I'm sorry, I appreciate that, but there was a motion made, I guess when you got up and walked away, and there is a thirty-five thousand dollar transfer that the county has to pay to, sixty-five or thirty-five?
You said sixty-five, Dale?
How much to that?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
That's two years.
Oh, you're sixty-five in the whole.
The last two years for that, and, um, there was a motion made to delete that position, the second position, to just have one person in the Law Library while you were away.
Okay, well, I'm sorry I missed it and walked away the wrong time.
I'm very sorry too, sorry.
Maybe y'all can reconsider, reconsider the, the motion, and, and give us an opportunity, I know we have been receiving as much money as we can, and due to other circumstances that I, you know, is beyond my control, but my staff has done a lot the past few years, they've gotten grants, they are receiving, a lot of people that have been coming to the library, and, um,
I mean, I don't know where this came from, I mean, uh, there's other departments that are receiving way more than my department, I mean, I know we're only receiving thirty-five thousand, as opposed to hundreds of thousands in other departments, so,
and I, I don't think any other department's got another cut, except, you know, earlier, I, I did see one, but, you know, I know there's other departments that are, are receiving way more than my department.
I, I appreciate that, Ida, and every single department, and since we did the no new revenue, we didn't do the tax increase, we're having to make additional cuts as well to try to come up with that, those monies, and we did leave one person in there, and, and totally sympathize with you and understand your feelings on that, but, sorry you missed it when it came up and weren't able to talk, yes.
Commissioner Chesley, currently there's a hundred and ninety-five vacancies.
Hundred and ninety-five vacancies, so, I appreciate that, so, this is where I, I definitely am needing help, right, I'm trying, and unless anybody's, if anybody's got some other ideas, jump in, but, 'cause I'm kinda waiting to see how all this, you know, played out, because obviously, we've still got some, some work to do, so how do, does anybody have some other suggestions? I mean, I, I have one more, but-
Oh, I have one more transfer before you start talking about the, I mean, and I'm not sure if these vacancies are considered, or, is the sheriff's officer, did you count those in, on the law enforcement ones?
That's, that's the most of them.
That's the most of them, yes, and I know, I spoke to the sheriff, and the IT department is, and their budget cuts, cut his one person over there that works in the jail, and he wants to negotiate that with, and transfer it over, just like we did, the other person in there have a computer person and a, um-
He's got plenty of vacancies, I mean, he could do that.
Yeah, intercom person, he wants to keep that person that there has, they've been working well for him.
When I talk to Sheriff, I believe there's eighty-seven vacancies in the jail right now.
Yeah, so make sure that person in IT does it, and he gets transferred over to the sheriff still, though, will you work on that?
We'll have to work with the court to make sure how it gets transferred from the sheriff's office, to, back from sheriff's office, to, from the IT to sheriff's office, so, there's still, it's still a transfer, so.
But that, that still represents a cut, because it, it goes into a vacant position that we haven't cut yet, so it's still a net cut.
Yes, it still does.
So Darrell still gets-
Reducing vacancies, yes.
But the sheriff wanted to make sure that that position didn't get deleted before it got to, he said he would pick it up, because it's important to his department.
Well then, I mean, do we need to just do that as a motion, and just say, because it's still a net cut, right, I mean, it's still a net cut.
Yes.
Is the sheriff on here?
We're, we're theoretically deleting a position, position from the IT division, and moving into a vacant position there, so it's technically a deletion, yes. Even though it's taking a vacant position, yes.
Okay, um, I'll make the motion then, to do that, if we need a motion, so, to transfer that position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes, sorry, now you can go to your vacancies.
Okay, um, so I, if, if anybody on the-
I'm sorry, I, I missed that, I apologize, I do, I-
It's really just for budget, we're gonna tran, the deleted position from IT is gonna transfer to the sheriff's department.
It's a no-cost transfer, it's a no-cost transfer, it is going from one another, but we are deleting position in IT.
He want, the sheriff wants to keep him, and I, he's not here, but I'm assuming that's all still, yes, okay.
How you wanna go? Um, okay, so on vacancies, oh, go ahead. I'll wait, if someone's got something besides vacancies, that's what I'm, I'm pausing to see if anybody's got anything besides vacancies.
Okay, Dale, you've got one more, that's it, no, I'm joking.
Rebecca, you wanna come up, second, yeah, I thought you were gone already, but, you should've gone.
I do.
Got a couple of questions for Rebecca. Those, uh, looking at from last time that we, we talked, and, uh, I know they have an office in Robstown.
To the microphone a little bit.
I know they have an office in Robstown too, and, and, how many people you have in Robstown, Rebecca?
Um, eight.
Eight. Um, and that's a county building, I guess you said?
It's our building. Yes, it's a county-
I don't know, um, 'cause, you know, when I was looking at yours, and looking at, um, uh, the Veterans Administration, is there, is there any way that maybe, I don't know about, I didn't, I don't know about merging, but I, maybe some of your staff go on to work with veterans, and say, do some of the same things, or, uh-
Well, I, I think that's a misconception that we have, so JJ's office and my office, we do not do the same thing, JJ does veterans' claims, and-
But the same, but the same thing for, the veterans do for civilians, right?
I, I assume, I, I don't know, he does veterans, he processes veterans' claims, and then we do case management for, um, financial assistance. The only thing we have in common is the veterans' grant, and that we're housed together, so we interact with some of the same clients, but our staff does not do the same thing.
Is there, I'm, I'm, how much, what, how much of your staff right now?
I'm sorry?
How many staff do you have?
Twenty, but in the budget cuts, I froze two caseworker positions.
Froze or eliminated?
Froze.
Okay.
But you, your percentage of your cuts that you made to your department was? Well, Dale or Lisa will have to, about fifteen percent to, I believe it was fifteen percent of, uh, direct client services, and then, I don't know what the exact percentages were. It was, it was, it was the highest, it was the amount we asked you to cut for non-statutory, yes. Yes, mhm. I, I just wanted to say that upfront.
I mean, those positions that we acquired were during COVID or during the pandemic, like-
How, how many did we acquire?
Positions were acquired, or do we add?
We've been, we've been at the same staffing, um, since two thousand and five, I think, I mean-
The same staffing?
Yes, I went back and looked that up the other day, it's been a long time, we haven't added any, any positions in years and years.
I thought we added someone, we're doing the COVID, during the pandemic and-
You may be talking about the temporary workers that were for ERAP, possibly?
Maybe so.
Yeah, that was just for a, a few months. We haven't added anybody.
So I'm still, I mean, I, I'm still thinking about the fact, how do we, we're spending a lot of, I decided to spend two million dollars in services, you know, from your department, maybe we're not, I ju, I just think maybe we, we're just giving too much, you know, or how, how do we, how do we do that, how do we fix it when, you know, we don't need to give that much services?
Well, I, I mean, I cut fifteen percent, so I-
What was the cut, what were the cuts in, that, that you made direct help?
Direct client services.
Meaning, what is?
Rent, water, gas, lights, food, utilities, transportation, the services we provide to the indigent population, the direct services, the actual financial help we provide to them.
So nothing to admin or anything of that nature?
We-
Froze the, you didn't cut, you just froze the position?
Well, no, we cut, um, I don't have it right in front of me, we did our travel, we did all of the department stuff as well. It should be in our packets right here, what's your? Forty-one-ten, forty-one-twenty, forty-one-thirty.
Forty-one-ten, cuts seventy-six, seventy-two thousand.
Seven, four, seven hundred, just the forty-two thousand.
Ninety thousand and forty-one-twenty direct social that you cut, and other services. The child protective is not really, yeah.
So we hit, we get, we, we spend, this year's, no, let's see, twenty, uh, actual, we spent four hundred and five, four hundred and fif, I'm trying to figure out what we spent last year, it says, which, your budget is five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in direct help, is that right, proposed?
The new, the new one?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think there's a typo, this is, this is budget twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, I don't, maybe that's what I'm getting, estimate, I don't know, anyway, estimated actual-
It's typo.
Yeah, so, so estimated actual shows for twenty twenty-three, that direct help is only gonna be four fifty-one, when your budget was six oh four?
We always have, um, a considerable amount left over, because we, we get grants throughout the year, so we use the grants rather than the general funding.
So I guess my question would be then, why wouldn't the cut have just gone to what the actual was this year, that would've been another fifty, sixty thousand?
I think that's about what we did.
Well, no, I mean, it-
The actual was two ninety-six, and the budget was two ninety-seven, so-
Okay, so, this, this typo thing-
Give that typo, yeah.
But is that a, but what's that supposed to be, like, is that last year, last year's budget, or?
Yes, that's last year's budget, just like on the page before.
It says two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. What's it supposed to say, is what I'm asking?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so the twenty-two, twenty-three budget was six, six oh four, four twenty-eight, you're cutting it to five thirteen, right? But your actual for twenty-two, twenty-three estimated is four fifty-one, so I'm saying, why wouldn't that be another cut back down to say four fifty-one? Because I, I have a tendency to agree with Joe, I'm not sure how much we're supposed to be doing like this, it's not statutory, it's nice that we do it, I, I think we need to take care of people, but, again, so, that could be an area that you could cut without being people, and cut back down another sixty, say, thousand dollars to the actual budget for this year. I know you don't want to, but I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, look, I'm-
I'm gonna make whatever you give me work.
Right.
And we try to get our grants, we try to have a higher level of assistance, um, you know, and that's what we'll continue to do.
Well, I would-
What do you think makes the, the, the expense that high, I mean, you just, why, why is it too, why is it so high of the expense? I mean, is something that we providing too much services for too long, or long-term?
The expense of the direct client services?
Well, it's, it's two million dollars, right?
The, you're, so you're talking about everything, the administrative and the direct client-
Including the two million dollar, the administrative?
She cut some out of the administrative, I think it was about, uh, I can't do my percentages real quick here.
What the services, what do you, what the expense for services?
The expense for services was the four hundred that we just cut to.
Services, you cut all the services?
You cut from the four hundred to two ninety? Fifteen percent of the direct client services.
Oh, fifty percent of the services.
The direct client services are the rent, the, the actual bills, and the food vouchers, and the burial expenses, and, and those things that we provide directly to the clients.
Burials, I can understand, 'cause you know, you do the one-time thing, but, uh, if I go and get rent, how long do you give me, how long do you give me rent for?
So if you come in for assistance, it's generally one-time assistance.
So you only help me one time?
There are a few cases that we will help longer term, but not a high percentage of our, our caseloads that we carry, it's usually one-time assistance, it's to prevent eviction, or prevent disconnection. We want, we want people to stay housed.
Sure, sure.
You know?
So, tell me a little bit more about the, um, what the caseworkers do, I know it's not all about direct help, right? I know that's part of the budget, but then it's also, it's not just about giving them money, it's about, uh, working on their dilemmas and helping them get through it, I don't know how else to say that better, but-
So we provide holistic, comprehensive case management.
Say again?
Holistic, we take a holistic approach to case management, so if you're coming to us for assistance, you know, there's a reason for that, you've lost your job, you've had a injury, you're applying for bene, benefits, or something like that. If you don't know how to get to those resources, we're gonna help you try to get that, because we don't want to be, the county does not wanna be paying your bills for you, we want you to be self, self-sufficient, and, and know your resources and how to do things. We wanna help you temporarily, to keep you housed, to keep your services on, um, so we, we network in the community a lot, we just saw Commissioner Modest the other day in Robstown, we were at a, at the event out there, um, so that we know where to send people. Our, the social workers that we have, we're generalist social workers, so we work with all populations of people, we're not focused on hospice, we're not focused on one thing or the other, we take care of everybody. We have clients who have mental health issues, and we want them to have services, and we have, um, you know, working, the working poor, we want them to have good jobs, and reform to, to services for, for work. Um, so we deal with a wide variety of people, so, uh, the caseworkers will see a client, and they'll do an assessment, and they'll provide the case management as, you know, we may only pay- you know, we may only pay the bill one time, but we may see the client, um, a couple of months or, you know, longer than that to, to help them out with whatever they need. And you're right, it's not always financial. It could be referring them to other programs or, or providing a service like that.
Well, it seemed that the, not the easiest thing to do because I'm, I'm still, I struggle with this during this budget because it's not a statutory department. But I'm not a hard plus person either, so it's a balance between physical responsibility and humane responsibility. But I would certainly want to make the motion to reduce the, um, direct help, um, from the budgeted request down to the actual request from last year, which would be about, uh, forty-nine, thirteen, sixty-two thousand dollars. And then I would want to also make the frozen positions, eliminated positions at the very least. But I don't know how everybody else feels, so I'll throw that out there.
How many, how many vacant positions you have?
She's frozen two, and I'm just saying, instead of frozen, make them permanent.
I have two, yeah, two vacant caseworker positions that I've been trying to fill for. We had, we had two people leave in, in January, and so we promoted, and so these two that are vacant right now are because we had some promotions within the department and then we were stopped from hiring, so, um. I mean, that, that's hard on us, losing caseworkers.
We used to have a lot more vacancies, so it seems like two is not too bad considering, I remember at one point it seemed like there was quite a bit, but I'm assuming there's still turnover.
Yeah, there, there's usually turnover, but, um.
We, our pay is not competitive, even like what the state, and the state doesn't pay that well.
Right.
Yeah.
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 I mean, we, we see a lot of clients and, um, I, I will say this, like other departments, because the pay is low, you become a training ground. And they come and they train and, and then they move on because now they've had, have some experience and, and we can't offer a pay, you know, other places can, so.
But for the, for the future, maybe not now, but for the future, say in a year or beyond, that, I mean, are there consolidations that could be made? Maybe it means higher workload, but with that same kind of budget or similar budget size you have for your department, use that to try to increase salaries? Make it more attractive to retain, or do you not see that happening because this is the nature of the work and this is usually the starting ground for a lot of graduates?
No, I think we can make that work. Um, losing two right now will make that harder for the future, but I understand what you're saying. We've, we've, we've been short-staffed before and, and we'll get through this, you know, it'll, it happens.
But you, you know, excuse me, on any, on any given day, how many people go through your doors asking for help?
Oh, um. Let me think about it for a minute. I could get you those numbers. I provide you those numbers every, every quarter. Um, I give you, it's called a, the traffic report in there. It tells you exactly how many people come through our doors and sign in and all of that, so.
Or how many peo-
The, the caseworkers are usually carrying, um, I want to say forty to sixty cases, depending on the time of the year. So, um, summer's really busy for us and, and back to school time.
That's what I was gonna ask you. Case workers are required to, to see so many people per day or something like that?
Well, they, we have so many appointments per day and so we're, we're booked up for, uh, I want to say mid-October, late October already.
So you sent us, it looks like you sent us the last one in July?
Uh-huh. I send you, I send them to you every quarter.
Yeah, and so, I mean, as a breakdown of the dollar amounts in cases worked. Shows thirty cases worked, but the amount of dollar amounts.
Is that for burials?
That, oh, I'm sorry, that's just burial. You're right, thanks for catching that. You're not even looking at it. Two hundred and eight people monthly, one hundred and nine cases monthly.
That's probably just in the general program.
Direct services.
Right.
And you have your grant services, there's only a few, but those are the ones with the food and the utility and the rent assistance. TXU funding, what's EFSP?
Emergency Food and Shelter Program.
That's a big one.
It's a federal program.
That's a big one. Almost two hundred people.
And so with the burials, we get a lot of referrals for burials, and so that's why you'll see that we work the cases, but we may resolve them without the county having to pay any money. We may find the next of kin who's willing to pay for the services or, um, you, we discover there's an insurance policy or something to that effect. So we work a lot more burial cases than the county actually pays for, um, just doing our due diligence.
How much do you, excuse me, I'm sorry. How much do y'all give per burial?
Per burial. It's about, I want to say eighteen hundred, um, per burial. So that includes a professional service at the funeral home, the opening and closing of the grave site and the, the cemetery site.
It's improved from, since several years ago that I was here.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
And I believe it's eight, eight fifty, eight hundred for cremation.
My, my last question I have is, Rebecca, I, I just, I'm thinking maybe, I'm just thinking, that maybe, uh, maybe you're high administration, it's too high. I mean, maybe you're too heavy administration. I don't know. Have you really looked at that to see, maybe, uh, you, you caseworkers are doing forty to sixty cases? Is anybody, is your administration doing the same thing, I guess, or they, they also have cases, is that many cases?
No, they don't have cases. So we do our own, uh, we do financial accounting within our office. So for each of our grants, we're doing reporting and, and all of that. So that's what we have, um, accounting assistants. We have clerical staff that, uh, work with the public, taking applications.
How many grads do you have right now?
How many what?
How many grads?
Uh, yeah, about four to five veterans.
How much do you distribute out? I mean, it, on this side, it looks like you have a lot of administration and if you look at just two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars going out and you've got one point four in personnel. It, it's, it's kind of lopsided, so I think if you include the grants and then amount of money that does go through your office or the help that is given, that changes that perspective maybe.
But where are the grants, where are they in here though?
That's grants. That's not included in our general.
They're thirteen, they're, they're in, uh, thirteen fifty.
Her grants.
Her grants, yes.
They're in thirteen, but, so how does?
I'm trying to get to it, hold on.
Thirteen fifteen?
Fifty, five zero.
Just got that one on our mind.
She wants it too?
No. I don't see that. Thirteen fifty.
Thirteen eleven.
What is it? What is it? Two forty-six, okay, I can't find it.
Oh, I have my own book.
So not a lot of grants. Okay, so that's grant, or that's?
And thirteen fifty-one.
And that's real, that's just money that goes in and out, right?
Yes.
Gotcha. Yeah, we can't, there. I, just for discussion, I'd, I'd go ahead and make a motion and to, to eliminate the, um, two positions that she's frozen permanently and to reduce the, um, other, the, uh, direct social services by another sixty-two thousand dollars to meet the actual budget for this year. So that'd be a cut that I would recommend at this point.
One second.
Was just in the actual dollars passed out? I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, it was, it was, uh, roughly sixty-two thousand or whatever, five thirteen, seven sixty-three minus four fifty-one, five oh eight is, uh, on, in forty-one, twenty. And then to freeze the, I mean, sorry, to eliminate the two positions that she froze in, uh, forty-one, ten.
Okay.
The one she, yeah.
Specifically, yeah. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thanks. Um, you want to address something, Dee, real quick? I think hers is about the transfer with that department being over there.
Yes, uh, my question is, I know you guys are dissolving the risk management and moving them over, but there are programs and I'm sure there are fees and monies that he needs to run the AD program, the building evaluations. I just want to make sure that when you dissolve his office, some of that comes with him, because I don't have the funding for it, so.
His funds for his programs will come with it.
All right, I just, I just want to make sure.
The ADs still have to be monitored, all of that stuff.
Can't use his wallet.
Well, I, you know, I heard savings and everything, but I just wanted to make sure that we had that covered, because, I mean, I, I, we can streamline the office and there's a lot of things that we can combine and, and do, but I just want to make sure that that.
We want the services that were over there to continue to test.
That we do have to, that risk management does have to do that they have that.
That was not cutting any of that.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Commissioner, on those two positions you were talking about elimination, that's ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred.
But she'd already frozen them.
They were frozen, but it's still on the budget. You have to take them out and delete it.
Wait, so?
So you're, so you're actually now saving ninety thousand dollars.
Because you're deleting, frozen doesn't, yeah.
Frozen's still in the budget.
Uh, okay.
Deleting.
No, I need to do my math then. Okay, go ahead. I'm keeping my, uh, okay, minus, how much?
Ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred plus a sixty-five.
Okay. Okay, so now I'll ask again.
What's the total?
No, no, I got, I've got, I'm, we're down about a million three one three six, but I'm asking again, before we go to vacancies, does anybody have any other ones?
Any other departments, any other questions, concerns?
So I guess, okay, so then, um, but, but you have raised a point that I need to bring up. So there were other departments that froze positions instead of cut them. But if they froze them and they thought that that was a cut and it wasn't a cut, what good, I don't mean in a bad way, but what good is the freeze?
Freezing basically gives you salary savings for the year. It's like, it's like not having a position, you make it for a entire year.
But it stays in the budget as one of those, as one of those unfilled.
It stays in, it doesn't go away, but it doesn't get funded either, because you're not paying for it.
No, it does, because it's one of the unfilled positions.
It's budgeted, but you're not paying it out. I mean, sorry, there's no position there.
It's, it's in the one hundred ninety-eight.
Yes.
Okay, so now these two, now it takes down to one ninety-six, okay, 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 that makes sense, so it saves us for the year, but it doesn't save us.
Dale, it's only for that one year, right?
I got it.
Uh, the freeze.
Right now, we're, we're, we're freezing it for, freezing it for one year, but if it's court, if we, you know.
Depends on what next year is, too.
They have to bring them before court, before they offer.
Okay, okay.
Before they can be unfrozen, yes.
Well, but the question I have is, is if that's going to, if the freezes that are articulated, it's a, so that could be, that could be a category that we look at, is my point. Uh, I don't know that we want to do that, but I mean, how much with one, if, if the number's one point three one three six, how many vacant positions? And I know you, this is hard because it depends on what vacant position, but I assume y'all know maybe what the average cost of a vacant position is or could run that. Then how many of those, on the average, would we have to eliminate vacancies to get to our zero number? And I know that's really hard, Dale, to put you on spot like that, and I apologize, but, and if you can't do it, but I don't, I'm, I'm, I don't know how else to go right now to get that final one point three.
And then we have to go back to all those resolutions, don't forget.
I'm taking the, 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 we have for this around, I take it twelve, fifteen, and that's around, if we include that, it's one position's about fifty thousand dollars.
So one position's about fifty thousand dollars. This is, that's the lowest one. Now, we have some that are higher vacancies that are higher, higher pay, but that's, that's a very low amount.
We'd have to, did I do that right?
About fifty.
The average, yeah.
Make sure I'm doing that. Well, yeah, so if you, so if you take the average of fifty thousand, you'd have, we'd have to eliminate twenty-seven vacancies. We'd have to figure out where to pick them, right? But we'd have to eliminate twenty-seven vacancies and we're done, basically. I mean, now how we get there, I don't know. I mean, you know, I don't know how we do that, but, but.
Now, now, if we, if we remember this, sometimes when, uh, uh, Tim, Tim comes forward, there's a lot of positions we have that have been vacant for a very, very, very long time, because it's hard to find positions. Some of them are in many departments. Uh, for example, I know, uh, the sheriff's office is hard to find for, for the jail and, and, uh, some of the heavy equipment people for, for, uh, uh, Public Works, they have a hard time finding drivers, they have to find this, but, but that's just, they're, 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 they still need these drivers, but they have a hard time finding these. These billions, these, some of these positions are vacant for years.
But if we, if we did, and now, and that's why I wanted to do the resolution last on the freezing thing, so let's, let's just kind of talk through that too, right? If we pass a resolution that, that, that does a hard free, like a real freeze for a year, not for everything, but for twenty-six point, twenty-seven positions, I, I don't, and I don't know what they are. In other words, I'm trying to, because it's, I don't know how today to say, because I don't want to just pick on the sheriff because he has the most vacancies, because he's always going to have the most vacancies, because that's the hardest job in the county to fill.
Exactly.
So it's, it's like, it, I don't want to just go, okay, let's go take all twenty-seven from, from that department, because I think it's realistic in the sense that it's going to be hard to ever fill those positions, because we've had eighty openings over there for, I don't know how long, years.
Yeah.
Right? So, but I, but I mean, I'm not, I don't want the sheriff to think I'm picking on him and, and not do it across the board. So the freezes would, would help us for one year, it just wouldn't help us going after that if they were unfrozen. Whereas the permanent deletions take it out of the budget forever and ever, amen, until someone puts it back, so maybe we need to pick a poll, I don't know.
No, as, as, as we saw, the, the seventeen frozen positions that we, that we included in the budget, those are vacancies, or were vacancies when we did it.
Say that to me again?
The, the seventeen frozen positions that we included in your, your, your cut positions, at the time, we, we evaluated those, those seventeen were, were vacant.
Well, what if we, could we say this and, and be within the laws of passing a budget? Could we say, if a court wanted to, we're going to eliminate twenty-seven vacancies and we're going to figure it out later? I, I don't, you know what I mean? Like, we got to go work with people on their vacancies, because I don't want to just, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to be creative here and I'm, but I'm trying to follow the law. And, and I, I don't know which twenty-seven or the, that's twenty-seven to pick, but obviously, or, or we're going to eliminate one point, really the better way would be, we're going to eliminate one point three million dollars of vacancies, three, one point three one three million dollars of vacancies and do it later?
Twenty-seven people would do that? Twenty-seven vacancies?
We have, we have a hundred and ninety-six in the county. I mean, we got to be able to get twenty-seven, we got to get, we got to get enough departments to work with us to agree to say, okay, have, you know, maybe the sheriff gives us ten, maybe, I, I, I don't know where they all are, right? I, I'm sorry, I can't even rattle them off. I don't even know where all the vacancies are.
I can go right now, in Public Works, there's twenty-six.
Vacancies?
Vacancies.
In Public Works?
Public Works.
Crap, get one in here.
In Engineering, there's two. Coastal Parks, there's two. Uh, Ken, Ken Cross got one in her, her records, one in, uh, uh, no, one, two, three, four.
Well, he's got a lot.
Four in her records, one treasury, I don't know, two, two, two collections, one vague, one elections.
I don't have the vacancy in treasury.
Eleven eighty, eleven eighty, that's, that's what, what's, what's, that's collections.
Eleven eighty.
But yeah, it's frozen.
Those are frozen, but those are now, they're, they're vacant at the time. For our tax office, we have, uh, seven. As, uh, HR said they have one, I've got, I've got three. Uh, Purchasing has one. And we got, uh, once for the, uh.
I guess we could start with the people who report to us. I mean, I hate to do that, but that's easier than trying to call fifteen elected officials and say, hey, what do you think at this point?
I don't think so right now.
Yeah, I know what you're gonna say. Yeah, I know, what you're going to say, Carol, I got it, I don't need to call them, fourteen, fourteen, not fifteen, fourteen.
No, it's a good call.
But, I mean, because twenty, twenty-six in, in Public Works.
Public Works, yes.
But we got to remember on the seventeenth, we're going to do something that includes Public Works, right?
Well, but.
And I said, most of, most of Public, most of Public Works are your heavy equipment operators and your truck drivers, so those are the ones that are hard to find people for.
You wouldn't eliminate all of them anyway.
No, no, I'm just saying, whatever he thinks, he can.
And if, it would, because we do transfer money from the general fund to Public Works, if you do, do a small change in Public Works, we can reduce our transfer from general fund to Public Works, but, again, we don't want to hurt Public Works.
No, I, we don't hurt anybody, but, but, again, the, I think the consensus method of this, or message of this court has been, people's our last cut, but vacancies we could, you know, at least work on, but, I don't know. So, it sounds to me like if we can figure out how to cut twenty-seven vacancies, unless anybody else has any ideas, then we're back down to where we need to be. Anybody, anybody?
And as you said, the largest one, of course, our sheriff, with both the jail and the sheriff division, has, has significant vacancies. Uh, right now, Animal Control's got three vacancies.
Hey, go find Juan, let's see what we can, I mean, I don't know what else to do, we got to start, we got to start, like, you know, bargaining here, we're going to sit here all night and do nothing, and I am not willing to do that.
I mean.
Or, if you got something else? I hope you've been good, you've been a role today, Commissioner, I mean, I, you know, I'm just.
I'm out, I'm out. But, I think that we made a, I think we made a big impact, I think that, that, um, you know, what, we're a lot better than what we were when we started, and we're not that far away, I mean, we can't, we might not be able to get everything today, or, we still got the twenty-seventh, and.
We can't, this has to be done today on the budget.
We have to adopt today.
Yeah, this has to be adopted today.
We have to adopt a budget today, but we can't come back on, we can't come back.
No.
We come back.
We can't come back with the cut part, I'm not, just give me, let me, no, no, if we make a motion to cut twen, to cut one point three million dollars in vacancies today, pass it, and come back on the nineteenth, between now and then, come back with the specifics on those vacancies, how is that a problem?
It's not a problem as long as we get the level you're talking about.
Right.
Can we get to that level?
Okay, so, okay, team, here we go, the, the, the motion would be, right, to cut one point, and, and I don't know, three, one point, what I've got is one point three one three six, but a mil, you'll say a million four, we would cut one point four million vacancies with the list to be brought back and determined on the nineteenth, meaning that would be our not-a-one agenda day. So that would be what I would.
I remember, Commissioner, you already, you already had one point, what, three or four, uh, out of the three that we needed, so we're already going to need.
Let's just, can't we just say we were going to, we'll find twenty-five cuts to make?
Oh, we started at two point, started at two point nine.
Yeah.
We're down to one point three more that we need to cut.
Well, uh.
One point three.
It's three one three six hundred, if I'm right, I could be a little off, so I was saying one point four to, to be safe, yeah.
Dale's got something.
No, I, I did give you the lowest level, some of these vacancies are at a higher level, so, you know, it's some of these, uh, you know, like, one of the positions we know, in, in the governmental affairs is, is going away, that's, that's four, that's a hundred thousand dollars.
What's going away?
The governmental affairs from, from, from eleven twenty-one, we know that was going away.
Wait, wait, from eleven?
Belinda's old position.
But that's already, we've already factored that in.
Yeah, but, yeah, but that's, that's, that was one of my vacancies.
Juan is here.
One of my vacancies.
I text him, you might want to come.
Come on, man.
Yes, come on up.
Juan, you're the first one that gets the big question, you got twenty-six vacancies in Public Works, one of the, I, we're down to.
We need twenty-five of those, no.
No, we, don't, don't do that to it, but we're trying to figure out.
Ten.
Not just you, but everyone, how many of their vacancies, because we, of the hundred and ninety-six, I think we have vacancies left in the county. If we cut twenty-seven, that'll get us to flat, we're done, vacancies, not people, vacancies. So we're going to go ask everybody who has vacancies, Carol's already answered us.
And the sheriff just sent a message, he already cut six of his vacancies are already in the budget.
Right, I know, but that's, I get it, so.
He just wants us to know.
No, no, he's, he's made, no, he made good cuts. He made good cuts.
No, no, I, I think overall, we, in our budget, we cut, what, about six hundred thousand, Judge?
Yeah, y'all did a major.
Yes, yes, I mean, we, we already cut six hundred thousand from our budget, and then, not only cutting personnel, I mean, right now, we're getting calls from constituents, and also some, uh, some, uh, commercial, uh, properties that, they're asking for some of our roads to, to get fixed, and, I mean, without truck drivers and without, um, heavy equipment operators, and I know it's been tough here in the past few years of trying to hire people, but, um, you know, we start, if we start deleting personnel, more personnel from Public Works, it's going to, it's even going to get harder.
No, no, vacancies, not personnel.
No, 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 but I, but, but vacancies, in other words, if we don't, if we can't hire those positions later on, um, we are going to be hurting.
You mean, are the three or four of them that you just can't find spots for?
Sure.
Are the three or four that you can't find spots for?
Well, I mean, I think that the ones that Dale mentioned earlier are the truck drivers, uh, the truck driver two.
Heavy equipment operators.
And heavy equipment operators.
I mean, because you've had, you've had the vacancies for a while.
Yes, sir, and, and what we're trying to do is, we're trying to implement some type of, um, training for, for our staff, so we can move some of our staff that's, that's, that are equipment operators, we can move them to heavy equipment operators, and trying to get them from, uh, to get their class, at least try and get their Class B, so we can move them up, and, uh, and get them trained, because we do need heavy equipment operators, and, uh, and if we, if we delete some E's, I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be hard for, for our department.
It's going to be hard for everybody, I get it.
Yes, sir, so.
I think he will fill these positions, yes.
Yes, ma'am. And, and not only that, but we're trying to, like I said, we're trying to train some of our, uh, staff that's an op, just an operator, and get it, and get them to be moved up to, uh, to heavy equipment operators. So.
We should have had all the department heads here, I mean, I know that some have made cuts, and, like I said before, we've had some department heads that have done this even when the need hasn't been as great.
Yeah.
But proportionally, too, like, some can say, you know, they've made eight or ten, and that's sizable, maybe a, a department only has one, and they've made that, or we've made it for them, but it's proportional, I mean, I don't want to cut law enforcement, but if we're never filling that position, then why don't we cut more? Public Works, I mean, you've cut some, but if we cut a few more, but you still have that, I'm hoping that discretion we give him in the future to be able to move around and consolidate.
Yeah.
To make those positions more attractive, I'm, I'm all for that, I'm going to continually support that, if it means helping to shrink down the budget now, and, and giving you that flexibility, I'm going to, I'll say it now, I'll support any department head that wants to come in and move around your department, or, or elected official, and wants to move their department around, to be able to make that position more attractive, you know, eliminating one, consolidating the other, so, I'm just talking out loud, doesn't mean that's necessarily what I'm going to do, but I'm just saying, that's what I'd like to look at. So if we have a, a list, uh, that somebody can get us, that would be helpful, so we could just look, and whoever's here, speak now or forever hold your peace, I see.
I think the.
Chief, chief's here, so.
He probably has some comments to make, too.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Of course I do. You've already cut six positions, you cut, you cut six, uh, six, uh, training positions out of the jail, and you could, you've cut a deputy. But I tell you, when you start cutting public safety, and you start calling for a deputy, and you need help, and they're not there, that's going to be a problem for you, and you say you don't want to, you don't want to cut public safety, but the reality situation, when you do, you're putting the risk of the citizens of this county.
But we're not talking current employees, so let's get that conversation out of the way.
But you keep saying that, that we're never going to fill those positions, but we are, and we made significant progress, and cut, cut way back, but you're going to get to a point.
So you think we'll cut, we'll, we'll get to eighty this year, we'll fill all eighty?
I, I think we could at some point, we, we've already, we've already in the last six weeks picked up twenty positions, because the sheriff has spent money on recruiting, hired a, an outside recruiting agency to assist us with, we're hiring, I think we have twelve in the, in the barrel right now, an additional twelve.
That's great.
And, and, you know, it.
He has gotten great response with his.
Also, when you get in the jail, I mean, as it is, we have those people on, on working twelves, and it's not what we call Panama shift, where, where, where they get every other weekend off or anything like that, I mean, they're working hard twelves and, and working overtime every week, every week, and it's costing you significantly. If we can fill those positions, and eventually we can save you some money, but you start cutting those positions, those positions that are now covering the overtime are going to be gone, and then you're going to be in the hole anyway. It's going to be significant.
Good point, that's why I'm glad you're here.
And, you know, you're going to, and, you know, you took one deputy away from me, but that one deputy could mean the difference of a backup or not a backup, or getting to a call for service that's an emergency-related.
Who took a deputy away from you?
The auditor's office, they took one deputy and, and six corrections from us already, we, we, you guys, five corrections, there's six positions you've already taken from us.
Wait, you submitted that, or he came up with it?
No, nobody came, they, they, they came from the auditor's office, that, that was sent to us, and then when we had our, when we had Dina start checking to see where we were on positions, we had, we had, had six taken out of our budget.
And one was a deputy?
One was a deputy.
Yeah, we didn't, didn't catch that one, I don't think that's a, we need to substit.
We had, we had twenty-seven, we had twenty-seven, we had twenty-eight deputies last budget, and now we're down to twenty-seven.
And what was the other that we took?
Uh, six corrections, I believe, is that correct, Lisa?
So we took seven total, or?
Seven total from us already.
They gave up some, so like, they gave up two, um.
Get out of the mic.
Good call, thank you.
They gave up two cadets in order to get the microcomputer, and then they gave up, I mean, there, there were, it was mid-year personnel changes, um.
This wasn't changes that we just implemented at the end with this, this was changes that were made earlier?
We've had twenty, we've had twenty-eight, we had twenty-eight deputies, and we didn't give up one deputy, but you took one from us, and then there were six cadet, uh, positions that you took, that we had not given up. Now, we have, we have frozen some positions, we've taken some positions, like when we put Julie Geter in place, he gave up positions for that, we're not arguing about those, that money is getting paid to somebody. Um, when we brought an IT person over there, we gave up positions.
Hang on, when did we take anything from anybody, as I'm trying to figure out, without, we don't, like, how does that work?
No, I'm saying. I, I don't know, I just know that my people came to me yesterday and said, we're minus six positions.
Ri, right, but, but the sheriff just texted the judge and said, you gave up six positions, that's what she, he just texted.
Well, that's not, that's not what we discussed earlier.
They said, six of the sheriff's vacancies were cut already in the budget book.
Yeah, and, and that came from the auditor's office, they are.
And one's a deputy? But you just said.
One is a deputy, one of them was a deputy positions, we had twenty-eight this present budget, and we were told we're going to have twenty-seven in the upcoming budget if they stick.
We need to take another, I, I'd rather take a, no offense, but I'd rather take another correctional way than a deputy ever, I didn't, I mean, that's not, yeah, I'm not trying to.
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, I, I don't, we need to, we need to fix that, you, you, and, and, you know, that's where you got to tell us, I didn't, because that wouldn't, I mean, if y'all don't come tell, I mean, the, the budgeter, the auditor has a ha, hard job, and his job this time was ten times as hard.
Yes, sir.
But if you don't come and tell us, like, that caught my ear immediately, I would, I didn't sign off.
Commissioner, I didn't know till yesterday afternoon, and this is the first time I've had a chance to talk about it.
Right, I'm glad to know that you didn't know either, because I, I missed it too, and I didn't see it, so, I mean, that was, we, we can, we can correct that, I mean, we need to flip a correctional. And that's my worries, like I've said, I've said earlier, is that, when we make cuts, or when we make a vote, we don't realize some of those cuts until once the dust settles, like tonight, tomorrow morning, then we realize, oh my gosh, what has happened? So I'm glad that you're here bringing this up, and I wasn't saying, let's cut, sacrifice law enforcement, because I know we use that to be able to cover, those positions are not just sitting there, that posi, those positions are used still in the funding to help support the overtime.
And, Commissioner, respectfully, we are trying to fill those positions, so we can put our people back on what's known as a Panama schedule, they're on twelve-hour shifts, but they're going to be back to where they're not going to be, get, they're on twelve hours, but they're not going to be overtime shifts, and they're going to be getting more time off, because right now, they work a schedule that's just brutal. I mean, it, I, I can't blame, I understand why we lost them, first we lost them in COVID, and then they weren't coming back because it's such a hard job, it's, it's difficult.
We need to flip the deputy back, because that's not, I don't know how we do that, but, you know, that's not it, I mean, I'm, yeah.
Chief, I totally, I totally agree with you, uh, the, we all agree that the county's growing, the only, the only ones that are not growing is the sheriff's department.
Right.
And the constable, people that we need out there patrolling those rural areas.
Right.
Okay, so.
And, and I recognize, this is not the year we're going to grow, I, I, I'm not. I'm not trying to get there, I, I understand, I, I, I totally understand the budgetary constraints that we're under, and I respect that, I just don't think it helps if we start cutting people that are patrolling.
I agree, it doesn't.
Because I have to, I have to keep where we're at, so that when, when a guy says, I need a day off, I can give him a day off. But, because I, I will tell you, we have been in some situations where I've had one deputy patrolling the entire county, and when, and when the constables aren't working at night, which happens frequently, you got one deputy, and you have to depend on DPS to help us.
I remember a case where.
Let me put that deputy back in and change something.
Our, we, we pull our information from our payroll cycle and our, our HR cycle, and our HR said it was only twenty, uh, twenty-seven employees, but we're going to make sure we, we get it resolved.
Okay, because Dina tells me, our, our office manager tells me, she checked the budget, she double-checked, triple-checked, and we had twenty-eight positions in our present budget, they're not all filled, but they will be, because I've, I've got people in the pipe that I'm getting ready to hire, but if you tell me I can't, I need to know that.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're fixing it.
It should be twenty-eight, but, but, but when we pull information from our system, current system, and I, we, that's why, one of the reasons why we're changing the system, is it's counting twenty-seven deputies, you know.
And, and we did reach out to the auditor's office yesterday and say, hey, we're seeing this, put them back, please, but, but we know everybody's got to make sacrifices, and I, and we will make attempt, uh.
We get it, we're just asking questions, I mean, we're just trying, we're, we're, we're kind of wits' end, and unfortunately, like I said earlier, we're not trying to pick on anyone, y'all just have, you know.
More positions.
But yesterday, it wasn't fixed, and that's why.
The bigger departments, the bigger departments are always going to have more.
Lisa said they just, they, they fixed it, yes, af, after we talked to her yesterday, so we're back, we're supposed to be back at twenty-eight now? Okay.
Yeah, Mike.
What happens is, whenever one of his deputies that, that certified, so after they've gone through, they've gone from the cadet school, and they've become certified, either it's a deputy or a jailer, they, they then move down into the collective bargaining unit. Well, whenever a vacancy happens, they're typically not hiring a certified jailer or a deputy right off, they're going to the cadets. And so it's a variance between the cadet number and then the number of positions, does that make sense? Because they, you fill cadets.
She, she's correct on the correction side, she's accurate on the correction side.
Hold on, we're giving you a damn deputy back.
All right, I, I just want to make sure.
We got, we got a ton to do.
All right, so we're good on the deputy, we're, we're good on the deputy, we're good on the deputy, all right.
Thank you, Chief, you did a good job.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, anybody got any other ideas?
You're the one keeping the towel.
I'm trying, I mean, I like, you know, I don't know, I don't.
You can always adopt a budget today and continue to make changes throughout the year, and then that salary, those savings that you have throughout the year would then be able to go to your fund balance, you just wouldn't have those expenses.
Why haven't we done that?
You just can't increase.
I don't know.
Say that again, I can't.
Well, if we adopt the budget now, it's got the one point three million dollars that the commissioner's saying that they, as they lost, that, that we want to try to eliminate, so, if you want to go that way, that's fine, we can always, we, you can always reduce the budget, you just cannot increase it without emergency declaration.
So adopt the budget as it is right now with the amendments that we've discussed, and then during the year, you cut where you can, you reduce where you can, and you can keep going forward.
You can do that, yes. It'll show a one point three million dollar loss.
You can cut your budget anytime you want to cut your budget.
How can you pass a budget that's not balanced?
Yeah.
I, I've never even heard of that in my life.
It's technically balanced because we're using reserves.
No, 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 you're saying because it's got.
Just lowers our.
Yeah, but you're saying, unless we can find cuts throughout the year, we're going to be in the hole, we're going to dig in another million three into our, our, our reserves, which we already started four million in the hole on reserves today, based on the deal we did earlier, so, that's a little risky, I'm not saying I want to sit here all night, but I'm, I've never in my life passed a budget that wasn't balanced, and, okay, balanced legally, it might be, but that, that the revenues didn't match the expenses, that's balanced to me, because reserves are reserves are reserves, that's like, you know, that's a different account, but, okay, legally we can, but, boy, I don't know about, that's kind of ugly. I don't, but I don't know, I don't, I'm, I'm out of.
Rush to get out of here, we're still digging in, we might want to take a fifteen-minute recess or something.
Do we have to pass this there, could we recess this meeting?
You have to pass it today.
The law said we have to.
The law states we have to.
You'll have to research the law on, on.
Even if we recess?
Yes, under one eleven point oh three nine, which is the adoption of a budget for a county, it says that the, um, the budget is to be adopted after the, after the, the, um, the tax roller rate has been set.
After the what?
After the taxes have been set, so we.
Wait, 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 one, one person, sorry?
Yeah, after the taxes have been set, then after the public hearing, and the tax has been set, then the budget is to be adopted under one eleven oh three nine. Now, I'm, I'm having the office right now.
Does it say in twenty, does it say in the same day?
That's what we're looking at right now, I know in the past, when we've looked at this, it is meant, or I've seen sources. That's what we're looking at right now. I know in the past when we've looked at this, it is meant, or I've seen sources, but that's what they're looking at in detail right now, is whether the sources are correct, that, that means that the budget in fact has to be adopted today. Um, I believe by recollection that, that it does have to be adopted by today, but that's what we're looking at right now in our office.
So, why don't you look at that in your office? Cause I'd like to see the statute that says that it has to be done that day, but you just read me, that didn't say that, right?
And, and, and I'm saying that based off of, off of memory, secondary sources, case law, I don't recall, has said that it has to be done on, on the same day. But that's what we're looking at. We're trying to find those sources right now to make sure that that's what 111.039A stands for.
We recess for fifteen minutes, Judge, so we can all take a break, and maybe he can come back with an answer. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I just said that recess for fifteen minutes before you got onto that last deal.
Yeah.
That's a perfect idea, yes. We are going to take a recess. We will be back at 5:45. Coming back on. Do we even need to say a time? We just did a recess. We're back from our recess.
Yeah.
Um, and Comish, I think Juan Pimentel has some changes, reclassifications to do very quickly. He's already been meeting with Dale and-
That's correct, Judge. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and delete four of our truck driver twos, and use some of that monies to increase some of our rates for heavy equipment operators, and then some of our truck driver ones and twos, the ones that are still, we still have. And there'll be a cost savings of about sixteen thousand, plus or minus. And I already worked out that we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, we're good. Do we need a motion? It just gets included in their motion? It's included, oh, we'll vote on that when the budget, so we're, we're good. Yes, okay.
Got it. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you, thank you, Judge.
I would move, I'd move acceptance of Juan's proposal.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Oh, wait, I gotta abstain.
Yeah, we'll go with you.
It's a reclass. It's, I gotta abstain, cause it's a reclass.
Oh, yeah.
Gotta be consistent.
I'll make the motion. Commissioner Gonzalez will second.
They eliminated four positions and upped his, uh-
Reclassify, yes.
For a sought, okay.
I am making the motion. Commissioner Gonzalez has seconded because, and then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Juan abstains.
Thanks, Judge. Thanks, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Juan. Appreciate it.
And then, um, are you gonna make that motion for the next, so we can clear that up on the-
I'd like to make a motion at this, oh, shoot.
Yes, we can do your microphone. He loves that thing.
I'd like to make a motion at this time, Judge, that, uh, we, uh, we move another one million dollars from the 115 waiver. To, this'll almost pull us over the hill.
It will.
I think it will. So we, we good, it would be good to go.
Second.
We have a motion to move an additional one million dollars from the 11 to 15 waivers to make up the difference for our budget deficit, seconded by Commissioner Chesney. All those, or any other discussion about that, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. So do I, I need to go back to item number five for the resolutions first, or do I go to six?
Make a motion to pass the, and adopt the budget, right?
Yes, we make sure, make sure you, you adopt the proposed budget with the amendments as, as, as approved by court.
That would be the motion.
Second.
Um, where's that paperwork? It's like, wait, wait, wait. Where's the paperwork?
For the adoption of the budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
And y'all are gonna get mad because it's not gonna tie to what y'all think it should be.
Hold on, I'm not making a motion. I take it back. I'm tired of it enough. Go ahead, Judge.
Oh, that was awful, that motion I made. I was like, hmm.
Y'all are gonna get mad at the legislation, and it's not my fault. Okay.
I gotta do all the bad stuff again, I guess.
So the legislation is gonna make you say that this budget is gonna raise your property taxes than last year's budget by this amount, but that amount is no, is new property. So it's a decrease.
Oh.
But it's the way it's worded.
The wording says it differently.
So it's, it-
You say it, I'll make the comments.
Thank you, thank you. Clarifying. Yes, okay. Um, I have to read all this?
No, just, just this in bold.
Um, I make a motion to adopt the Nueces County 2023-24 budget. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 1,343,070 dollars, or 1.29%. And of that amount, 2,313,688 dollars is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. Let me clarify. Can I say that now?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to be raising an additional 2,313 from this, from new property. So actually, this is lowering, yes. Lowering your tax rate. Lowering your tax rate, yes. Our tax rate will be lower for every individual. This doesn't sound correct, and I don't like it either, but that's the way it reads. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. Yes, sir.
I had one other peripheral issue, one I wanted to say, I wanna make sure it's very clear. This is a huge day in Nueces County. We have everybody else, every other entity in town will claim they did not raise taxes. We will probably be the only one that actually did not raise taxes, because we are passing a budget with the no new tax rate. So that's very significant. Dale, I had, I posed a question to you earlier. You answered me partially on those. There were some ones that I saw, some salaries, and that looked like there were raises included on them, and you had-
Every year we have to evaluate, because every year- Every year we have to reevaluate our, our, we, we budget for twenty-six pay period cycles, however, sometimes we have twenty-six point fives in a year, twenty-six point seven, twenty-five, so every year we have to reevaluate how much of the actual amount's gonna be hit the budget. And this year, at the end of our fiscal year, we'll have a very large accrual want to come back. So that's all it is, is a small accrual adjustment.
Right, so, and, and to be transparent, I asked you, because one of those was yours.
Yes.
One of those was Edwards, one of those was IT, one of those was whatever. But again, for the record, no one got raises, other than the, the policy raises on the one every three-year deal, correct? Okay, thank you. That's all I got, Judge.
I already told them that, I told them that.
Um, we have several orders that, we still have votes we need to make. Y'all don't pack up and leave.
Right, right, with the court reporter and the other one that you told us earlier, I'm sorry, yeah, that had, that were statutory, the juvenile probation.
And the, and, and two county court law judges, they're required by law.
In what?
There was two county court law judges that had got, that got, but they were required.
I mean, statutory, anything that was legally mandated.
Yes.
Um, we, um, going back to item number five, discussing, consider adoption of orders and resolutions related to the proposed 2023-24 Nueces County budget.
Judge, real quick on the budget, did we do a roll call?
No.
No.
Oh, we didn't do a roll call vote on it. You're right, sorry. Yeah, okay, go back to our motion to pass the 2023-24 budget. Commissioner Hernandez, are you a aye or a no?
To adopt the budget?
To adopt the budget as amended with the changes.
I'm a aye.
Commissioner Modas?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
Aye.
Gosh, the world, the sky's falling. Commissioner Gonzalez.
I'll, I'll be an aye.
And myself, aye, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Now, going back to item number four, adoption of orders, and, um, this first order of Nueces County Commissioners Court for budget authority for employee position. This order applies to and affects all employees who are authorized by Commissioners Court under the authority of subsection 152 dot zero zero, zero one one, Local Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes, or other authority under Commissioners Court to set compensation and control the annual budget. And number two, all employees who are authorized in the 2023-24 county budget, except number three, it does not apply to employees over which the Commissioners Court has no authority to set that compensation. It is therefore ordered for each employee position that is vacant as of October 1, 2023, or that becomes vacant on October 1, 2023, or thereafter during budget year 2023-24. No official shall hire or fill an employee position that is vacant unless authorized by the Commissioners Court. No salary, allowance, or other compensation but shall be paid, except for those employees who are on the payroll as of October 1, 2023, unless specifically authorized or ratified by the Commissioners Court. The salary and fringe benefits for each vacant employee position may be transferred by the Commissioners Court to a special reserve designated by the county auditor. The authority and funds provided by this budget are frozen for each vacant position until re-leased and reinstated by the Commissioners Court. And I will make the motion to adopt this with the understanding that people know that the, um-
They just have to come to us, right?
Yeah, the departments that have vacancies that are not frozen, that does not mean you can't fill your positions. Yes, okay. Um, I made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Does that go to ARPA attorneys?
Well, yeah, but she just got to come get it approved, but that's ARPA, I mean, it's ARPA-
Different funding source.
That's already funded.
That's already funded. This is, if you have vacancies, like the sheriff's office that's trying to fill his, that's not for this, that's-
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, that motion passed. Um, the next one, Commissioners Court Resolution Setting the Travel Mileage and Per diem reimbursement rates. Whereas the Commissioners Court from time to time sets the travel policy for expenses and other travel reimbursements for officials and county employees, and whereas fuel costs and other factors have increased the cost to county officials and employees to undertake reasonable and necessary travel for the purposes of county business. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Nueces County, Texas, that the travel reimbursement rate for mileage is hereby set at forty-nine cents per mile, and the per diem rate is hereby set at forty-eight dollars per day.
Is that the, sorry.
This order is effective October 1, 2023, and applies to travel taken during the budget year 2023-24. I'll make the motion.
Is that the same, Judge?
A second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Is that the same as, it sounds like it's-
That same as last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Thanks for the clarification. It is the same. Oh, mercy, these are both the sides of the page. Yes, it is from, um, uh, last year. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Commissioners Court Resolution Regarding County Interfund Loans. Whereas a number of the grants awarded to the county are reimbursed grants, reimbursement grants, requiring the county to expend county monies before getting access to the grant funds. Whereas the Commissioners Court from time to time may need to fund grant projects in the interim before being reimbursed with grant funds. Whereas the funding of these grant projects can be accomplished through a short-term county interfund loan, i.e. loaning monies from the general fund to the grant's operating fund until grant funding is received. And whereas for purposes of this resolution, a short-term interfund loan is meant to refer to credit debit accounting entries in the county's balance sheet between two county funds, and is not meant to indicate a traditional loan where interest may be accrued. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Nueces County, Texas, that monies from the county general fund, up to a maximum of $2 million, may be used to provide the county's grant operating fund with a short-term interfund loan pending receipt of applicable, uh, grant funds. Upon receipt of grant funds, the county's general fund will be immediately credited monies received. This order is effective October 1, 2023, and applies to grant funding necessary during budget year 2023 and 2024. I make the motion to accept. And we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Is there any other questions on this one? Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Um, Commissioners Court, next, sorry. Commissioners Court Resolution in Order Establishing Financial Guidelines for Minimum General Fund Reserves. Yikes. Um, whereas sound fiscal policies are crucial to enabling the county to maintain its long-term financial stability and excellent bond rating, and whereas ad valorem tax revenues are normally not collected until mid-December each year, and as such, adequate fund reserves are required to provide operating monies for the first three months of each fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved and ordered by the Commissioners Court of Nueces County, Texas, that it is the court's continued goal for budget year 2023-2024 to maintain a minimum general fund reserve of 25% of general fund budgeted revenues and transfers, duly adopted by the Commissioners Court on this thirteenth day. And, and with our budget the way we have, we are doing this, Dale? Before we vote on something we just didn't do. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion?
Yeah, I don't, I wanna make sure we remember, we said 25%.
Yes.
Okay, cause now, we're arguing about 28%, we're arguing about 26%, so now remember we were saying 25%.
Have we, we've gone over?
We can go over, it's okay. But remember, we, we voted that it's gotta be 25%.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We have Commissioners Court Resolution in Order Establishing Financial Guidelines for Use of Excess Revenue Generated from Operations at the Richard M. Borchard Fairgrounds. Whereas sound fiscal policies are crucial to enabling the county to maintain its long-term financial stability and to enable the county to provide funding for operating the Richard M. Borchard Fairgrounds. And whereas annual operating funds and periodic capital improvement funding is necessary to allow proper management of the fairgrounds complex. And whereas revenues will be generated from activities and events held at the fairgrounds. Now therefore be it resolved and ordered by the Commissioners Court of Nueces County, Texas, that for budget year 2023-2024, all excess revenue earnings generated from operations at the Richard M. Borchard Fairgrounds shall be reinvested back into the fairgrounds for funding general operations, capital improvements, and expansion. And I get a motion on this resolution. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And Commissioners Court Resolution in Order Establishing a Special Revenue Account for Deposit of County Funds Received from the Sale of Fixed Assets. Whereas sound fiscal policies are crucial to enabling the county to maintain its long-term financial stability and excellent bond rating, and whereas there is a need to prudently manage county resources in order to provide the best public service with limited resources available to the county. Now therefore be it resolved and ordered by the Commissioners Court of Nueces County, Texas, that for budget year 2023-2024, the county will continue to maintain a special revenue account for the deposit of county funds received from the sale of fixed assets originally purchased and general fund monies. Can I get a motion for this resolution?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the fixed assets. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Yes, that's it. Um, that is the end of that. We had talked about the, um, if we wanted to go back into executive, I understand that doesn't seem like there's any need for that now from the discussion, right? Okay. I just wanted to make it clear before I canceled any of yours, no.
Right.
Yes, okay. Um, do adjourn, I guess, uh, we've done all the, we did all the votes we were supposed to, Dale? Okay. So, uh, do we have any adjournments in memory? And I, I would like for us all to keep our dear friend and coworker Teresa McCallum in our prayers, and continue to reach out to her family. It's, it's, uh, I know we don't have the, um, but we don't have anything on the services yet, but we will continue.
The service, she did send something on.
Oh, she did send today? Okay.
Also, your honor, uh, two members of my staff lost a, lost a grandparent.
Yes, that's very sorry. We will keep them in our prayers as well, yes.
I have one, Judge.
Go ahead.
I wanted to offer condolences to the, uh, family of Patsy Nguyen. She was born to Hugh Brown and Bronte Isabella Miles Brown in Turner, Arkansas, on December 21, 1928. She was born again when she received Jesus Christ and her Lord and Savior in 1956. She passed into heaven-
She passed into heaven with her family by her side on Tuesday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. She bet the love of her life Charles C. Wynn in San Antonio, Texas, and they were married in the summer of nineteen fifty-five. She cared for their five children and managed the home, in nineteen seventy-one, they moved to Eagle Pass where all the children attended school. Nineteen ninety-five, the family relocated to Corpus Christi, Texas, where she resided for the rest of her life. She'll be remembered for her compassion for others, her dedication to her family and friends, and her faithful devotion to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. So, we would pass on the condolences to all the family and it is a very large family and very, um, involved family in our, our local community and local coastal bend area. And we certainly pass our condolences on for the passing of Patsy Wynn.
Very much, send our condolences. Is there anyone else who has any, you have something, Commissioner Mottis?
Yes, Judge. Eleanor, uh, Theis Fluger, uh, passed on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, she was from Bishop and, um, she lived to the blessed age of, well, she passed just eighteen days before her one-hundred-and-first birthday. And, um, her family, Fluger, as you can tell, Flugerville.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, we're very fortunate to have her in our community, her family's very active and involved in the Bishop community and so I just wanted to pass condolences, uh, to the Fluger and Lowman families in Bishop.
Very much so, what a blessing to live that kind of life at that age, yes, yes. Are there any others? We would ask that you keep all of these individuals and their families in your prayers, please. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Got resolutions to.